Okay, let's get to work. We'll call the meeting in order for the afternoon of October 5th. Welcome, everybody. Let's begin with a pledge of allegiance. If you're able to stand, please join us.
I pledge allegiance to the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you. Today's invocation will be provided by Tyler Cole as lead pastor of Lincoln Glen Church and Joshua Birkenwald, the rabbi of congregation Sinai. Councilmember Foley will tell us more, but I wanted to welcome both gentlemen. Thank you.
Whoops. You know, you'd think I'd figure out this microphone thing. If Pastor Cole and Rabbi Birkenwald could come towards the microphone? Tyler Cole is the lead pastor of the Lincoln Glen Church located in District 9 in South Willow Glen. Pastor Tyler Cole and the Lincoln Glen Church have during the pandemic raised more money than ever before to help people in need financially in our community. Lincoln Glen also works with seniors at Lincoln Glen Manor, providing them support to combat social isolation. Tyler Cole is joined by Rabbi Joshua Birkenwald from congregation Sinai located in San Jose. Both Lincoln Glen Church and congregation Sinai are members of the Abrahamic Alliance. The Abrahamic Alliance is an international movement of Jews, Christians, and Muslims who are united for peace-building and poverty relief. The Abrahamic Alliance envisions a world where Jews, Christians, and Muslims enjoy peaceful coexistence and where ignorance, arrogance, and contempt are replaced by understanding, humility, and respect. Recently, the Abrahamic Alliance has brought together their interfaith coalition to pack thousands of supply kits for people experiencing homelessness and have hosted blood drives with the Red Cross to help with blood donation shortages. And my chief and staff and I actually participated in creating some of those packets for the homeless. I'm so happy to have both Pastor Tyler Cole and Rabbi Joshua Birkenwald here to deliver the invocation for today in partnership. Thank you, gentlemen.
In such a divided time, so I want to pray for you and pray for our city, and then Rabbi Joshua will pray as well. God, I come to you in a time when our world and our city faces so many things, as we face the city that has domestic abuse and bullying, we deal with COVID, as we deal with such a divided nation, as we deal with the drought, as we deal with so many different things. And I pray that you would help us not just to complain and to grieve the things that we're going through, but that you would actually use us in the midst of all of this to make a difference in these areas. So that I pray that you would guide the city council as they try to navigate in such a difficult time and lead. And so I pray that you help us to follow the words of Jesus who calls us to love our neighbor and to make that a priority and to see our neighbor as someone who's created in your image and so that we can love them more fully and out of that we can see many of the issues that are facing start to dissipate as we care for one another even above ourselves. I pray that you guide the city council right now, give them wisdom, give them patience, and give them endurance as they lead in such a difficult time. I pray this in your name. Amen.
Thank you, Mayor Licardo, Councilmember Foley, rest of the members of the council, and Pastor Cole especially, for thank you for inviting me to join you this afternoon. Jews around the world just finished celebrating our high holiday season last week. According to the Jewish calendar, we are at the beginning of the year 5782. On Yom Kippur, the holiest day of the year, I shared an ancient teaching with my congregation that I'd like to share with you today. It's a story, a midrash or a legend about Adam and Eve in the Garden of Eden. After creating the first human beings, God led them around the Garden of Eden and said, "Look at my works. See how beautiful they are, how excellent. For your sake I created them all. See to it that you do not spoil and destroy my world; for if you do, there will be no one else to repair it." I had a lot more to say about our responsibility, not just as Jews, but as human beings, to be devoted stewards of the earth. And as this legend puts it, we collectively are the only ones who can repair our world. Now, even though individual consumers can't make much difference, I urged us, our congregation, to identify those actions that are within our capacity and to do more, much more than we were already doing. And then I said the following to my congregation. I said, "If you're in a position to make a difference on the supply side of the equation, you are our best hope. If you can influence the decision-makers in government or are in government, or if you're in a position in your company to change policies and practices, to be a better environmental steward, our children and grandchildren are counting on you. So I figured I'd better take my own advice. So as the stewards entrusted with leading our great city of San Jose, always remember that we are, all of us, stewards of this beautiful earth. May the Creator of all flesh bless you and all your undertakings. As you confront the challenges facing our city, may God bestow upon you strength of courage and insight to always consider the long-range impacts, not only on the people who make up our community, but upon the earth itself. Amen."
Thank you, Rabbi. Thank you, both of you. I really appreciate the multi-denominational blessing that we received today. I appreciate it very much. All right, we have several ceremonial items. And we'll begin with Councilmember Arenas to recognize and proclaim Bullying Prevention Month.
Arenas, I invite our special guests who are here for this recognition in their efforts of Anti-Bullying Prevention Month. Good afternoon, I'm Sylvia Arenas. I'm councilmember in District 8, and I have behind me and right next to me wonderful leaders in our Evergreen Elementary School District. I wanted to talk a little bit about just the bullying that's been happening in this last year. I know that all of you who have children and maybe children in your lives have noticed that there's an increase in contact because this is the way that we're connecting with one another. And it's so important for us to, as the rabbi just finished saying, that we are the stewards of this earth. We're stewards of this earth to protect it, but we're also here stewards of this earth to protect our children. And so Bullying Prevention Month laid the groundwork to educate communities and shift the thinking from bullying as a rite of passage, as many people have sometimes labeled bullying incidents. And instead of looking at it that way, look at how harmful that behavior can have lifelong negative effects on our children. It can leave devastating and long-term impacts that can lead to a loss of self-esteem, increased anxiety, depression, and we have seen increases of suicide amongst our children. Like I mentioned, last year, there was an increase of contact with each other via internet, and so there was an increase in cyberbullying. Our cyber unit here in the San Jose PD also did some really wonderful work in intercepting a lot of crimes against children, and so I also want to thank them for the work that they've done. But the work that gets done in our schools is the work that stays with us and creates a long-lasting impact on all of us. And according to the National Center for Educational Statistics, one of every five students report being bullied. This leadership behind me and next to me have recognized that, and so they have put together this wonderful program. And Mr. Kevin Armstrong, our principal over at Katherine Smith Elementary, when I happen to mention Welch Community Center and the Welch Neighborhood, which is all the time, I'm always talking about Welch. K. Smith is the elementary right next to this community center and this park, and they are really the hub for our community. Our parents go there for support, our students go there not only just to learn, but also to thrive. And so what they have done is they've taken a different approach to preventing bullying behavior, and they empower their students to be leaders through their Leaders for Success program that helps create a positive school culture. They implement their K. Smith habits, which are to think, learn, work, communicate, collaborate, and contribute now. Well, we could take up those K. Smith habits here too at council. And throughout their lives and their positive behavioral interventions and support program which promotes positive behavior, teachers teaches behavior expectations, reinforces positive behavior, and utilizes restorative practices to reduce reoccurrence of problems. And that's one of the best ways, and it's the best practice as always, to have a positive reinforcement approach. I'm so proud of the work that they do to empower our students to not only stop bullying, but also to be leaders in our community and to not be bystanders, but speak up. And so thank you, Mr. Armstrong, and the entire Katherine Smith community for your dedication to our students. And of course, our superintendent, Emmy Flores, Ms. Linda, who's here and is actually the person that is in charge of the program, and so I really appreciate it.
Ms. Bautista.
And so thank you for that work that you do, that is patient work every day. And so I'd like to challenge the rest of us who don't do this work on a daily basis to take inspiration from all of you and to do our part to stop bullying and choose to be kind to one another. And with election season coming upon us, this challenge also applies to adults and especially everybody in this room. So thank you so much. And I'd like to ask our mayor to hand the commendation and ask Mr. Armstrong if he'd like to say a couple of words, please.
Why don't you go ahead and speak, and then we'll take photos and all that. Good afternoon, Mayor Licardo. Thank you, sir. Steamed councilmembers and attendees, and a very special thank you to Councilmember Arenas for inviting me here to speak on behalf of the Katherine Smith community. Our children show up to school every day in a very different place than they did two years ago. You all know this and feel this, and the traumas they've experienced cannot be undone, but we know it's our responsibility to make sure that we support them, their families, and the entire community. Bullying Prevention Month is the perfect opportunity for us to reinforce these tenants with your kindness, inclusion, and acceptance. And so I'd like to tell you a little bit about how our school approaches that, by sharing what it's like every Monday when our students show up. We begin every day on Mondays with Morning Pride, which is a school-wide assembly. Imagine every student TK through 6, all the staff, all together, to connect as a family. The first thing we do is the Panther pledge, where we commit, as Councilmember Arenas said, to our habits, which are think critically, learn continuously, work intentionally, communicate effectively, collaborate constructively, and contribute globally. These are the standards that we hold our students to. Now, for the purposes of this proclamation, I'd like to highlight one element within contribute, which is being kind to others and being empowered to make a difference. To help these students develop these capacities, there are a few things that are really important at every Morning Pride meeting. You heard the Panther pledge above, but then we talk about the toolbox, which is an SEO program to support the social-emotional wellness of our students. So for example, this week we focused on the empathy tool, which is taking care of yourself and others, which we all know is so important right now. We then highlight a PBIS school expectation. This week it's work to solve problems. Are students able to ask an adult for help? Can they take accountability and be responsible for themselves? We follow this with opportunities for students to recognize each other. So students TK through 6 can come up and say, "Hi, my name is Daniel. I'm graduating from USC in 2036, and I'd like to recognize my friend for doing an excellent job of listening with empathy." That's a pretty special thing to see. Then we have college cheers. So every now, I went to University of Colorado. Nobody picked that school, so I don't get to do the CU cheer anymore. Go Buffs, right? It's what you see. Whenever you see a sticker on a car, you always say, "Go Buffs." But every school, excuse me, every classroom has a college, and they do those cheers. And it's not just to be loud and wake the neighbors up. It's to make sure that we engrain the idea in our students' head that they have the right to be prepared for college and beyond. Whether or not they choose to go that route is up to them, but they have a right to do it. And we end the meeting with a call and response, where I say, "Whose day is it?", and the students yell, "Our day." That's the way that we end. Now, once the kids get into class, that's where the real magic happens. That's where the teachers sit everyone down for a morning circle, talk about how they're doing, check in with each other. And I share these approaches with you because teaching students about bullying and the efforts it takes to change those things, they start by creating space for our children to be themselves, to be accepted, to build confidence, to build strong relationships. And I really would like to acknowledge our incredible staff that show up every day believing in kids, our district leadership for creating conditions for our success, and of course, Councilmember Arenas for supporting our community every step of the way. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you, and thank you for all what you're doing every day for our children. All right, Councilmember Carrasco is right here. We're recognizing Domestic Violence Awareness Month.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you, Mayor. And I'm very proud and lucky to work with an amazing council that supports those survivors of domestic violence or intimate violence. And I'd like to invite my council colleagues that would like to join us in recognizing the month of October. Well, hello, everybody. I'm Magdalena Carrasco, and I represent the beautiful east side of San Jose. I have the privilege and honor of serving what I believe is the largest Latino demographics in the Bay Area region. And we know that this was a community that was hit particularly hard by COVID-19. Unfortunately, COVID-19 and all the measures that we took to safeguard our communities only helped to exasperate another epidemic, domestic violence. Domestic violence silences our people, forcing them into isolation, cutting them off from their critical support systems, their family, their friends, their comadres, and other very important resources. According to a 2017 CDC report, more than 1 in 3 Latina women, that's 34.4%, reported being a victim of an intimate partner's sexual or physical violence or stalking. But ultimately, domestic violence cuts across all demographics and ethnic backgrounds, all socioeconomic status, gender, sexual orientation, and destroys our sense of safety. We recognize October as Domestic Violence Awareness Month so that we may understand the science of an unhealthy relationship, so that we can learn to connect those living with domestic violence to those crucial resources and support systems. And we recognize it in order to honor those who have lost their lives to domestic violence. While COVID-19 lockdowns worked to decrease the spread of the deadly virus, they intentionally created the ideal environment for increased domestic violence. And according to a 2020 UC Davis study, augmented stress brought upon by the COVID-19 pandemic caused by income loss and lack of ability to pay for housing and food exasperated the often silent epidemic of intimate partner violence. We owe those women and men a shining light. They deserve recognition. They deserve empathy. Above all, they deserve help. I cut my teeth in public service as a social worker in our local community. That was many years ago, 30 to be exact, and I chose to work with the perpetrators, men who were struggling with power and control, anger, and entitlement. I wanted to break the cycle of violence, and I wanted to understand how to help domestic violence victims. Working through the troubling social trends and issues that plague our San Jose families and communities was what motivated me to enter public service. We want to identify the signs of abuse. A new relationship doesn't always show the signs of DV. Possessive and controlling behaviors don't always appear overnight and may even be interpreted as a caring gesture. In many cases, abusers often exploit their partner's immigration status as a tool of control. In such situations, it's common for a batter to exert control over his partner's immigration status to force her to remain in that relationship. And for that reason, I'm proud that we as a city are rallying behind those living through domestic violence. It's an honor to be standing here and be joined by Esther Peralas-Digman from Nextdoor Solutions to Domestic Violence as they celebrate, get this, 50 years of service. I'm proud also, absolutely. I'm also proud to say that the city of San Jose was the first funder to the Women's Alliance. Women's Alliance would eventually become Nextdoor. And I want to mention a founder of it, Bea Mendez. Many of you know her. We owe a world of gratitude to her as well. The services that you all provide, Esther, those 15,000 crises calls and an average of 3,000 survivors of domestic violence served annually have without a doubt saved lives. And let me emphasize, domestic violence is not a private matter. It's a public health crisis. In a just society, we should be able to feel safe in our own homes, in our loving relationships. We should look to our partners for safety and security and not fear. I want to make sure that everyone who's listening knows that we love you and we are here for you. If you want to say enough, ya basta, to domestic violence, I ask you to join my office and Nextdoor Solutions on October 8th, that's this Friday, on a walk to end domestic violence. Thank you so much. And Mayor, if you could please present the proclamation. And I'd like to ask, yes, absolutely.
We'd like to thank the city council and the mayor for this commendation that I accept on behalf of all the domestic violence agencies in the San Jose area. Together, we operate 24 hours a day, 365 days a year without stopping. Through COVID, all the agencies remain functioning and open, and we continue to help people in what has been arguably the worst year in Nextdoor history. We're proud to celebrate 50 years. We were the second domestic violence agency from the humble beginnings of a garage set up by Bea Robinson Mendez, where they started helping women at a time when we didn't even have the words for domestic violence. We didn't have the laws to protect survivors. She and some friends set out to make sure there were options for women who were being abused. They were the second domestic violence agency set up in California, and they were the first in the nation to offer bilingual services in their shelter. It is a legacy of moving people from violence and chaos into safety, self-sufficiency, and a better quality of life. It's ironic that we're here in the halls of City Hall, and the city of San Jose first funded Nextdoor Solutions. Since that time, we've relied on a variety of funders. It takes an entire community to build the alliances and support that we need to end domestic violence. This Friday, we want to commend the city council for bringing back the Walk to End Domestic Violence. It's an event that we in the domestic violence community have missed, have really wanted to see come back, and with the leadership we have now, we're very proud to partner with you and have that walk come back on Friday night. Please join us there. And also join us on October 16th at Villa Ragusa in Campbell, California for Light Up the Night, our 50th celebration for Nextdoor Solutions. It's a night of music, of remembrance, and a lot of good auction items. Thank you very much to all of you for your leadership, for your commitment to ending gender-based violence on behalf of survivors everywhere. Thank you all.
Okay, Councilwoman Sparza, don't go far. Because we're going to commend several community leaders from the West Evergreen Neighborhood Association and Obi Whaley Elementary School. Come on down, if you fit that description. All right.
Thank you. Come on, Dan. Thank you for staying. I know, thank you. Come on, Haley, don't hide. All right, Emmy, here, we'll scoot over so we can see each other. So I'm so honored today to offer this commendation for the West Evergreen Neighborhood Association and the Obi Whaley Elementary School and the Evergreen Elementary School District. So today is all about the Evergreen Elementary School District. And these are two organizations that fought really hard to bring rental assistance resources, vaccines, and food assistance to the West Evergreen Neighborhood, a community that has been hit very hard in the 95122 during COVID. It's a community that's been hit hard economically, a community that's been hit hard health-wise as well. And so thanks to their leadership, the school district, the school, the neighborhood association, the city, and the county, we all came together to offer a joint, two joint pop-up rental assistance and vaccine clinics at Obi Whaley. And it was just kind of a leap of faith. You know, we went to our own housing department, and we're like, "Let's do it." They're like, "All right, sounds good." And we did the request to the county, and they're like, "Are you sure we'll get people? Okay, well, we're in." You know, it was a leap of faith. And then it just turned out to be inundated with folks. And so these efforts helped dozens of families and often a very hard-to-reach community get the support that they need to be healthy and stay housed, and particularly as we reach the end of the eviction moratorium, which we did last Thursday, and the continued danger from the Delta variant. And so I'd also like to give a shout out to Sandra Murillo in our housing department. I don't think she's here today, but she's our get-it-done person when it comes to setting up the rental assistance centers. And we all knew how important this was to the community. Many of folks actually walked to the vaccine. They brought family members, they brought loved ones to come to Obi Whaley because they knew the school, they trusted the school, they trusted the neighborhood association. I think Nancy Keo is here. She had a little table set up in her front yard so that the community could know where to get help. And so their work and their focus on food assistance has also brought, helped bring a food distribution that will be starting at Obi Whaley on November 4th, because there really isn't one in that whole West Evergreen community. And I just wanted to take the time before I give the shout out to the folks standing next to me, that for those that need help with rental assistance, if you rent a room, if you sublease, if you rent a shed, if you rent a couch, you can get help. So there's a phone number, 408-975-4444. And there are two places you can go in person where you can get help in four different languages, and that's here at City Hall, Monday through Friday, from 8 to 5 on the 12th floor. The other one is at the Franklin McKinley School District Office at 645 Wool Creek Drive, and that's Monday through Friday from 10 to 6, except on Wednesdays when it's from 1 to 8. So I'd like especially to thank the West Evergreen Neighborhood Association, the Obi Whaley Principal Linda Mora, and our wonderful Evergreen School District Superintendent Emmy Flores, who was very involved in all of this, and all the neighborhood and school staff that made this possible, especially Nancy Keo, Michael Hua, Charlotte Kimball, and Haley Nguyen from the West Evergreen Neighborhood Association. Nguyen from the West Evergreen Neighborhood Association. And again, I thanked Sandra Murillo and also the County Public Health Office who came out, they brought a bunch of folks out because they were willing to take that leap of faith and go where the community is. And with that, I'm so honored to present the commendation today. Who wants it? There are two. There's one for Weena and one for Linda.
Thank you. Thank you so much for your leadership.
Quick photo.
I just feel a little shout out. I just want to tell. Looks like we're doing things just a little bit backwards today, but I really wanted just to take the opportunity to thank the City Council, Mayor Liccardo, and really thank Maya Asparza as well, and just all the members of District 7, who really saw the need for what was going on, especially with regard to COVID and the need for rental assistance, also the need for COVID-19 vaccines. And I want to just say, I am just deeply humbled by the honor of receiving this award on behalf of the Evergreen School District at Obi Whaley. And I want to give another shout out too to Dr. Flores as well for saying yes when we were told that we wouldn't be able to have anything at our school sites. And when she heard what was happening, she said, oh, no, we're definitely going to have something here for the Obi Whaley community. It was incredibly important, and we couldn't do anything without Weena. So thank you so much to the West Evergreen Neighborhood Association. You're all champions, and I am just deeply humbled and grateful. So thank you.
All right. As we end our ceremonials on that bright note, we will move on to Orders of the Day.
Does anyone in the council have changes to the printed agenda? With Councilmember Cohen, I'd like to defer item 2.10, which is the amendment relating to, of the municipal code relating to Department of Contractors. Are there other changes? We'll entertain a motion.
Move approval.
Second.
All right, let's vote on Orders of the Day. All right, that's unanimous. We're on to the closed session report, Nora.
Thank you, Mayor. We do not have a report out of closed session today.
Thank you. On the consent calendar, items that council would like to pull. I'd like to pull item 2.8, which relates to San Jose Clean Energy. Are there any other items? Okay, why don't we go to public comment?
Tessa Woodmansey.
Thank you, Tessa Woodmansey. Thank you for my two minutes. I really appreciate it. Well, we're looking at clean energy, and as we go forward into our climate emergency, we have to really step up our activity, and we're not doing it, you know? It's a lot of talk about it, and we really need to start looking at what we're doing. And we really need that. That's something that we, why we're looking at wanting to or needing to put into our charter is that we need to look at the chart of how we're going to zero, because we have no idea. And that's where, you know, Greta Thunberg says, a lot of blah, 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 because, you know, we can say we're going green, we have clean energy, but let's really look at it, and let's really see what the status of our reduction in fossil fuels and our path to zero emissions, because that is where we need to go. And we're just going full speed ahead in development, and we're not using the wisdom of how we're supposed to go forward is really to start growing food locally, and that's degrowth. We need to have degrowth, and that is where the agenda is really off track, because that is how we're going to get to zero. We have to go back to the way we were originally as a species. A small village is connected to our landscape, which is connected to our food, growing our food. And it is the industrialization of our world that brought everybody out of, you know, it used to be 99% of us were growing food and, you know, supporting other 1%. Now it's 1% of people growing food, supporting 99% of us. And that has to switch. That's the transformational change we need, is to start, and it really will come from a, like they said, in terms of domestic violence, in terms of our money. We need to have universal basic income, to transition away from jobs, to transition towards self-sufficiency and universal.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. To be clear, I'm offering public comment on this polled item, and then I'll be allowed public comment again when the remainder of consent calendar items will be approved, to make that nice and clear. I hope we can practice that. Thank you. Again, I thank you for all the work of the SJCE and community in their recent efforts to address PG&E and issues like AB 1139 at the state level. From this, a thank you in learning how we can be, we can be better aware of our own local community energy issues, practices, and needs. It is an important goal of many, but to put serious effort into our better practices of renewable energy and its local procurement now, this can help ourselves transfer easier and return to our more regular, good practices and routines after any future large Bay Area natural disaster events or emergencies in the next decade. The good work to develop and practice open accountable, open public policy ideas can work much in the same way. To be clear, it is renewable energy and renewable, sustainable energy that is our hopeful and more practical future and not nuclear. Thank you in the efforts and work of SJCE. You're trying hard to address, you know, previous funding obligations that you had at the federal level. We're entering a new age of subsidy now that I really hope you can learn to make that clear to low-income people of San Jose and what their options are and accessibility to the future of community energy. We're making attempts to work on that in San Jose. Keep up those good efforts. Make things accessible and understandable to your everyday community. Thank you.
Mr. Beekman, we're not going to have an additional comment. Did you want to add any additional comments for the remainder of the consent calendar?
Thank you. I wanted to speak on the domestic violence issues of Rotunda area. I had maybe a 15-second thing to say about that.
Please proceed.
Thank you, sir. To address the item about domestic violence awareness ceremony and lighting issues at the Rotunda, I'm becoming better aware of how much vetting is needed to define the future of good healing practices and how the police peer review program can be an important part to help address the future of domestic violence issues. Good luck in efforts that should be able to become inclusive to all ideas of healing and therapy. And a thank you and a good luck in the efforts to be sure of good, open communication between established SJ domestic violence programs and newly developing counseling programs for the workplace. Thank you.
Zeke Sandoval.
Can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Thank you very much. Good afternoon. This is Zeke Sandoval, speaking on behalf of PATH, people assisting the homeless, in strong support of item 8.2 on the agenda. We have a tremendous opportunity.
We're not there yet.
Oh, we're not there yet. Oh, my apologies. I will wait. Thank you.
Please do raise your hand. We'll be at 8.2 toward the end of our meeting. Okay, thank you. I just wanted to offer a little comment on item 2.8, which is a San Jose Clean Energy item. Big thank you certainly to our San Jose Clean Energy team. I see Lori Mitchell's here, Zach Strick, and the whole team, and the service providers that will be delivering the work, as well as State California.
Tomorrow, we're going to be proclaiming Energy Efficiency Day in partnership with the National Resources Defense Council, and I believe, I believe Secretary, no, that will be the following day. Anyway, I'll get to that item shortly. The American Council for an Energy Efficient Economy has just ranked San Jose among the top 10 cities for energy efficiency in the United States this year. We are number nine, but of course, we are not satisfied until we beat LA, so we are going to continue to strive to be number one. And in particular, they noted the city team's leadership on building Reach Code and Climate Smart Challenge that has been built, already builds on our strong policies that have been enacted through our Energy and Water Performance Ordinance, and of course, the creation of San Jose Clean Energy itself. And really wanted to thank everybody for their collective efforts in partnership with many, many in the community. So with that, I will accept the motion on all the items.
To approve the consent calendar.
Second.
Okay, it's a motion second. I don't see any comments. Let's vote. Onto item 3.1, Jennifer. This is the report of the city manager.
Thank you, Mayor. I have no report today.
All right, item 3.3 is the Code Enforcement Management Controls Audit Report. Welcome, Joe and Rachel and team.
I'm joined by Shirley Wong for my office to present our audit of Code Enforcement Management Controls, improvements to oversight, and coordination needed. Also in the box are Chris Burton and Rachel Roberts from the Department of Planning, Building and Code Enforcement, Angel Rios from the City Matters Office, and Lieutenant Spears from the Police Department. The mission of the Code Enforcement Division of the Department of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement, or PBCE, is to work in partnership with the people of San Jose to promote and maintain a safe and desirable living and working environment. The division aims to improve the quality of life for residents through outreach, education, and enforcement of ordinances in the San Jose Municipal Code, including building and zoning codes. Code enforcement programs are wide-ranging and include general code enforcement, multiple housing, and other special programs. General code enforcement addresses issues such as blight, multiple housing inspections ensure facilities like apartments comply with the Municipal Code. And special programs, including massage and cannabis programs coordinated with the Police Department, are fee-based programs that regulate specific businesses. The objective of this audit was to review code enforcement management oversight. It was added to our work plan by the Rules Committee in November 2020, following charges that a former code inspector assigned to the massage program had abused his position for personal gain. Based on the city council's request, we broadly reviewed the timeline of events relating to the city's complaint handling and coordination of the massage program by code enforcement and the Police Department. The first finding is that the city received multiple anonymous allegations of inspector misconduct. In September 2020, a former code enforcement inspector was charged with 14 felony charges related to extortion of sex and bribery for massage business owners in San Jose. While the inspector was working with the city, the city received anonymous letters and complaints in late 2018 and early 2019 alleging inappropriate or criminal activity by the inspector. Because of the anonymous nature of the allegations, the city was unable to investigate as there was no way to contact the complainants. In addition, a gap in communication between departments limited the ability for code enforcement or the Office of Employee Relations to respond. At the time of the audit, code enforcement's internal incident policy did not provide guidance on how to address extortion, bribery, or other serious concerns, and we have a recommendation for code enforcement to revise the policy accordingly. Also, at the time of the audit, the city's whistleblower hotline policy did not document the process for addressing potential criminal complaints. During the audit, the Office of Employee Relations, or OER, updated the policies to document that process, including ensuring that all departments are notified as appropriate. OER has also revised the city's on-loan whistleblower hotline form and instructions potentially to gather additional information, including uploaded documents to help substantiate anonymous complaints. As part of our work, we reviewed the flow of information around how the anonymous complaints were handled, to better understand and make recommendations around that process. We did not conduct a personnel investigation into the former code inspector's alleged criminal activities or assess potential delays in closures of illicit massage businesses. To the extent the council has additional questions about the inspector's activities, they should consider hiring an outside investigator under the charter authority. The second finding is that the massage program needs to define goals and responsibilities to strengthen management oversight. In 2015, the city council passed an ordinance that modified the regulation of massage businesses in San Jose. In 2017, council prioritized massage program, also known as the Personal Care Business Compliance Initiative, to enforce the city's massage ordinance. The Police Department oversees the massage program in coordination with code enforcement. Program goals include ensuring massage businesses are permitted and operating in accordance with the ordinance, closing illicit massage businesses, and preventing human trafficking. Since fiscal years 2017-18, the police vice unit has reported closing over 200 illicit massage businesses. The map on the slide shows the location of illicit massage businesses closed by the vice unit during that time, oh, I'm sorry, between 2017 and March 2021. However, the program has not fully met the intent of the massage ordinance. As of April 2021, just 16 massage businesses had an active massage permit, whereas over 200 businesses described their nature of business as massage on their business tax certificate and may require a massage permit under the Municipal Code. At the beginning of the audit, there was a limited coordination between the vice unit and the Police Department's human trafficking team. During the audit, the vice unit began notifying the human trafficking team before taking enforcement actions at illicit massage businesses. In addition, the responsibilities of the code inspector and coordination between code and the Police Department were unclear and not well documented. We have several recommendations, including developing a roster of massage businesses subject to the ordinance, conducting outreach and posting information online about the ordinance, standardizing the human trafficking team's role in the program, clearly defining code's role in the program and consider background or use of partners, to mitigate risk of high-risk inspections, and finally, establishing performance goals and enhancing supervisory oversight of inspectors. Our third finding is that code enforcement can improve supervisory oversight and staff guidance. Following the charges against the former inspector, PBCE created a plan to improve management and accountability in the Code Enforcement Division. Among the action items in the plan are adding supervisory staff dedicated to special programs, providing regular trainings for supervisors, random customer audits by supervisors, and adding contact information online and on business cards for customers to report concerns. We also noted some important elements of a positive organizational culture. An employee survey that we conducted showed staff feel that division management is responsive to concerns and ideas for improvement, and that they feel that their work matters. However, we did identify gaps in oversight and the need for clarity and expectation for staff. For example, supervisors can better ensure inspector's work aligns with vision policies, and updated policies would help set standard expectations for both staff and supervisors. We noted the division has over 90 different policies, with an average age of over 11 years, and some of which were obsolete, and some of the work they do is not covered in the policies. So we recommended creating or updating policies, developing training for new supervisors, and establishing a regular review of a sample of closed cases to ensure compliance with division policies. In addition, we found that the division did not maintain a log of customer complaints, which will be important as we begin to add complaint contact information to business cards, which is part of the accountability, management accountability plan I mentioned earlier. There are also no clear performance expectations or targets for case closure rates or timings. Overall, open general code cases have grown despite a decline of new complaints. Finally, at the time of the audit, some staff had not had performance evaluations in well over a year, and so we had also made recommendations to address each of these items as well. Our report includes a total of 20 recommendations to improve code enforcement management controls and the coordination of the massage program. We'd like to thank the Department of Planning, Building, and Code Enforcement, the Police Department, the Office of Employee Relations, and the City Attorney's Office for their time and insight during the audit process. I ask you, accept this report, and we're happy to answer any questions. I'll now turn over to the administration for their response.
Yes, thank you. Thank you, Joe. I'm going to start off before I turn it over to staff for the formal administration's response, but I response, but I want to let the mayor, the city council, the community, and our employees know that this incident that triggered the audit is absolutely unacceptable, and it has had a deep and significant impact on the department and on our staff. This has really forced us to carefully reflect on our processes and procedures to eliminate the risk of future incidents like this. After the incident was known, our planning, building, code enforcement, management team immediately initiated a review of management and oversight, and has worked closely with the Police Department and the City Manager's Office to implement steps to address the concerns, which you'll hear about more in a few minutes. The administration does appreciate the opportunity to work with the auditor to further that review process and continue to improve our management of this important function. Through our improvement on our management oversight and our work protocols, we will ensure that there is the utmost confidence in our code enforcement operations, as we must have that with all of our city operations. And with that, I'll turn it over to staff.
Thank you, Jennifer. Good afternoon, I'm Rachel Roberts, Deputy Director of Code Enforcement, here to present the administration's response to the audit of Code Enforcement Management Controls. With me today is Lieutenant Brian Spears with the Police Department, PBCE Director Chris Burton, Deputy City Manager Angel Rios, and Deputy City Manager Jennifer Shembry. Thank you. As Jennifer indicated and referenced in the audit, code enforcement developed a management oversight and accountability improvement plan approved by City Manager Dave Sykes to implement immediate measures in addition to the audit recommendations to improve our management and oversight of not only the massage program, but also all programs in some instances. Some highlights from this plan that have been implemented or are in progress include implementation of a partner system for massage program inspections, to have two inspectors at every massage inspection when conducted, a body worn camera pilot currently in development, mandatory supervisor-inspector ride-alongs included as part of the supervisor performance standards, random customer audits, and intermittent case review by supervisors and division managers, in which the supervisor or manager follows up directly with the customer on a service delivery and customer service protocols for all programs. We've also instituted inspector rotations for the massage program that will occur a minimum of every two years, or as often as needed, and ensuring that there is robust cross-training opportunities across all programs. We've also in the process of adding information on reporting inappropriate employee conduct to the code enforcement via the website, the documents, and our business cards. We are also actively working to address the vacancies with changes to our MQs for the code enforcement inspector position to expand our candidate pool. Currently running an open until filled recruitment process, and we're already seeing positive results. Working on establishing a retention plan to continue to employ the great staff that we have, and adding and over-strength positions in the interim to include a half-time code enforcement inspector to assist with inspections, as well as a code enforcement supervisor. In addition to code enforcement's own improvement plan, the administration is working diligently to complete the 20 audit recommendations. Staff agrees with and can readily implement 14 of the recommendations, which have been greenlit accordingly. Staff also agrees with, or substantially agrees with, five yellowlit recommendations that will require time staffing and/or resources to complete and implement. There is one recommendation, number two, that is specifically for council consideration. And of the 20 recommendations, staff has already completed five, which are pending auditor approval, including number 10, 14, 15, 16, and 20. In development of this administration response, it was very much a collaborative effort and coordinated effort between the Police Department of San Jose, code enforcement, and support from Office of Employee Relations, the City Attorney's Office, and the Budget Office. We determined that most recommendations can be readily implemented, however, several will require additional time and staffing and resources to implement. The administration is collaborating to clarify and refine roles and responsibilities of the Police Department and code enforcement with oversight from the City Manager's Office. Resources will be evaluated to inform changes to the massage permit fee, and we anticipate bringing forward revisions to the massage parlor fee program and corresponding staffing level adjustments, such as making the half-time inspector and full-position supervisor permanent as part of the 22-23 proposed budget development process. To date, staff has implemented five recommendations, as I mentioned previously, including number 10 and 14, which includes establishing procedures for regular supervisory and division manager review of cases in both the massage and cannabis programs, and number 16, maintaining confidential complaint logs related to inspector conduct, including the date of the complaint and how it was handled. Staff has also begun work on recommendations that will require additional time, staffing, and resources to implement, including number three, creating a roster of businesses that are part of the program and an outreach model to inform businesses of the program and ordinance. Number five, a procedure for permit renewal notification of our massage businesses. And number eight, consider backgrounding and a partner policy for massage and cannabis programs. Number 12, to update the code enforcement policies and procedures. And then number 17, to develop new targets and track code enforcement massage and cannabis We want to recognize the San Jose Police Department, the City Attorney's Office, the Budget Office, and the Office of Employee Relations for their collaboration and coordination in developing this response. The administration would like to thank the city auditor's office for the comprehensive audit of the code enforcement management controls and oversight, and we appreciate the city auditor office's hard work and professionalism in conducting this audit. And we are committed to implementing all recommendations to improve the overall management and oversight and reduce the risk for criminal conduct or other unethical behavior. This concludes our report.
Okay, let's go to the public first.
Thank you very much. You know, we've had so many problems with the code enforcement, or the lack of code enforcement, that what we've noticed, you know, when we are dealing with being on the border between commercial and residential, is that there was no code enforcement in regards to pollution, pollution or noise. And this is still a problem, that is, the quality of life. And, you know, you're dealing with, you know, criminal activity, you know, in terms of your massage, but it's really how the code enforcement is not being subsidized to really do a good job to create, well, you know, these protections that we're talking about in this issue, but as well as in our community, our quality of life. That the code enforcement was really good if, like, you had weeds in your front yard, you could get $250 fine every day if you didn't cut the weed down. But in terms of our, you know, quality of life and issues like noise and pollution that really affects our health, there was no code enforcement. So we really need to be developing a code enforcement that really works on the quality of life issues, as well as, of course, these criminal issues that you're addressing. But, you know, that was very much an issue in our community, and I see it all the time in our, in our neighbors, you know, struggling with noise, and you, we have nothing, you know, the code, you call code enforcement, they say, "Oh, we don't have a noise ordinance, we don't have, we don't have the little decibel readers." And, you know, this is where we don't have a good quality of life in the city of San Jose, and that we need to be putting more resources into our code enforcement, and that it be, you know, government over business and over, you know, basically, you know, the effects of quality of life and to improve that. So I'm really hoping that we, we do get a comprehensive noise ordinance, and we have a successful code enforcement to really enforce that and develop a stronger quality of life protections through.
Moving on to Perla Flores. Ingrid, I think we accidentally lost you, if you want to re-raise your hand, but up right now is Perla Flores.
Good afternoon. I want to first of all commend council members Arenas and Macalena Carrasco for your continued efforts in ensuring that survivors of gender-based violence are provided the utmost support and call in and support of the recommendations that came out of the audit, and particularly recommendation to strengthen support to survivors of gender-based violence. Santa Clara County House, the South Bay Coalition, and human trafficking, the past almost 15 years, has ensured a coordinated response, in-person response, and support for survivors of gender-based violence, particularly human trafficking survivors. And the support goes from crisis to long-term sustainability and stability, and looking forward to working in close partnership with San Jose APD to ensure that survivors that are identified in the field can have access to all of the supportive services that they are entitled to. And thank you again for ensuring that this ongoing support and your commitment to survivors of gender-based violence in San Jose and throughout the county.
Back to the mayor.
Thank you. Joe, thank you for the audit. You've identified many, many points of concern beyond the deeply, deeply disturbing allegations that emerged involving this particular inspector, who's since been under criminal investigation, I believe, under prosecution now. I have a lot of questions, but let me just ask one, and I want to then yield to my colleagues. Appreciate council members Carrasco and Arenas and the work on the memo that we co-signed, as well as Councilmember Prossis' memo, support all those recommendations. I just saw that recommendation number eight has not been yet fully implemented, and that was the one regarding acquiring partnering and backgrounding, which would seem to be a fairly straightforward recommendation. I'm just wondering why that hasn't been implemented yet, given what we know about the particular case involving alleged sexual assault.
So we have partially implemented this at this point. If there is a code enforcement inspection that's happening for the massage businesses, they are going out with another inspector. However, we are looking to add funding to.
I'm sorry, it's difficult to hear through the mask.
Sorry. Okay. So that's partially implemented in that if there is a code enforcement inspection happening for massage businesses, we are sending a mountain of team of two. However, we are looking to make support for that program more permanent through the over-strength position, as well as this next fiscal year, adding a position to provide that support. As far as the backgrounding, it's a matter of, once we've nailed down the refined roles of code enforcement in this program, then we'll know what level of backgrounding needs to occur.
Okay. Yeah, I mean, I don't know what the cost is of backgrounding. I know there's a lot of different levels to be done. I've been backgrounded myself. It just seems to me a very simple, straightforward CGCII check, really just basic understanding, are there arrests out there? That should not be something that would be hard to implement, and frankly, all of our code enforcement officers may be, I think, would be in the position, potentially, of abusing their authority in a way that we probably should be doing backgrounds on everybody. Why not?
So all employees are backgrounded to a certain extent when they're hired, but this would be in addition to that. So, and I don't know if Lieutenant Spears wants to speak to it as well.
Good afternoon, Mayor. I could definitely see the concern on the ongoing, specifically when they're assigned to, whether it's the massage business or the cannabis. I just see a few challenges. Criminal-wise, I won't foresee a problem. However, it would be more of the dive into social media to have a better understanding of what their thought processes, friends, associates, prior to. So that would be the only modification I would request.
Okay. And I appreciate their varying levels of depth at which we could be probing into someone's background. It seems to me, you know, not to make the perfect the enemy the good, setting a basic standard that we'd all agree is someone we'd want everyone to be held to, I think, would be helpful, and then we can take more time with something deeper. But anyway, I just think it'd be important for us to put something in place. But thank you. Let's go to my colleagues.
Thank you, Mayor. I've been following this issue since I've been part of the Public Safety Strategic Support Committee, and when it came to us, there were some things that were red flags for myself, just as a woman, not necessarily looking at it through any other lens. I certainly did later on look through some policy lenses to see what can we do to improve the closure of a lot of these massage parlors that were happening. As we were listening to some of the reports that were coming back to committee, we were being told that many of them were administrative. A lot of these massage parlor closures were administrative, and so that was a really good strategy and effective strategy. But when that wasn't appropriate, or they weren't able to do that, then they would have some of these sting operations in which there were some undercover folks from our Police Department. And in that, there was a team of code enforcement, district attorney, and then our Police Department units. And so at that point, I wondered why there wasn't an advocate somewhere in the, in the picture to provide their voice and their experience to this process, because it's not, this process isn't just about closing illegal massage parlors that may provide some illegal sex work, but it's also to protect those that may be, may be trafficking, are trafficked by others, or who have been groomed to serve as sex workers. And, and it was a, it was an opportunity for us to really add something to this conversation. And so to me, knowing that this person is, was in this place creates just great anxiety and frustration and sadness, because this person added not only turmoil to something that was already very tumultuous, but it didn't allow for the transparency that we were all working towards. And one of the suggestions that I had made at that time was And one of the suggestions that I had made at that time was, um, when they go, when this unit goes out, that, that an advocate goes out. I never, I never for a minute thought that, and, and maybe this is part of what we need to discuss, and I'm glad to see that there's a lot of these recommendations that have been completed or in the process of being completed. But never for a moment did I think that any one of our employees would be the originator of, of, would create even an added level of just egregious acts. And although they are alleged acts, and we, we haven't seen what the courts have decided on this case, we know, um, from what we've been told, um, that there's, that there is sexual assault involved in, in these, in this case. And so, um, and we missed an opportunity to connect with some victims, some survivors. They're not survivors of human trafficking. They continue to be victims of human trafficking. And to me, that's, that creates, um, a lot of guilt and a lot of, of pain in, in my heart and in my life. I, I see any opportunity that I, as an elected official where I can contribute is an opportunity to maybe change something. And so it, it brings me great satisfaction to know that we're going to focus on system improvements. And a lot of these system improvements are going to live on and, and they can only get better from here. In our memo, we, we cited the three principles for, um, the city of San Jose, which is prosecution, protection and prevention. And, and, and the prevention piece is, is something that I, I feel that we need to continue to work on. And there's an additional P that we need to add, and that's partnership. And I know that our police department has done a wonderful job of continuing to open that door for our partners to come in and provide us with their insight and provide us with their experience so that they can help decipher between those who have chosen sex work and those who have not. And give an opportunity for those folks to have an out. Because from what I understand, um, through all of these reports and hearing on some of the updates, this is a kind of business that you can open up rather quickly. Takes tables, it takes an empty space, they move from one place, easily can move to another. And we were doing such a great job here in the city of San Jose that I think we had moved a lot of that activity out to Mopitas. And, and then as, as partners to our neighboring cities, we have to also share some of our best practices so that they can shut down some of those locations. Because what I fear ultimately is that if we don't intervene with a partner, an advocate who can connect with them and provide resources and, and another opportunity for an out, that this goes very underground, which we have seen in the last couple of years. And when it goes underground, there are really, really, there isn't any eyes to lend themselves to call in on behalf of anybody. And, um, and there's an increase for younger women to be recruited into those situations. Um, and so we, we must not stop just here. We also have to think about our outside partners, like our, some of our, uh, ride up, um, companies like Uber and Lyft, who may be providing some of these, who may be able to help identify some of these folks who are being basically delivered for sex work. But we, but I realize that we have to start here. And so with that, I want to move the memo that, um, mayor, that you've, um, are part of, and I, and I'm really grateful for your leadership in this area. I know that you, as a former prosecutor, that this is something that, that really means something to you, and so I appreciate that. And then of course, Councilmember Carrasco, who has been a leader and really an advocate for both sides of the equation for gender-based violence, um, issues. And so I want to thank them for the work that they have done. I've come after them and, and I am grateful for, for where they have led us. And, and so I'm also grateful for our Councilmember Prossis. And so I'm going to make a motion to accept the report, to move our memo, which includes accepting the report from staff and then including Councilmember Prossis' memo in this motion.
Second.
Thank you.
Motion, Councilmember, in a second, from Councilmember Sparza. Councilmember Prossis?
Yeah, thank you very much. And thank you, Councilmember Arenas, for including my memo. And, and certainly appreciate yours and the specificity that, that you all dove into. I think very important points that we need to be looking at. Mine was a little more broad as I was, I think I was a little shocked just to see the incompleted work, I think, on this, this item. And something that we felt was, um, you know, was a priority that had been complete. And so I think that being able to come back to the committee and have that conversation, not only on these items that Councilmember Arenas just articulated, and it's in the, the memo that she co-signed, but just in general on, on the item itself as well. I think that, you know, outside of the concerns that we know exist here because of, you know, the, the incident that arose, and I thank you to our city manager for articulating how unacceptable that is to, to us as a city. I think that the item as well, right, there's a lot of, of importance in completing this thoroughly, and we didn't do that. So I think, I want to have that conversation in committee. I'll save most of the comments there. I think we can hopefully address these issues, learn from the deficiencies there and, and be able to, to actually complete this item and, and then, and then be able to, to move forward on the important work. So I'll, I'll save the rest for, for committee and thanks for the support.
Thank you. I, I just had a few additional questions, so thank you for your patience here. If I, you go to page thirty-six of the audit. The auditor writes that several massage cases in CES indicated potential commercial sex. Though these may have been referred to the vice unit, there's no documentation in these cases of such referrals in CES. And do we know to this day how many, on how many occasions code enforcement ever notified San Jose P D of conduct that was worthy of criminal investigation?
I'll start. So we don't have that information. Again, what we were seeing is looking through cases, we were seeing these indications of something occurring that they, that the, the code inspector would, would put something in, in the code enforcement database, but there was no indication that it was referred. And then on the other side, we weren't seeing, we didn't, we didn't have the data to kind of back up how many it came across. And so that's why we, you know, part of our recommendation was some protocols around information sharing and make sure we're documenting this stuff. Because we were seeing communication going back and forth between the vice unit and code. But, but it was just really challenging to find, you know, how's it, what was the end result? I don't know if Rachel wanted to respond as well. No, okay, I thought, I thought you were gonna say that. So no, we don't have that data. I don't know if, if the police department has that.
At this point, we still in the administration don't know yet if we ever referred cases to, to S A P D.
So as, as the auditor said, we don't have the documented information, but our understanding is those were happening. I don't have the numbers.
Okay. Then there's, one of the findings that Joe's team made was that forty percent of the cases are still open, CES cases, this is more generally, some dating back to 2017. Have, we got any traction on that sense?
Yeah, so we've gone through and closed out all the cases that it's appropriate to do so, so that we can, um, you know, begin new cases as needed and ensure we're, we're only, you know, reviewing the ones that are most important at this time.
Okay. You know, it's obvious that a lot of source of challenge here is around the lack of resources, lack of staff. I know we've got vacancies, we've had budget challenges, there's been a lot of cuts to code enforcement. But one way we can get more money is to collect the fees that we know businesses need to be paying. And so I was troubled by the, the finding that there were 200 unlicensed massage businesses, and we couldn't determine whether they're paying their fees or they're getting closed, which I think means we were leaving about $200,000 on the table, based on what I read on page thirty-three. It seems like that $200,000 would pay for an F T E easily. Is there a strategy for how we can both hire and actually go get that revenue?
So this is actually a question for P D, so I'll let Lieutenant Spears chime in. But the, the P D permits unit will be going through our current list of businesses, cross-checking that with our business tax database, as well as what the state has on file for massage businesses, so that we can make sure we compile an accurate list. And then that will be shared with P B C E so that we can work off that list, similar to our tobacco and, and off sale of alcohol programs where we're revisiting that list each year, updating it, maintaining it, and it'll be shared across departments.
Okay. And then just, Rachel, if you help me understand what a typical duration is of an inspection of a massage business? I understand there were 1,000 inspections at 260 locations over a three-year period. How long does that inspection on average take?
An inspection, it depends on the, the nature of the inspection, but you can expect to spend at least a half an hour at each location, if not more, depending on if there's building code violations or other things that need to be looked at.
And inspectors are cross-trained and cross-directed. In other words, they're, they're looking for all of these violations, not just what a typical massage business would be doing, but.
Uh, that's correct. So the primary focus is on the massage ordinance requirements and the, the types of regulations that need to be followed in order to maintain their permit. But they do look at, uh, life safety issues such as building or zoning, or really any code violation they might find for that matter.
Okay. Because you go to page fifty of the audit, it talks about code enforcement program more generally. This is the same site may be inspected in different programs. This isn't talking about massage parlors, it's talking more generally. For example, businesses sells tobacco and off sale alcohol will be inspected by two inspectors with different purviews. Additionally, a general code inspector may also inspect the business if there's a general code complaint. So that's three inspectors for one business. And the natural question, I'm sure you saw coming from our memo was, isn't there a way we can do this with one inspector and one visit?
Yeah, so a lot of that is the result of the funding. You know, as you know, with fee-funded programs, that, that the inspectors have to be able to clearly tie that connection between their activity and the fee that is paying for their position. That being said, um, we have been looking at how we can combine the off-sale alcohol and T R L inspection programs. So, because that's probably where you're seeing that happen most often.
Yeah.
General code really is going to have a more broad lens when it comes to the inspections they're performing. And as I said, massage inspector is their primary focus is the massage ordinance, but they will address life safety type issues or something egregious if they do see it. So there is kind of a need for those to be handled separately.
Well, I, I understand the need to abide by grant guidelines when your funder says this is what you're, you're doing. But it just seems to me if a grant for, say, anti-tobacco or tobacco-related inspections, if, if, if that's going to pay for an inspector to get in a car and drive out to the business, I, I don't see why we could not attribute eighty percent to a grant and twenty percent to the general fund, so the inspector can also take a look at the electrical wiring or whatever other issue there might be, alcohol, for example, and save everybody a lot of resources, particularly given the real constraint we have as a people, right? We don't have enough people. And I, what I would hope is that it would give inspectors also an opportunity with some cross-training to be able to sort of rise in the ranks, to be able to train, get, learn, to get more competent in multiple skills and ultimately be eligible for more pay. Or, you know, we can create higher grade gradations of, you know, whatever the senior, master, whatever it might be, that gives people the motivation to want to continue to, to keep, keep doing the work. So it just seems to me that, you know, we can abide by the terms of a grant and still be able to find ways to more effectively use our resources.
So it, in this instance, it's, it's mostly Prop 26 and the fee funded, where if you're not utilizing your funds correctly, it could be considered a tax. And, and that would be a problematic for us. That being said, we are, you know, obviously with our staffing issues, and it's been this way for quite some time, having to be quite creative in how we approach our work. And so Chris and I are actually working on a staffing plan. It'll be like a five-year staffing plan, so we can see how we can maximize and, and really deliver our services more effectively. But we would definitely need more staffing, even with, it doesn't matter how creative we get, we're still gonna have that need.
No, I appreciate that, but this is a general funded department, right? There, there are grants, there are fees that are generated, but there's some general fund money that goes to the department, is that right?
Yeah, the majority of our funding is fee-funded. It's more, it's a close to seventy percent.
Okay.
Maybe, I don't know if Jim Shannon wants to say it, he knows better than me.
Actually, I can help with this one.
Okay, great, thank you, Denver.
So, yeah, there's a mixture of funding that funds our code enforcement operations, and there are specific fees for specific services. With that being said, I think it's time for us to relook at how we spread those fees and those restrictions and the general fund portion to the different staff. And we will do that for this upcoming budget process. It doesn't, well, it won't negate us collecting fees, and it could be on several different people, but I think it, my, that review could perhaps provide more flexibility, especially when we become short-staffed.
Thank you. Yeah, I appreciate you looking at that. Because I understand Prop 26 and grants do create constraints. I just hate to think that it has us, having three inspectors go to a business. It just, I know it drives everybody crazy. And then when I looked in the, in the data around the inspections of massage businesses in particular, there was a, the, the number, the output, the, the number of inspections plummeted right after March of nineteen, which is when the, the inspector who was criminally charged was, was terminated. So trying to understand why there was really a long period of time where we just didn't do inspections. Was that we had just nobody to fill the spot?
So there was some staffing adjustments that had to be made, so there was a, a bit of a delay as a result of that. But other than that, at that point in the program, we had closed quite a few businesses, so there wasn't as many businesses for us to inspect.
Okay. But there were the 200.
So there was, the, the roster of businesses that code enforcement had on our code enforcement system was around a hundred, a little over a hundred. At this, at that point, we haven't, we hadn't had the list shared with us by P D, nor had P D, you know, done that evaluation to make sure all, all businesses were being captured, is my understanding.
Have we gotten through those silos since that time? Are we sharing information across the, the agencies?
Yes.
Okay. I appreciate that, because that's, I know, another sore spot for all of us. The, the number of inspections we did over a three-year period, as I mentioned, was a thousand, based on what we saw in the audit, page thirty-five. So it's about one and a half inspections per working day, right? You assume there's roughly 200 working days a year. And so, Rachel, when you said that there were, it's about a half hour per inspection, maybe a little longer. What else is an inspector doing the rest of the day?
Yeah, so, well, first of all, there's travel time.
Yeah.
But in addition to that, um, there's a lot of customer service that happens. For every case, you can expect a minimum of two customers, if not more, depending on how many interested parties we might have. And so we do a lot of follow-up with those customers. A lot of our customers like to be updated on the case status, so there's phone calls, emails that are happening, research that has to be done on permits or prior case history, prior to going out to the inspection, and then paperwork. So there's, there's a lot of paperwork that the inspectors have to do. It can take up to sometimes, you know, half of their workday, depending on how many notices or, or compliance orders or what have you need to be issued. And, and then the collaboration, trainings, meetings, that kind of stuff.
Okay. I just throw this out there, as we're thinking about workflows and redesign and all those things, it would appear that based on the, the audit in the past three years, that somewhere around an hour a day is actually being spent on inspections. An awful lot of time is being spent doing a whole lot of other things that may or may not be core to the, the most important service you're providing. So I, I just think that's a, an opportunity here for.
Yeah, I should also add. Yeah, I should also add, we have a very antiquated case management system, as you probably know. And so, unfortunately, the inspectors are having to spend time resizing photos and getting things uploaded and running into problems with that. Thankfully, we are moving forward with procuring a new system. We currently have funding for that, and we're looking to have some real movement on that very soon.
I'll continue my prayers to the software gods for upgrades throughout our city. Angela, looks like you want to jump in.
Yeah, Mayor, just, you know, I'm kind of following the line of questioning that you're asking, and, you know, we want to be really clear that, you know, the incident that prompted this audit was definitely very disturbing, right? And as such, what we've done internally is, we've pulled together a team made up of code enforcement leadership, SANSAPD, our office, budget and so forth, to really take a look at, not only do we understand these recommendations, but how are we going to implement these, right? And doing this in the context of, how do we prevent this from ever happening again, knowing that we can never say never, but to the extent possible, given the issues? And then, starting first and foremost with our internal systems and really addressing those issues, getting a really good handle on the staffing challenges and really advancing those and prioritizing those. And then really, as Councilmember Dennis mentioned, really strengthening those wraparound services and partnerships, right? And we have outreach to the human sex trafficking unit, who, by the way, they do have two victim advocates as part of their staff, and we're really looking at, how do we formalize that relationship, right? Knowing that there's a broader ecosystem here that intersects, you know, different issues. And so, I just want to make sure that we're conveying that, number one, the seriousness of this issue, because people are, you know, can definitely be involved, and secondly, that this is a priority in terms of the reengineering of our systems, the technology related to this, and just wanted to just articulate that.
Thank you, Angela, appreciate that. And I agree very much with your sentiments, this is clearly an episode that demonstrates serious failure. What I'm, as you can tell from my questions, I'm also looking at what it tells us about our management more generally and what we can be doing. And so, I look forward to continuing to hear more through updates and as we push forward to, both to ensure this doesn't happen, but also to improve our service to the community. All right, any further questions? Thank you, Rachel, thank you, Angela. All right, let's vote then on the motion. All right. Onto item 3.4, which are actions related to pension obligation bonds, issuance and court validation proceedings. There's a presentation, as folks are making their way down, I want to be really clear so nobody misunderstands in the public or the media, now, we are not making a decision today to issue pension obligation bonds. I repeat, we are not making that decision today. I think that decision is very different from the question of whether we move forward to put ourselves in the position to make that decision, if and when the timing should come. So, welcome, Julia and team.
Thank you, thank you, Mayor, members of the council. I have, I'm Julia Cooper, I'm the city's Director of Finance, and I have with me today Rosa Santatari from the City Attorney's Office and Nikolai Skarla from the Debt and Treasury Management Division in the Finance Department. So, we have a very brief presentation, and I'll turn it over to Rosa to start.
Good afternoon, Honorable Mayor and members of the city council. On May 11, the city council directed the city administration and the office of the city attorney to proceed with planning and preparation of bond documents and court validation documents necessary for the issuance of pension obligation bonds. With us today is also Brian Forbath of Stradling. If council approves the recommendation today, Brian will be filing the validation action on behalf of the city. Next slide, please. The state constitution limits public agencies like the city of San Jose from issuing, incurring debt for which it does not have the fund in the current budget, but there are three exceptions to the constitutional debt limit, one of them being an obligation imposed by law. So, we are relying on this third exception, in that the charter requirement that the city fund the pension plans is a legally mandated indebtedness. The bond council would be relying on a favorable validation judgment to issue an opinion that the refunding of the debt is valid under state law. We would be seeking validation to refund future UAL's unfunded liability, because the authority is based on the same legal theory, and it would save the city from needing to file a future action. Next slide. The validation complaint must be filed within 60 days of the city council's approval. The action involves the court's approval of certain documents for issuance, the trust document and the bond purchase agreement. The court system is impacted, so it could take up to seven months or more. If there is an answer or appeal, the process could take significantly longer, and we would need to return to council for further direction in that event. And I'll turn this over to Julia for what will occur after the validation complaint is filed.
So, thank you. After the validation is filed, staff will be coordinating further dialogue with the retirement boards as directed by the council in May and as discussed last Thursday at the joint meeting with the council and the retirement boards. We'll be working on pension funding policies for council consideration to help guide the use of any POBs in the future or other future funding sources. Also, given the uncertainty that Rosa mentioned regarding the validation process, there are a lot of variables that could change the timing, and staff will return to council with more detailed quantitative analysis and modeling based on prevailing market conditions, on or about the time we expect the validation process to be successfully completed. So, on this next slide, it's just a preliminary timeline, assuming that there's no answer to the complaint or an appeal. So, as Rosa mentioned, we expect, we expect to file the validation action in Santa Clara County Superior Court in October or November, but prior to doing that, we will meet with all the bargaining groups regarding the validation action, so they understand the process moving forward. We expect to bring back in the winter of 2022 the recommended pension obligation funding policies, and then depending on the timing of that court judicial validation, we could be back to you in the spring or summer of 2022 to move forward with the issuance of POBs if market conditions prevail. So, with that, the recommendation today is to adopt a resolution authorizing the issuance of pension obligation bonds and approval of the various documents. But remember, we need to have a favorable judgment, and as the mayor pointed out before we started, nothing in this obligation, nothing in this action today obligates the council to issue POBs at any point in the future. As we discussed at our study session last week, it really just helps us put that tool in the toolbox, so if the time is right in the future, we're ready to proceed and not be constrained by the length, the length in time it involves to do a validation. So, with that, we're open to questions.
Thank you very much, thanks, Rosa, thanks, Julia and Nikolai. Let's go to the public first.
Brian?
Just want to bring this up. I don't, I really, I said this the last time, too. I really appreciate the work that the, I don't even know what to call it, fiduciary people do, because our, if we didn't have this tool and all the other tools, our city would be in bad shape. So, I think it's really important to just hear, it's appreciated, I don't even understand half of what's saying, and it could be really... You take the time to explain it, and I appreciate it. Thank you, Mayor.
Back to the mayor.
All right, thank you. I'll refrain from echoing what I said at the beginning, because I appreciate Julia saying it, we're not making a decision to jump yet. In fact, we've got a lot more thinking and work to do, I think, before we get to that point. Let me explain why I'm voting to move forward, because frankly, if someone asked me today, should you issue pension obligation bonds today, I would say no. I think there's good reason to look at the market right now and say, we've got stratospheric price earnings ratios, a lot of concern in the market about what may or may not happen, for example, with Evergrain, and whether that's the next Lehman Brothers or who knows, but this would hardly be a very opportune moment. I know we can't time investing, I know that is always a long-term failure, so I don't tend to deal with it, no precisely when the right time is, but it feels like this is not the right time. On the other hand, I want to make sure we're in a position so that we can make that decision when more opportune moment arrives. And I do know that fundamentally, this city, when it decided to create obligations in the form of retirement benefits with a defined benefit, we got in the business of deciding that taxpayer money would be at risk, and we got in the business of deciding to fund benefits that would be certain at a future time when we could not possibly be certain what investment returns would be, or whether we'd have enough money to be able to pay them. We'd simply have the obligation to pay them. When we made that decision at some point decades ago, we got in the risk business. And this business of investing in the market, we know, subjects us to a lot of pain during downturns. We felt it very severely in 2008, '09 and '10, and we still feel that today. The reason why I would consider moving forward, consider seriously moving forward when the time might be more appropriate, is because right now, we have to beat a very significant hurdle rate, a 6.625%, I believe is our discount rate. That may in fact be too high, maybe that number should be even lower, but regardless of what the discount rate is, to have to consistently beat that discount rate or meet it, to be able to pay our long-term obligations, is a very uncertain affair, as we know well from our past experience with higher discount rates. On the other hand, with pension obligation bonds, we have the benefit of having a much lower hurdle to have to bound, that is, the interest rates on the bonds. And we know those are not risk-free, but somewhere on the order of 3%, 3.5%, which is a far better opportunity for us. And I know it sounds like interest rate arbitrage, to me, it kind of is, because we have exhausted just about every possible option, having gone through horrible battles that I was very much in the middle of, and I supported the pension reform efforts that went to court and back into the ballot and back into the ballot again and back, and through extensive negotiations that lasted, I think, more than an hour, more than a year, rather, more than a year with our bargaining units at the very beginning of my term. We have taken every possible measure that I know of, and we've consulted experts from throughout the country to find out what other measures we could take. And it looks like we pretty much exhausted the options, and I do not want to see the city being, put in a place where the only option we have is to hope that we're going to continue to meet a discount rate that frankly, we've had difficulty meeting in the past. So, I think it is worth moving forward at this point for the validation suit, continue to gather information, continue to consult experts. We've heard from all folks on both sides of this, I've heard loud and clear from folks who are very upset with the idea that we might even consider this. There's a lot more information still to take in, and we're not going to make any decisions before we do that. So, with that, Councilmember Davis.
Thank you, Mayor. This action today puts us on a path that I'm no longer willing to endorse. I am extremely concerned, because as everyone has pointed out, pension obligation bonds are risky, and I think it's important to note, they're risky for our taxpayers and they're risky for our employees. Our retirement boards make investment decisions, and they have, they stated very clearly in this study session, that whatever funds they get, they would treat it as a normal windfall, regardless of the source, even if it's pension obligation bonds. And it was very clear to me in the last meeting with the retirement, the Federated Retirement Board, with the presentation by their fiduciary counsel, their legal counsel, that he advises them that they have no obligation to the city budget. And what that means is, they have no obligation to take into account whether the city budget is bankrupt for services. If we can pay our bills to them, that's all they have to care about. And that gives me a lot of pause. There's been much talk about pension obligation bonds being the last tool that's available in our toolbox, but just because it's the last tool right now, doesn't mean it's the correct one. And my concern is that we have this as a hammer available to us, the unfunded liability is going to look like a nail, regardless of the timing of the market. And I understand that the finance department wouldn't bring this to the council if there weren't beneficial terms, or if they saw that there weren't beneficial terms, but that doesn't mean that the council could not at any time direct the finance director to go forward. That can happen on, at any rules meeting. And that's a huge concern to me, that we would get in that business of timing the market. That happened before, as the mayor alluded to, there were increases, I believe it was about 20, a little over 20 years ago, there were retroactive increases to pension benefits. And the discussion then, I wasn't around, but my understanding is, the discussion then was, don't worry, we've got these great returns in the market, it'll make up for all of that. And we all know how that turned out. And even those service cuts in the early 2010s were still being felt by the employees here and by the residents here, when I started on council in 2017. And I would say, the Parks Department would probably say they're still being felt to this day, because their service cuts have never been fully restored. That's a huge concern to me. The other concern to me is that we make one decision to do the funding, and we do not make any of the investment decisions. We also heard from the retirement boards that they have taken no action, and they, at least one of the retirement boards, and it was the Federated, the one we're most likely to give the funds to, is not interested in having a memorandum of understanding with us about how they would use these funds, and a commitment about amortization timelines and all of that. That is very concerning to me. I just think, at this point, adding even the idea of pension obligation bonds turns off our brains and makes it so we don't, we aren't thinking about anything, any other possible solutions, and adding POBs to the mix adds to the risk we're already experiencing by having a reliance on market returns. I think we should focus on having a better relationship with the retirement boards. They have tools at their disposal, like the discount rate, like their asset allocations, and like the amortization timeframe, that can work with us. And they haven't done that, and we haven't had great communication with them. I think we need to go down that road before we continue down this road. I feel very strongly about that, and I will not be supporting any motion to go forward today.
Thank you. Just to address the concern, one of the concerns that Councilmember Davis raised, I think it's a very important one, which is, we don't control the pension boards and what they may choose to do. And I guess my question, this may not be able to be answered now, but I think it's something we need to answer, as we think about whether or not to move forward, is, can't we bind the pension boards by going to the voters and amending the charter to ensure that every dollar is used to pay off unfunded liabilities, not normal costs, to make sure that this is not just a way to circumvent, to be able to reduce the amount of payments we make for pensions, for retiree healthcare, but in fact, that this is going to be, and they will reduce our burden, not, I'm sorry, reduce the unfunded burden, and not simply reduce whatever we might want to pay in any given year.
Let me try and answer that. We have, we did inquire, and the preliminary assessment is that it's unlikely a muni code or a charter amendment could make the retirement board go against their fiduciary duty under state law, but they did indicate that an MOU is possible, however, it couldn't make them, for example, prioritize... However, it couldn't make them, for example, prioritize the city's interests over the plan beneficiaries' interests, because that is their primary duty.
Trying to, I'm trying to understand that more fully. I mean, we have, I fought very hard for a charter amendment that would ensure we could never increase benefits without a vote of the people. I don't understand why we would be bound by a charter amendment and a retirement board would not be. We have fiduciary duties as well, but they're fiduciary duties that are constrained and limited by the law. Why wouldn't a retirement board similarly be constrained by prevailing law and exercising their fiduciary duties?
We can certainly look into that more, but it's not just the charter, it is the state law that binds the retirement board.
Right. I just, okay, we can perhaps have this discussion more offline. I'd like to understand better. Thank you. Councilmember Foles?
Yeah, thank you, Mayor. And thank you for inviting me to be part of the ad hoc committee that looked at, I think, a number of different options to see what we could do moving forward with this unfunded liability that we have here, that we know that has constrained us over the years. And I was a city employee that received a notice of termination with a, sort of, during the recession, and the first time we were feeling the real major effect. It was really the second time we'd felt, I think, an effect from a dip from a recession earlier from the dot com, first dot com bust. But this is really what set our city down the trajectory that we've been on, and as Councilmember Davis pointed out, I think, you know, from decisions that happened long before we were on the council, but we have to live with it today. And I think trying to determine how best to now pull ourselves out of this hole, you know, and looking at all the different options and opportunities, there really isn't much remaining, unfortunately, to be able to dig out. I do think, Councilmember Davis made some points on just the collaboration, and we know that the discount rate, amortization period are all things that the pension boards themselves can take a look at. I, and I know they have, in the past, we've certainly gone backwards in that, in looking at that discount rate that has affected us negatively, but I think it was an important move, because we weren't seeing the interest rate returns that we had seen in the past and that we were hoping to see. But I don't think any of those moves are going to be significant enough to really drag us out of this hole. I would agree, timing, and inevitably, none of us could tell you when the right time would be, but timing is key here, and you have to do the best that you can. We can't do that, though, if we're not ready. And I would say, a year and a half ago, when we started that ad hoc committee, there could have been an argument that if we were already through with this process, that might have been a better time. And hindsight, right, is always 20/20. You can't change that. But I don't want to be in that same position a year and a half from today, where we say, well, man, I wish we had the opportunity, because this seems like a really great time to be able to utilize a POB, but yet, we aren't, we haven't, we're not ready, because we know this is, that this takes so long. And so I think that's, I think that is an important point that the mayor made. We're not agreeing to move forward today. We simply want to ready ourselves. We want to be able to take advantage of an opportunity if it presents itself. That's why I support that. I appreciate my colleague, Councilmember Cohen, in working together to be able to support this moving forward. And I'll make a motion to approve our memo, but essentially, just moving staff recommendation.
Second.
Motion, second. Councilmember Foley?
Thank you. Interesting comments from my council colleagues, and I appreciate all of them. Pension obligation bonds are risky. We've heard that many times from our staff. No one has mentioned that they're not and that it's a sure thing. But we have problems with our unfunded liability and the debt that we accumulate in relation to it. We talk about having a tool in our toolbox and that this is the last tool in the toolbox. And so I'm going to support the motion going forward. I appreciate the several studies sessions that we've had over time, looking at the risks and possible benefits of pension obligation bonds, but there are a tremendous amount of risks, because we talk about timing the market. And if you look at the market, we're in October. October is the most volatile market we have, month we have historically. The stock market is going nuts, and as a result, both up and down today, up, yesterday down. In, as the bond market is related to the stock market, it too goes up and down. So timing it is very difficult. I am very concerned about the timing of the market, but we are not timing it right now. We are discussing the possibility of getting validation on pension obligation bonds, so that when the market, if, and when the market is right, we're ready to go. I'm also mindful, as the city councilperson who sits on the police and fire retirement board, mindful of the concerns of the fiduciaries, the trustees of the plan, and their concerns. Likely, the funds might benefit the Federated Board, Retirement Board, more than it will police and fire, but ultimately, its unfunded liability is whether, whichever pot you're coming, pulling it from, it's still an obligation of the city. So I'm concerned about that, but I am going to support it. I have a question for, first of all, what's the bond market rate right now?
For pension obligation bonds, probably somewhere between 2 and 3/4 and a little over 3%.
Okay. So with a discount rate of 6.625, that's, we're saying, yeah, that's a lot.
That's a big difference, yeah.
We can't guarantee that, but it is like refinancing our loans, that we are mortgages. It's an opportunity to refinance and lower our debt load based on the interest rate. So I'm also concerned about the, any delays when we, when the market may be right, if there is a, an appeal. Do you, Julie, have any idea on where an appeal might come from, or a challenge to this might come from, and how long that would delay the process?
An answer could come from anybody. It could come from any member of the public. We've had gone through validation processes before with bond issuance and revenues, and they have been answered, usually by a member of the community. The last one we did was related to the special hotel tax bonds that we issued, and that validation process took us 16 months. So that's the most recent point of reference, and that was, I think we started that validation process in 2009 and concluded it and sold the bonds in '11.
And can, thank you. Can you give me an idea of what they might be appealing it, or why they might be appealing our ability to issue bonds? Pension obligation bonds.
Probably sometimes it's just around the idea that they don't like them at all, and they just answer the complaint.
Okay. All right. I am going to support the motion, but it is not without concern over the risk of POBs. Again, this is something that I, it's the last effort that we can have to reduce our unfunded liabilities, and it doesn't mean that we're going to go forward, although I understand Councilmember Davis's concerns about putting that out there and getting approval and then being ready, and we're just going to go forward. But I don't believe we'll go forward. I believe we'll really take serious thought about it, because it's a huge risk and responsibility for our, for the city. It is not a risk for the pension boards. It's the obligation, is our obligation to bear, regardless of how the pension boards are able to fund or use those funds in investments. So with that, I'm finished. Thank you, Mayor.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, thank you. And I want to, again, thank staff for everything that's gone into this, a couple of big hearings that we've had in the last year, and all the questions that have been answered, and all the work, again, that's, all the studies that have, that we've been presented with, all the modeling that's been done. So I just want to be brief, a couple of comments. A lot of what I want to say is in the memo with Councilmember Peralis. I do want to caution, a lot of the things I've heard about market timing, I don't think we should, as a council, should be in the business of trying to time the market. I think it's dangerous for anybody to be thinking about trying to time the market. What we really should be in the business of is trying to time the bond purchases, because we want to try to, you know, get our bonds as low as possible. But we did hear last Thursday, the experts will be in the business of figuring out, when is the right time to invest and what the right investment portfolio should be, and how to diversify that portfolio. Again, we talked, you know, the mayor mentioned, you know, high PDEs right now. Of course, that diversified portfolio that we saw last Thursday wouldn't necessarily invest in an entirely S&amp;P 500 equity investment. It would try to diversify that investment in a way that the investment professionals believe is the right balance in order to take advantage of the current conditions. So I don't think we should be thinking about, when is the right time to invest, because this is a long-term benefit to the city. I do want to point out that there always have been common investment tools used by professional investors to borrow on margin, borrow at low interest rates, in order to have additional capital in your investment portfolio. People borrow money on margin at interest rates where you, where you know that over time, your long-term rate of returns are going to be higher than those interest rates in order to boost your rates. So if we can get bonds at low rates and know that the long-term investment rates, returns are higher than that, it's a good investment. All the models that we saw last week showed that there were, under all conditions, having these POBs, we were better off than not having, than not injecting additional capital into the system. So I think it's a, it's a good plan. But again, we haven't, we're not committing ourselves to the plan yet. We're making sure we're ready for that action. We wanted, we hope that bond interest rates will remain low. We don't know even for sure that interest rates by next summer will still be low enough for this to be the right thing to do. So hopefully, this will still be a worthwhile thing for us to inject it into our system, into our pension systems. You know, if the markets were to go down in the next couple of years, we'd be absorbing a loss into our budget regardless, because we'd have to absorb those losses in our pension system. So we have a significant risk to our pension system if we think that we're entering a turbulent down market cycle. So we need, we need some tools in our toolbox to try to offset that and to try to make up the long-term potential losses and hopefully enhance the long-term gains. So anyway, I'm happy to support moving forward and being prepared for the future investments that we may be able to make, that will hopefully help dig some of us, some of the hole, dig us out of some of the hole that we're in. And I'm happy to support the motion. Thank you.
Thank you. Councilmember Mahan?
Thanks, Mayor. And I do also appreciate all of the detailed staff updates and the study sessions, and I do feel that I've learned a lot. Unfortunately, I'm not going to be able to support the motion today. I just, having studied this fairly extensively and tried to get as much information as possible, I just, I don't buy the case for POBs, which essentially involve borrowing money, assuming an obligation to pay the interest on that money we've just borrowed, handing it off to a third party that does not, is not accountable to us, hoping that their investments exceed the obligation we just took on, and hoping that it exceeds it by enough consistently that we can then pay off the debts that we've already accrued. I would never do that for myself. I would never borrow money to invest it to hope to get out of debts that I've accrued. And I just, I can't, I would never do it for myself. I don't think this is a timing matter. Where I agree with Councilmember Cohen is the idea that we are responsible today because we're saying, well, the timing today doesn't look good. That's true. I have no confidence that we're going to be able to predict if it's good timing in six months, two years. It may look good, it may not be good. Interest rates may be low right now, because they presage a multi-year period of low growth. It's entirely possible. I've read plenty of economists who believe that's exactly what's going on in the bond market. So I just, I don't believe that we're going to outsmart the market. I don't believe that taking on debt to get leverage, to try to catch up on an unfunded liability, is a smart move. And while we're not making that decision today, I personally have learned enough to not feel comfortable moving forward, to even give us that ability. So that's where I'm at. Perhaps in the future, I'll learn more and change my opinion, but for today, I'm not willing to move forward. Frankly, I understand, we're in a tough position. We don't have a lot of good options. I think that's fair. I think our focus ought to be on trying to generate economic growth that grows the economic pie and improves the revenues that we have as a city over time. And I think, while that's going to be slow and hard, I think that's where we ought to be focused. So I will not be supporting the motion today.
Thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I just want to make a couple more points. I know it's probably a fool's errand to try to change anybody's mind, but we absolutely have to think about the right time to invest and timing the market, because the, if we went forward with POBs, or rather, if my colleagues vote to go forward with POBs, which it seems like it is going to pass, because what, they, they have been, they have made it very clear, the boards have made it very clear, that they will invest this as they normally do. We risk paying our pension debt twice. Just to be very clear, we risk paying our pension debt twice with POBs, because we pay off the debt, from our perspective, we pay off the debt or a portion of it with bond funds. And then if there are negative returns, or returns even below the 3%, or even below their assumed rate of return, we could lose those funds. And then that just restores the pension obligation again, which we would still be on the hook for paying for. So that's the first point I want to make. The second point is, I don't care about the long-term rate of return outstripping the bond interest rate. That doesn't matter as much to us as the near-term returns, because our budget is so tight. The first few years of returns are the most important to us. We simply do not have the room in our budget to make bond payments on top of additional payments to pension funds if they don't make their assumed rate of return. Please do not vote to put this forward today.
Councilmember Cohen?
Yeah, I'm just going to follow up on a couple of things that I said before. First of all, I heard Councilmember Mahan say, you know, we're not going to invest this ourselves. You know, I don't invest, you know, my money myself either. I mean, I, we, a lot of us hire or put our money into an account and have managed, people managing and just choosing our investment for us, because they, you know, are sort of experts on how they, you know, how to balance our portfolio accounts. I mean, I'm not quite sure I understand the argument on that, on that element. When I, I will tell the story. I mean, when I took out a mortgage on my home, and I was fortunate, I mean, I will make the, say, I was fortunate to have been able to buy a home when they were more affordable than they are today. And I, but when I did that, and I had a mortgage and I wanted to invest, I was, I took a loan against my mortgage in order to be able to keep investing, because I wanted to do that. And I was, took a margin loan against the mortgage to be able to invest some money. Sometimes you invest money on debt, because you know that the, that the long-term return on investment is higher than the interest at the time of the loan that you take. So people do that all the time in their investments, and it's not, it's not an unusual thing for people in investments to use low-interest-rate loans to continue to be able to invest money. So while I understand there's some risk, we're not making the final decision today. I want to be prepared for the opportunity to be able to do that. We did ask the question last week, we have a, we have a pension debt, and I don't remember off the top of my head, it's a well over $20 billion, right, of pension debt. And we're talking about potentially injecting something less than a billion, probably in the hundreds of millions. So when we asked the question last week about whether that would, whether that amount of debt would, whether the short-term up and down would make a significant difference in our general fund obligation, the answer was that that small amount wouldn't significantly change, wouldn't have any material impact on our short-term budgetary. change, wouldn't have any material impact on our short-term budgetary need, because the significant effect would be that large pension debt being, growing because of the market downturn. So the, the risk of, the short-term risk of putting a few hundred million dollars of additional capital in is not significant compared to the long-term potential gain of a 30-year investment. That was, what we're really trying to do is build, is, is do something for the future generations of the city, which we really don't have the opportunity to do without injecting some additional capital into the market here. We have to do something in order to help future generations out of the significant debt that is accrued in this pension liability. So I think it's important for us to provide this tool that we would be giving to the experts that really want to provide long-term stability in this pension. You know, they have, while we, while clearly their significant, their aim is to provide stability for the retirees, and ours is to make sure that the city's budget is balanced, we both really have the same ultimate goal, which is that the long-term pension debt is down, because both outcomes are good for the city and their employees, because the long-term stability for retirees is also long-term stability for the city's budget. So I still don't quite understand why we believe that one would, one group would want to harm the other in their goals. I mean, I think both have the same long-term goal, which is to get that debt down. So I think that, that, that this is the right, at least a potentially good approach, with some, with, with providing capital to people who will want to help our, our, who will want to use it in a way that will help provide better balance to, to the pension. And they will be watching the markets, and they, they have the opportunity to adjust how they're investing the money based on the conditions of the market at the time. They're not going to put it all into one category of investment. As they said last week, they're going to move it around and over, and use the conditions of the market to determine how they're going to invest that portfolio. So anyway, I just wanted to sort of respond a little bit to what I'm hearing about this fear of long-term returns. There has not been a period of time in the last 150 years in which the market hasn't returned above 3%. And if the, if the interest rate of bonds remain at 3%, it's a very favorable interest rate to be able to borrow bonds and inject it into our pension. So I just, I'm sorry, I just wanted to be able to add that extra perspective. Thanks.
Thank you. I think it's a good debate and a good discussion, and we're going to need to continue to have it, because this is, this is important, and it's complex, and we've got a lot more information still to digest. I just want to take one more pass at this issue, because I think it's so critically important that we ensure there is no risk that these dollars would be wasted in any way. And I would define wasted as reducing our annual payment to pay off the pension and retiree healthcare obligations, just for the sake of short-term relief, at the great expense of the long-term impacts on our children for paying the, paying the debt. And to be clear, the Retirement Board sends us a bill every year, and they decide what that bill is, although in reality, an actuary more or less tells them what it is, and they rubber stamp that. But, but they give us a bill every year. And it's the council's decision whether to pay that bill or a higher bill. Is that right?
Theoretically.
Yeah, we could always pay more.
But yes, you can pay more.
Right.
But not paying the normal cost and the, and the unfunded liability has significant credit implications.
Yeah. Yeah, we would never want to pay less.
Correct.
So even if we assume for a moment that a charter provision could not bind the board, it certainly could bind the council, so that regardless of what bill we got from the board, the council could be bound to pay the normal cost and the amortized unfunded liability to ensure we're never underpaying our bill.
Yeah, and, and one of the things that we'll be working on during the validation process is developing a set of policies for you to consider taking those into account. And then also, as part of the policies you have now, you look at when you have a one-time money, and you look at paying off debt associated with that. And we've done that very well over the last several years.
Yes.
This should be viewed as another form of debt, and what do you do with one-time money when you have it, when you sell a piece of property and, and those types of things. So we'll want to incorporate some of those concepts into a pension funding policy, so it wouldn't just necessarily be with additional debt, but it could be other one-time money that we'd want to deploy to pay down the pension obligation.
Okay, I appreciate that, Julia. I know you're talking about policies, and I'm talking about something a bit more. I know when Odysseus was sailing through the seas, to avoid jumping into the sea and drowning himself at the call of the sirens, he tied himself to the mast. And he said to all of the other folks on the boat, they, they should do the same. I'm trying to actually figure out how we tie ourselves to the mast. And it seems to me a charter amendment could do that. And I'm concerned that a mere policy change could still be subjected to somebody's wild idea on any given Tuesday.
True.
And if you know there's some other way we can do it without amending the charter, I'm, I'm open to it. But I, I feel like we've got to tie ourselves to the mast, because we're dealing with a lot of money and a long-term future that we've got to protect.
And I'm going to look at Nora to help guide through this.
No, Mayor, thank you for that. And, and I think probably the best thing for us to do is to talk further with our outside bond council, because these are, and, and retirement plan council, because these are complicated issues. But there may be a way to thread the needle on this and, and deal with the city's side of this and, and not the plan side of the issue, so we can, we can raise the question about tying ourselves to the mast.
Okay. Well, I know I only got one more shot at that November ballot measure in my term, so if there's an opportunity to do this, it would be helpful to know, or if there's a need to do this, it would be helpful to know that in the next several months, so we could actually go forward to the ballot and ensure that the public ties us down. I appreciate there are many good comments made on all sides on this. I, I just want to offer a couple of thoughts here. Someone who's served on the pension board, endured a lot of pension reform pain, I think Jennifer Nora and I are the only ones on this, this dais, who still have the bruises. First, in terms of other options, you know, the discount rate, amortization period, yes, we can move those dials around, but they will not change what we owe, and they will not change the amount of money we have. They will change assumptions, they'll change what an actuary tells us, but they won't change what we owe, and they won't change what we have. So it's really important for us to understand what the limitations are. Those are not solutions. Those may be rearranging deck chairs, but it doesn't get us to the solution. And the solution is, we've got to pay off billions of dollars of money that we don't have today. And based on what we know about returns and discount rates, it's going to take us a very, very long time to catch up with those obligations. The other concern I have was, you know, comparisons to this decision, of this decision with decisions made 20 years ago to retroactive pension benefits, I think Councilmember Davis said this, "Don't worry, we got these great returns in the market." I want to be absolutely clear, this is nothing like that decision. I fought incredibly hard to ensure that voters would approve a measure that would not only ensure we couldn't increase benefits or the cost of benefits in any way, that we certainly couldn't do so retroactively. So this is not that. It's a long way from it. And I'm not saying, "Don't worry, we got these great returns in the market." I'm saying, "We should worry. We don't have very good returns in this market." I think Councilmember Mahan was right. We got long-term problems, expecting returns even at the 6.6% discount rate that we have. And we should be concerned about that. And that's exactly why we need to look at options. Not jump, but we certainly need to look, and we need to have those options available. I, I know that we often hear from all the professors that we shouldn't engage in market timing. I understand the arguments. But the truth is, the asset allocation of these funds is 50% public stock, it's, it's 10% private equity. These are absolutely the investments that drive the returns. It's those riskier investments in equities, and yes, they're incredibly expensive today, and we couldn't just put our head in the sand to that fact. I think we know we can never time the market well or perfectly, but certainly, we can't put our head in the sand to the fact that, that markets are very inflated at this moment. This would not be a very opportune time for us to jump in. I know it's been described too, as somehow or another, we're, we're trying to outsmart the market, or we're hoping our returns will exceed the dead interest. The reality is, we made that choice already. We made that choice when we had and created a defined benefit plan. And that choice, made decades ago, has forced us and the retirement boards to find ways to leap over a 6.625% rate of return that we've historically been challenged by. And we have the opportunity to reduce that to somewhere around 3.5%, 3.25%. And that's something we shouldn't just ignore. It's not the same thing as just saying, "We're going to try to outsmart the market." I think it's a concession that we can't outsmart the market. We haven't done a very good job of it. I say "we" collectively, retirement boards, the city, over the last several decades. I think we need to recognize our limitations and see if there are other tools. So I, again, I appreciate the hesitation about moving forward. It is well-founded. There's plenty of good reasons not to go this route. Let's at least give us ourselves the opportunity with more information to make good decisions. All right, let's vote on the motion. All right, motion prevails. 92?
The two no votes are Davis and Mahan.
We're now going to convene the Joint City of San Jose Council and Financing Authority. For those in the public who are confused, you should be confused, we're actually the same body, it's the same 11 folks. So we have item one, which is the approval of sale and issuance of bonds related to bond documents, Series 2021A for the Fire Department Training Center and the Central Service Yard projects. Now, I have a script I should be reading here. All right, everybody get comfortable, this is going to take a little while. Good afternoon. The City of San Jose is proposing to issue Series 2021A lease revenue bonds in an aggregate principal amount not to exceed $30 million to finance the acquisition and construction of public improvements benefiting the city, including A, the acquisition, construction, and equipping of the city's Fire Department Training Center, and B, additional improvements to and equipping of the Central Service Yard. Section 6586.5 of California's Government Code requires that the city hold a public hearing regarding the approval by the city of the issuance of the bonds by the authority, and after such hearing, make a finding that significant public benefits will accrue from such financing in accordance with Section 6586 of the California Government Code. The hearing is the opportunity for all interested persons to speak or submit written comments about the proposal to issue bonds and the improvements to be financed. Would anyone like to submit any written comments? I guess that's a question for Tony.
I have no written comments.
Okay. Should I wait for the presentation before I ask whether anyone would like to speak? Okay, we'll go with the presentation.
Okay, thanks. So I have Julia Cooper, City's Director of Finance, and with me I have Nick, Matt Kano, who's the Director of Public Works. He can answer any questions about the project specifically. And then Nikolai Skarlov, who's our Deputy Director over Debt and Treasury Management. So, oops, pushing the wrong button. Okay, so the objectives of the 2021A bonds are to refund the Central Service Yard 2003A bonds and some commercial paper notes that are still outstanding related to the Central Service Yard. It's also to provide a portion of the funding for the Fire Department Training Center, $15 million, and another $7.6 million for projects at the Central Service Yard. The structure will amortize the 2021A bonds, so that annual debt service payments will be approximately equal to the existing budgeted debt service payments on the 2003A bonds and the Central Service Yard commercial paper notes. And that's done so to minimize the annual budgetary impact. So with that, I'll turn it over to Nikolai.
Good afternoon, Mayor, council members. You may recall on January 12th, you've heard two items. First, approving the construction contract for the Fire Department Training Center and Emergency Operations Center, and then a second item for the interim financing using commercial paper. At that time, we discussed that we would need to come back for permanent financing, for $15 million for the Fire Department Training Center, and $7.6 million for improvements at the Central Service Yard, and this is that permanent financing. The Fire Department Training Center consists of projects at 1591 Center Road. At the top of this graphic, the L-shaped parcel, which is where the training tower will be constructed, as well as improvements built on the Central Service Yard. These funds, in combination with proceeds from the sale of the existing training center as well as state grants, will be used to fund that construction. Next slide. In addition, $7.6 million will be used to fund these various projects at the Central Service Yard. And on the next page, what is a little bit unusual about this financing is that the assets that are being constructed are slightly different from the assets that are being leased. And there are two good reasons for this. One is that because geo-bonds are being used for part of the project at the Central Service Yard, and there are existing assets at the Central Service Yard, we are not including those assets in the lease, but there are projects being built there. By doing that, we retain those assets, which are more valuable than the financing that we're undertaking for future projects as well. And in addition, we are pledging the fire training center on the L-shaped parcel, but that project has not yet been constructed. So to supplement that, we are pledging two fire stations that are unencumbered currently. By temporarily pledging those assets, we can forego funding capitalized interests and improve the security for those lease revenue bonds, and then release those fire stations once the lease value is equal to the, the debt. On the next slide, we provide the current estimate of the sources and uses of funds. Of course, these figures will be determined at the time of sale, based on market conditions, when we sell the bonds later this month. In addition to funding the Fire Department Training Center and the Central Service Yard projects, we will also be refunding the 2003A lease revenue bonds and the commercial paper associated with the Central Service Yard. Refunding those two obligations is what creates the budget capacity for this debt service. And as Julia mentioned, the debt service has been sized so that there's no net impact on annual budget, but the term, of course, will be extended to accommodate the additional borrowing. Finally, this transaction has been structured so that we do not require a debt service reserve fund, given the city's strong ratings. So the existing debt service reserve fund on the 2003A bonds will be released, and no new reserve fund will need to be created. Again, this has allowed us to reduce the size of the borrowing. Finally, for me, on the next page, there are a series of documents that are before you for this transaction, including the resolutions, the preliminary official statement, indenture of trust, the lease agreements, the bond purchase agreement, and the continuing disclosure agreement. On the resolutions, as well as in the council memo, you'll also find a good faith estimate provided by our underwriters, our municipal advisors, rather, and that good faith estimate is required by state law. Of course, again, the figures will depend on the actual market rates when we issue the bonds in several weeks. I'll turn it back to Julia.
Thank you, Nikolai. So just as part of the action today, you'll be approving the you'll be approving the official statement for us to release to potential investors. And it's important for us to do just a quick reminder on your responsibilities. So the importance of disclosure, under Section 17A of the Securities Act, it prohibits fraud in the offer of sale of securities, including municipal bonds. And Section 10B of the Securities and Exchange Act of 1934 prohibits fraud in the purchase or sale of those securities, again, including municipal bonds. So it prohibits making any untrue statement of material fact or omitting a distinct material fact in the offer of sale of securities. And the fact is determined to be material if there's substantial likelihood that a disclosure would be considered significant to a reasonable investor. So what is your review? What is your responsibility in reviewing that official statement? Is to look at the key topics, the purpose of the bond issue, which Nikolai described, the sources of repayment, which is also described, any risk that the sources of repayment may not be sufficient to repay the bonds, and discussion of any other events or information that could affect the deliberations of a reasonable investor. After you've reviewed the document, the following questions you should ask are, have we identified the material risk and events? Have they been brought to your attention, a bond counsel and other professionals? And are those risks and events disclosed? If not, what is the rationale for non-disclosure? So I can assure you that as part of our disclosure policies and procedures, we have a very intensive deliberative process in the city to review the document. And it's reviewed by a number of other parties across the organization. So the official statement has an introduction that describes the purpose. More detailed information on the risk of repayment is discussed in the security and source of repayments within the project. And then also our constitutional and statutory provisions that could affect revenues and appropriations. Appendix A is the city's financial positions and fiscal pressures and economic and demographic information that's useful to investors. And that document is as updated as to the annual report that you just received last week. So it is continually reviewed. And then Appendix B is a detailed information about both retirement plans. So rest assured, officials are not expected to be the fact checkers. We have a whole cadre of people across the organization that help us do that. So we just ask that if you have any information or personal knowledge that we have failed to disclose something, or anything is false and misleading, we ask that you bring that to our attention so that we can finalize the document and release it to potential investors by the end of the week. So our schedule is to do that by Friday this week. Have bond pricing on October 19th. Hopefully, we can continue with that, given other things that are happening in other parts of the country. And November 2nd is our expected bond closing. So the actions today, the mayor opened up with the public hearing. So the council actions are to approve the various documents related to the financing. And then the authority also approves similar documents. We are amending two resolutions related to the commercial paper program that was approved back in January, just to bring the financing in alignment with what we're actually doing with those, than what we proposed to do back in January. So with that, we're available to answer any questions that you have.
Okay, thank you, Julia. All right, it's a call for everyone to fess up if you know anything we got to reveal. All right, now I'll continue with the hearing. Let's go to the public. Would anyone like to speak at this time?
Tessa Woodman-Cee?
Hello, yes, Tessa Woodman-Cee. It looks like $30 million that we're going to do this bond to build another fire training ground. And I know that there was a fire training ground in my neighborhood, on Montgomery, where Google bought that property. And so now, we are going to spend taxpayer dollars to build a new one. And to me, that is, what is the expression? Is that we privatize the gain and socialize the loss. You know, now we, as citizens, are going to build a new one. And we're going to spend $30 million. And this is wrong. You know, corporations should be doing that. Google should have replaced our fire training grounds versus the public paying for it. And so, you know, and we have so many needs in our public that this has really been the whole, you know, the whole focus of our city about, you know, having jobs and, you know, creating, losing housing, that, you know, you've financialized our lands instead of getting the money from the corporations. You haven't done that enough. You haven't done that. And they haven't, they haven't improved our city, the corporations. You haven't tried to do that. And we've lost our lands. We've lost our lands because you're trying to make money from businesses instead of making the corporations pay to really play in our city. And they haven't done anything to improve our infrastructure. Even the Google development, you know, as large as it was, has done nothing enough to, you know, hasn't fixed my street, fixed Stockton Avenue, even though it's a main corridor. And then on top of it, in terms of, you know, just, I guess, it's just the way, you know, the way the city has been going in regards to not having corporations pay enough to be in our city. And that has to change. And oh, and the other thing is, corporations don't even pay for our open lands, for our parkland. They don't have to pay.
Blair Beekman?
Hi, thank you for this item. A few reminders from myself that it's my understanding that, you know, over the past few years, we have been, I guess, with the help of Measure T funding, really been building up police and fire infrastructure in the city of San Jose. And to such a degree that I think it's allowed us the choices to look better into reimagine ideas for our future. We have that space to do that now. And it's actually similar to many Bay Area cities of this time. Their police and infrastructure buildup has been pretty intense over the past couple of years. So it is a good time to start to better talk about reimagined issues and equity. Good luck how we can do that. To quickly comment on bonding issues, you know, if we are facing upcoming natural disasters, and that has good ways to prepare, you know, we have the fundamental foundations for, you know, with police infrastructure, we can now build equity ideas and reimagine ideas better, I think. It's a better way to work if we're going to be considering natural disaster things in the next few years. How does that relate to bond issues? How can we build a future economy based not on disaster capitalism practices? I think that would be a good concept to ask about and how you're going to pursue the future of your bond issue. And that we ask that they don't really practice disaster capitalism with issues upcoming in the Bay Area, if possible. Thank you.
Roland?
Thank you, Mayor. So I don't have any issue with the bonds, but I do have a question about the trail. I don't know if you can go back to slide number four, but I'm somewhat concerned about the location of the training tower. And the question there is whether the trail will remain open while, you know, the fire is training, including, I guess, they're going to be setting the tower on fire on a regular basis. And the last question I have, I don't know if it's possible, is whether out of this bond, there will be any funding for the trail connection as well. Thank you.
Caller 5140?
God help us if there's ever a natural disaster in this town. I can't imagine how bad the response is. You guys can't handle a regular Friday night in downtown San Jose, pre-COVID, of course. I mean, someone's got a can of beer open, and before you know it, you know, bars are being let out, and it's a complete disaster of cops, you know, hitting people over the head with a billy club. And then before you know it, they're overpowered. You guys can't handle a Friday night. How are you supposed to handle a Friday night where there's a fire or an earthquake or a natural gas pipeline blowing up? Hey, when's the Fire Department going to show up? Two hours later because they didn't get the call? You guys should be ashamed of yourselves how you handled the city. You guys can't even keep the fountain at the Rose Garden running, man. What do you think you're going to do? Look, we got, we got natural disasters on the city council and the mayor. Those are the worst natural disasters we've faced. The decisions that you make are despicable. You guys should all be ashamed of yourselves. And you better have a plan of action when there is a disaster with all the road diets, when the people have to get out. Imagine that, you know, Hillsdale, major artery, you're going to make it, you're going to make it smaller. I look forward to seeing the traffic normally. If there's a natural disaster, remember who told you what's going to happen. Caller 5140, remember who told you. Remember who told you when the power grid's going to go out, and there's no natural gas, and all you have is electricity on some renewable energy microgrid. Remember who told you who's not going to be there for your backup? It's not going to be the city of San Jose. It's just not, or the county, I mean, the county's even worse. The state, Gavin Newsom, is he going to help you out? Everybody should really listen to what people...
Back to the mayor.
Okay, we'll have to work through the shame. The hearings, let's see here, we should now have comments from the council. Councilmember Sparza?
Thank you, Mayor. I would just like to thank staff for bringing this forward and want to say that I'm excited to take another step in bringing this forward for our new Fire Department Training Center. It's long overdue, and it's a really critical project for our whole city, for fire, for EOC, and other departments. But also to really look at that Center Road corridor. We're building this infrastructure just outside of the downtown core. And I think it's a really good thing for our city, and like I said, long overdue. So with that, I'll be happy to make the motion to approve the staff recommendation.
Second?
All right, motion, second. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. This is a bond issuance I can get behind. First of all, it's voter approved. Second of all, we're using it to build infrastructure. And third, just to be clear, since one of the callers mentioned it, we did get paid for the Fire Training Center site, and we got paid more than $30 million. We already received $36.8 million. And we will receive another $4.2 million when we vacate that site. So by my count, the taxpayers come out ahead. Thank you.
Thank you. One question, Nikolai or Julia, anybody who likes to jump in on this. So I understand we structured this to mitigate impact on our budget. I can understand that. It's certainly a reasonable rationale. What if instead, we structured it over the same duration to minimize debt service over the long run? Would it look much different?
Not, honestly, not really. Because the borrowing costs on this, Nikolai, what are we, under 2%? Because it has a relatively short amortization, and these are tax-exempt bonds.
Okay.
So it really wouldn't...
We're getting a good deal on how we cut it. Okay, great. Love to hear that. All right, so Councilmember Davis, that was from before, is that right?
Yeah.
Okay, great. All right, let's vote. Oh, wait, I'm sorry. I'm supposed to close the hearing first, right?
You're doing that, that's good.
Okay, the hearing is closed. It says adjourned, but I shouldn't be saying that yet, right?
Right.
Okay, the hearing's closed. And now we're going to vote. The city has adopted a resolution approving and authorizing execution of documents and approving related actions in connection with the issuance of City of San Jose Financing Authority Lease Revenue Bonds Series 2021A and Part B. That's the whole resolution. All right, we already adopted that.
Yeah.
We're good. Okay, that hearing is now adjourned.
And it was unanimous.
It was unanimous. Good for us. All right, so now we're moving on. We're going to close the joint city and the Council Financing Authority Board meeting. We're going to go back to the plain old boring council meeting, starting with item 8.2, which is the application for the California Department of Housing and Community Development Notice of Funding Availability for the Home Key Program. This is not boring, of course. This is actually pretty urgent. So, welcome, Rachel.
Good afternoon. All right, and I have a presentation. Hopefully, we can pull that up soon, but I can go ahead and get started. So good afternoon, Mayor and City Council. Rachel VanderVeen, Deputy Director of the Housing Department. I am joined by Jackie Morales-Franz on Zoom. And we also have a few other partners that are available on Zoom for questions and answers at the end of the presentation. Thank you. Okay, so the city and county have joined together to develop a Home Key Program strategy. In the last round, across the country, we, sorry, across the county, we secured three Home Key grant allocations, creating 364 homes for homeless individuals and families. What we wanted to do was to leverage this state funding source to support our community plan to end homelessness. And as we think about gaps in our current system for the homeless population, we want to leverage this opportunity to add capacity to our overall system. Finally, we want to engage the community and those with lived experience of homelessness to shape our proposals to meet our local needs. The Santa Clara County Community Plan and Homelessness includes three core strategies. This slide shows our progress towards meeting the plan's goals. Strategy number two is being measured by a goal to house 20,000 people from the supportive housing system. Permanent housing resulting from the Home Key Program will directly support this goal. Strategy three includes a challenge to double the temporary housing and shelter capacity to reduce the number of people sleeping outside. Interim housing opportunities funded through the Home Key Grant Program will support this goal. As we discuss the Home Key Program, it's important to understand the basics of this state program. The Notice of Funding Availability, or NOFA, for Home Key clearly states the funds must be used to house people experiencing homelessness or who are at risk of being homeless. Second, the lead applicant must be a public entity. Here in San Jose, the qualified public entities include the City of San Jose, the County of Santa Clara, and also the Santa Clara County Housing Authority. Additionally, the grant includes geographic allocations of funds for the Bay Area of nearly $200 million. There's also an additional set aside of $116 million statewide for projects serving the homeless youth. Grant applications will be ranked using a scoring system, but will be made on a rolling basis, meaning as applications are submitted, awards will be made within 45 days of application. We are anticipating oversubscription of these funds in our region, so we'll be working diligently to prepare our applications in a timely manner. Countywide, we are bringing forward nine Home Key applications. These sites are serving a variety of different populations, including homeless individuals, families, transitional age youth, and survivors of gender-based violence, serving both men and women. Combined, we are seeking funding for over 800 units. Of that, 439 are anticipated to be permanent housing, and 378 are anticipated to be interim housing solutions for our homeless population. San Jose is supporting the county effort, the countywide effort, to secure these funds. And in doing that, we started this process in May 2021, issuing a request for information. We are looking for two types of responses. Number one, for hotels and motels that were available for purchase. And number two, developers or sponsors who are interested in managing a Home Key site. What we learned in this process is that hotel owners and affordable housing developers do not necessarily have existing relationships. So the purpose of this RFI was to find viable sites and partners that we could match together. that we could match together to build Home Key applications. We received 24 responses and evaluated 16 different hotel sites, as well as eight developer sponsors. Items we considered for building, for the buildings included price, condition, land use, and potential for future development. We also learned from our prior Home Key experience that finding hotels with kitchenettes is a key feature for supporting our target populations. When considering developers and sponsors, we consider proposals that brought site control, entities that had experience providing affordable housing, serving the homeless population, and prior Home Key experience. So now I'm gonna walk through our proposals one by one and so you can just learn the details about each proposal. The first proposal is the Pacific Motor Inn. It is a 72-unit hotel located in our downtown. We have matched this site with Path Ventures as the developer and Path will also be providing services on this site. The city has entered into a letter of intent for this hotel with the owner and intends to secure this property and will be using a ground lease to, ground lease it back to Path. And this site will serve individuals and families and will be providing a redevelopment opportunity in the long term. The Arena Hotel is the, is the one proposal that was actually brought to us by Urban Housing Communities, who is an affordable housing developer, who actually had this site under contract. This site is actually located in the Deardon station area. It has 89 units and will serve individuals and families. This site also provides a long-term redevelopment opportunity. Our third proposal is the Branham-Monterey interim housing proposal, which is, which was actually brought to us by Life Moves and is a proposed modular construction project, which will provide approximately 176 units on a city-owned site located at the intersection of Branham and Monterey Road. This development will work through the planning process as they apply through Home Key and Life Moves will be providing services to homeless individuals and families at this site. The next two hotels are sites that the Housing Authority has recently indicated that they will serve as a local agency for these two applications. The reason that the, that San Jose is interested in working with the Housing Authority to take on this role is really two parts. Number one, it actually brings additional resources to these sites because the Housing Authority actually has funds for both acquisition and possibly for long-term operating funds through the use of potentially vouchers or shallow subsidies or something else that could be actually used to help support the operations of these sites. Second, the advantage of having the Housing Authority work with us is that they can actually take on two of these proposals while our team works on the three other ones. And so essentially, it just provides more capacity to our team to move these forward thoughtfully and timely. The Housing Authority is holding their, is actually preparing an RFP to identify both the developer and services for this site. So they are doing that right now. And they are really looking to serve the transitional age youth population at this site. And we are just looking forward to supporting them through this process and creating homes for 61 homeless, homeless youth in our city right now. We think this is a great opportunity. The Housing Authority is also interested in serving as a lead agency for the residence-in proposal. This is a 150-unit hotel with full kitchens, not even kitchenettes, ovens, but entire kitchen. They have a mix of studios, one and two-bedroom units. And we are interested in serving families here, clearly with the opportunity with multiple bedrooms, and also potentially serving both men and women who are survivors of gender-based violence. The Housing Authority will, again, be seeking partners to bring this whole vision together at this site. So in summary, the city plans to submit three Home Key Grant proposals and supporting the two additional proposals that will be brought forward by the Housing Authority. In total, we are looking to create nearly 550 new opportunities and homes for our homeless population. I also wanted to provide an update on the SureStay, which is the city's Home Key Grant award from the prior year. The City of San Jose is continuing to work through our transition at SureStay into an affordable housing site. We're currently working with the Department of Housing and Community Development at the state to ensure this transition is smooth at a date that will be determined in the future. During the current month of October, the SureStay will continue to operate as a non-congregate shelter. And the city has created a rent structure that is consistent with our agreement with HCD. We're gonna be working with HCD to make sure that all of the requirements that we have in our rent structure is compliant with their requirements. So next steps, we are looking forward to engaging the community. We had our first community meeting last Friday afternoon and had several participants, just learning more about our Home Key application proposals. We are also, we want to secure the partners for every one of these sites that we have a complete package and idea ready to include in our grant applications. We then will do the hard work of actually preparing and submitting these applications. As they're ready, they'll be submitted. We will also be exploring establishing neighborhood advisory groups in partnership with the city council offices for each one of these new sites. And we will be returning to city council with authorization to purchase these properties and appropriate funding associated with each site as necessary. So today, our council action actually has been amended from what was posted originally. The reason for that is because we are actually only going to be applying for three of the sites instead of five. And so a supplemental memo has been submitted with our revised recommendation language stating that the, we are adopting a resolution to authorize the city manager or designee to apply for grants and submit all required documentation to the California Department Housing and Community Development's Home Key Program to address the housing needs of individuals and families experiencing homelessness or at risk of experiencing homelessness and who are thereby inherently impacted or at least at risk for medical diseases or conditions due to the COVID-19 pandemic for the sites including the Pacific Motor Inn, Arena Hotel, and city-owned property located at the intersection of Branham Lane and Monterey Road. In conclusion, I wanna recognize the tremendous efforts of so many who have helped bring this to you today. First, I wanna recognize Consuelo Hernandez and her team at the county who really challenged us to seize this opportunity and find ways to bring more money to our city in order to address our homeless needs. We wanna recognize our partners at the Housing Authority, Preston Price and Flaherty Ward, who have joined us with eager anticipation of finding ways to make these deals work. I wanna recognize all of our partners at Urban Housing Communities, Path, the Bill Wilson Center, Life Moves, and so many else, so many others who have helped us shape the ideas and vision for what these sites can do for our community. I also wanna recognize the team, our real estate team. We have Nancy Klein, Kevin Ice and his team, who helped us tour numerous sites and also negotiated letters of intent on multiple sites that we're bringing for you today. Finally, I wanna recognize our housing team that is, has just been working tirelessly on Home Key and really making this all work. We, I wanna recognize Isaac Arona, Kemet Mawakana, Dan Lopez, and Kelly Hempel for their tremendous efforts. We have taken just a large effort between all of these folks to bring this forward to you today. And our, our goal has been to bring thoughtful solutions on how we can address our homeless family, the needs of our homeless families and individuals today. So with that, I'm available for any questions.
Great, thank you, Rachel. And thank you again to the entire team you mentioned. It's great to see this many proposals coming forward. I know it's an opportunity this year and next that we may not have ever again. So it's great to see happen. All right, Tony, let's, let's hear from members of the community.
Okay, we currently have eight hands up on Zoom, starting with, and the in-person speakers would like to go last. So we're gonna start with Zoom. And it's Tessa Woodman-C, followed by Blair Beekman.
All right, thank you. Thank you, Tessa Woodman-C. Well, this Arena Hotel is in my neighborhood, about a mile from my home. And, you know, we've already had a lot of problems at the arena, you know, and so it's already been problematic. And I don't even know if there's any kind of kitchen facilities in these things. So the thing that I'm seeing is that, first of all, you're planning a hotel next to my home, next to my home, okay? And this is where, you know, it's gonna become a homeless, we know that. There is no need for hotels, we don't need that. And the thing is, what we need to start building, and we should buy that property at 615 and create a type of housing that we really need for homeless. And it really needs to address the issues that we have, all the issues we have, which is we have a climate crisis, we have an ecological crisis, and, and we need to address those issues now. And so the thing is, is that we need to be growing food locally. We need to be training, it needs to be a school. That really what you're doing is you're gonna put people into these housing, they're gonna be eating out, whatever, it's gonna be a lot of waste. And that's another problem, is our waste and our plastic use. And so we need to create an educational program that has people living in environments that are very green, you know, off-grid solar, water capture, growing food. This, and then we need for them to become patrons of husbandry. That we need to provide universal basic income for these people who are having trouble, we know. And for them to become patrons of husbandry as we create a ordinance that all our lands are productive. And that could be our team. And that's what Alorie Middlebrook is working on, is creating teams that are, it's called Eat, Grow, Learn. And these are the things that we need to be doing. And then we can have housing next to the farms where we're growing food. And those, that, that's what we should be building at 615 as a demonstration project of a sustainable way for us to live. We have to solve all of our crises at once.
Blair Beekman, followed by Zeke Sandoval.
Hi, Blair Beekman here, thanks for this item. You know, these will be my, my ideas and feelings. Hopefully, they can, you know, learn to connect with, with other people who work much on these issues. The Santa Clara County Board of Supervisors just had a agenda item passed today where they talked about, I think initially, you know, the subsidy funding ideas that I've been talking about for months now that are coming down from the state and federal level to help out in a large amount, to help out with, with, with homeless housing issues and to help transitional housing issues. They passed a measure today, you know, that, that will guarantee housing for low-income persons with family. Now, that's a lot, it's saying a lot, and you're not doing that here. What's happening here? I know we're trying to calm down from Mahan's ideas a few weeks ago that were interesting, maybe a little not quite right, but he had good intentions. How can we build on at least the energy of what he's trying to offer? You know, I don't know if energy's the right word, but we can double our efforts. I've written you letters how we can make, you know, if we concentrate on our well-established practices with this subsidy money available, we can house a lot, a lot of people now where we couldn't before. It can help subsidize that. And that is a game changer of how, considering how we used to work five, 10, 15 years ago. We're at new ways to really work with the Home Key program, to really, you know, how people can get through quicker, you know, there can be a quicker turnover rate to permanent housing. And we don't have to simply use Home Key as a warehouse. It's delicate issues, let's learn to be excited how to talk about it. I know we need to be mellow, let's do this good, thanks.
Zeke Sandoval, followed by caller 5140.
Good afternoon, council members, can you hear me okay?
Yes.
Great, thank you. Good afternoon, this is Zeke Sandoval, speaking on behalf of Path, people assisting the homeless in strong support. Glad to see that we got our shout-out by staff a little earlier, thank you very much for that. So we, of course, have a tremendous opportunity as a city before us today to invest in affordable housing and bringing in more of our unhoused neighbors into stable, permanent housing. Homelessness is by definition the lack of a home. To meet the needs of our city, we need to drastically increase the production of affordable housing in our community. And as service providers here in San Jose, we're very excited to see all our public and private partners coming together to submit strong proposals for nine new deeply affordable and interim housing developments in four cities across the county here. So we're very excited about this. If approved, these developments can provide an additional 800 homes in the next nine months. So we very much look forward to supporting you and our partners here in San Jose on these potential project Home Key sites and respectfully request your swift approval. Thank you very much.
Caller 5140, followed by Sid Camuth.
I don't know why you guys just don't use the Fairmont Hotel, get it over with. Who's gonna buy that place? Who's gonna come here to visit, right? You got, you got, I told you before, you could have the largest homeless shelter or homeless living space housing in the world. You could have, you know, you could have the, instead of the restaurants, you're gonna have soup kitchens to feed everybody, they don't need a kitchen. You just gotta soup line for them every day. You could have your pot dispensary there, you could have a convenience store. No alcohol before 11, though, because Carrasco doesn't want that. People can't have a beer before 11, but make sure you can go to, make sure there's a dispensary there. There's no parking around there, it's near mass transit. It'd be perfect for you people, a nice, big homeless shelter. This way you don't have to buy these old motels, these old moldy motels that nobody stayed in except who knows who in these places. That's what you need to do. And if, these homeless places that you guys are gonna, gonna build or have another San Jose natural disaster, remember caller 5140 told you. It'll be just another debacle, unfortunately, it'll be down the street from where Tessa lives. She'll be able to give us play-by-play information of what a disaster the Arena Hotel's gonna be. It's, it's, it's a nowhere seen here. There's no way you're gonna be able to build enough homeless housing with what is here. And who is the, who are the people who get it? Who are the people in the know? Where does your application fit in? You must, no, it's gonna be a mess. Remember who told you? Matter of fact, I hope you guys do it, 'cause I just wanna see how bad it's gonna be. And I'm gonna laugh the whole time. Thank you.
Before we go on to the next speaker, I just wanna say we have 11 hands up. Our next speaker is Sid Camuth, followed by Robert Stromberg.
Hi, my name is Sid Camuth. I rise in strong opposition to the proposal to build a 176-unit emergency interim housing at the intersection of Branham and Monterey in District 10. Let me be very clear, our community is not against helping the homeless with our tax dollars or against building the interim housing. We simply oppose building them in the middle of a residential neighborhood, which is also across the street from a library that kids visit, across the street from a park, or a few hundred feet from an elementary school. These are all setback guidelines that the council voted on a couple of years ago. And the Branham-Monterey intersection fails to meet any of these criteria. The community back then had overwhelmingly rejected the tiny home buildings a couple of years ago, and our decision has not changed. I know the city has started the Mountain View Center and the Eru Ferrari location as a success stories. And let me remind you that those locations are not in the middle of residential neighborhoods. And that is something that I strongly oppose. And I just feel that the city should find a better location to build the interim housing. That's all I have to say, thank you.
Robert Stromberg, followed by Roland.
Good evening, council members and staff. This is Bob Stromberg with Destination Home. We are a nonprofit organization working to end and prevent. We are a nonprofit organization working to end and prevent homelessness throughout San Jose and the entire county. I encourage your full support for the State of California Home Key Funding Proposals for urgently needed supportive and interim housing in San Jose. We're particularly excited that four of the five Home Key Proposals on the original will bring an estimated 372 new permanent homes to San Jose. Because as the city explores ways to quickly and cost-effectively shelter our unhoused neighbors at interim housing sites, we cannot end homelessness if we do not also continue adding more permanent affordable homes in our community. Aggressively moving forward to leverage this truly historic funding opportunity is essential to help connect more of our neighbors experiencing homelessness to stable housing and to continue to work to meet the goals of the community plan to end homelessness. Moving forward with state Home Key Funding Proposals is, is an important step towards achieving key affordable housing goals in our community. We encourage you to vote yes to move forward with state Home Key Funding Proposals as indicated in the staff memo. And thank you for your work on this important component of our collective work to end and prevent homelessness. Thank you.
Roland, followed by Sina M.
Thank you, this is Roland. So what I want to do is to share how extremely disappointed that you've dropped the residency on San Ignatio. Because I could really see that, you know, working very well. So if somebody could please later on speak to what happened here, because I really don't understand what happened here. And then also, I expect Councilmember Jimenez is on the call. If we could possibly go ahead with the residency instead of the project at the, uh, junction of Branham-Monterey. Thank you.
Sina M, followed by BM.
In theory, this sounds like a great option for homeless people to get the amenities and a proper roof over their heads, kitchen, plumbing, electricity, et cetera, in a location that is already zoned for people to stay in. Unlike, you've heard from me before, the safe RV parking site you've heard a lot about. I did look up some of these sites and I noticed that they're close to residential neighborhoods. Like the previous speaker said, I agree that they should not be within 500 feet of child-sensitive areas. My neighborhood is already seeing issues in our local playground park because of proximity. While I appreciate that you will be engaging with neighborhood groups for each site, which was not offered to us, I also suggest working hard in advance to establish the process of oversight for these types of sites and the criteria for success. The criteria for success can include things like safety, cleanliness, cracking response time from the police, the number of incident reports, the number of people placed in stable housing after spending a year in this program, et cetera. I believe this needs to be the best practice going forward for all such sites. We need to, you need to work effectively with the neighbors and also to prevent endangering our children by placing them too close to residential areas with, with young families and park, near parks, libraries, or schools, like the previous, previous speaker said. Later in the agenda, you're talking about building a site in the police parking lot, which I notice is away from these types of child-sensitive areas, and I do support that. That's it.
BM, followed by Joe Stockwell.
First, I would like to say thank you for allowing us the opportunity to comment and keep the operations of our city, a democratic one that involves the input of the community that you're supposed to represent. Second, on the topic of EIH sites, I do believe they're important in combating the homelessness, the homeless crisis we are experiencing. However, there is a right and wrong way to establish them. What is being proposed today at Branham and Monterey is the wrong way. There has to be a limit, a line that should not be crossed when determining acceptable sites for these housing units. And within a stone's throw from existing homes and communities, schools and libraries, it's crossing the line. You do realize by having a requirement of 24/7 security, you are admitting there is a level of danger associated with these sites. Alternative sites have been, have to be considered, some of which have already been identified in prior bridge housing community research. Deer Run 2 Community, which is next to this current homeless encampment and proposed site, was, was vocal in its support of Councilmember Mahan's initial proposal to have required setbacks from sensitive areas, believing that our neighborhood would be protected by adopting these rules. We're severely misled, essentially based and switched. And now, without considering our community, you're trying to push up to 176 homeless housing units on our already vulnerable community. I ask each of you council members to vote no if you've ever, if you've never actually visited, visited this site. And then if, if you have to look, if you have, look deep within yourselves and ask if you would want you, your family, your children, uh, to live here so close to such an establishment. If any part of you feels like your answer would be no, you have an obligation to vote no on this site. And if you would have no problem living here, I propose a housing swap program where residents of Deer Run 2 switch homes with each of you, uh, council members. For this 10-plus-year period, the structure is proposed to be here.
Joe Stockwell, followed by Chris Russell.
Hello, Joe Stockwell here. I am the Board Chair of Life Moves. Life Moves is the operator and developer in partnership with the city of the proposed Branham site. And I just wanted to let folks know a little bit about Life Moves. If you haven't heard of us, we operate 27 sites between South San Francisco and San Jose with about 1,500 people in our care every night. Our, our focus with these folks is to get people back on their feet so that they can achieve stable housing and self-sufficiency. And 80% of the families and over two-thirds of all the clients who complete our programs are able to achieve this. I also want to just thank the city for its efforts to build this crucial capacity to meet the moment that we are in right now with growing encampments around the county and in the city. We have the experience in Mountain View where the Life Moves facility was built with Home Key funding and support last year. And one of the, we, we currently serve over 300 people a year at that site. One of the important things I just want people to understand and that the, the council should understand is these are true public-private partnerships. While there is a lot of public money available for these sites, we raised over $8 million in private support for a Mountain View site. And so far, we've been able to at least have one generous donor, John Sobrato, who has, has agreed to contribute $5 million to the site we're planning in San Jose. And we don't intend to stop there. We expect we'll get further private support for these sites, and I encourage you to approve the proposition.
Chris Russell, followed by Ofelia Hernandez. Chris Russell?
Hello?
Go ahead.
Oh, yeah, thanks for the opportunity to speak. I think, I mean, as a lot of San Jose citizens, I can see there's a big homeless problem here and, uh, and getting probably worse. And I could see the Arena Hotel. I live in District 6, so I live near the Arena Hotel, and I could see where that's a good opportunity. I just had a few questions. I'm hoping maybe in the discussion afterwards, you could go into a little bit. In the slide, it mentioned that the site was a possible, also possible for redevelopment. And I didn't really know what that meant in the context of it being also a homeless shelter. And other people that have spoken have talked about permanent housing, but if it's going to be redeveloped, then is that permanent? So I'm just kind of wondering if you guys could expand on that a little bit? Also, the timeline of these projects. And I would also definitely think there would need to be the community advisory committees that have been talked about. The Alameda has been seeing a lot of issues recently, actually especially around the Arena Hotel. So I think this is actually an opportunity to, to maybe improve things there, to get a little accountability. In the long run, they've been building some multi-story developments along there. So I don't know that having that hotel there is ultimately the long-term best use of that property. So I'm wondering what would happen in the longer term on that. Well, so those are my questions. Thanks a lot.
Ofelia Hernandez, followed by Ridford Nisset. And we also currently have six speakers left on Zoom.
Okay, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. So I believe an ideal site is one that looks like Burnell and Monterey, Felipe and Story Road, Mayberry Tiny Homes that have running water, personal showers, personal bathrooms, 24-hour security on-site, wraparound services, and that actually end with permanent housing. So they're moved from transitional housing to permanent housing. It's definitely not like the site that I see at 71 Vista Montana, which absolutely has no services. It's a dead-end road. It's by a kid's park and close to residential homes. Also, with the HMS database, I believe the HMS database is a great tool. It's a great tool to store names, phone numbers, locations of where to find the homeless clients, and reasons as to why an individual is in the situation they are in. But the scoring system, I believe the scoring system is very broken. You need to get rid of the scoring system. Why does a homeless person need to qualify by having X, Y, and Z wrong with them in order to get help? Hillview Court Apartments is at 50% capacity right now, and it's because you're picking and choosing who qualifies. They need to fall under special needs, as if homelessness isn't enough already to be, you know, to get help. If you plan to end homelessness by 2025, like you guys say you plan to do, you need to broaden the scope of your HMS system, or you're going to fail.
Ridford Nisset, followed by Brent Cannatelli.
Hi, everybody. Thanks for the opportunity. I'm active in the community via the Shastehansha Park Neighborhood Association as well as a membership on the Alameda Business Association. But I'm not here in any official capacity with regard to either of those two organizations that just mentioned it. So you'll know that I spend a lot of time thinking about how we can improve our community, community, and being actively involved. It looks like the consideration of using the Arena Hotel, which is a few blocks away from my home, is pretty far down the, the pike already. I'm a little surprised that it's as advanced in consideration as it is without more community outreach, which is what leads me to my question and comment and request, which is for a lot more community engagement around the development process for that particular property. In general, I'm in favor of the concept, and I know we need to do something for homelessness. But I would like to understand what the perceived impact on the community is projected to be. What's the process to get from where we are now to when that facility would actually come online? And what specifically the public can do to be involved and engaged in that process? Thank you very much.
Brent Cannatelli, followed by Alma Goldtrain. Brent? Press star six to unmute if you're on your phone.
Can you, can you hear me? I'm sorry.
Yes, we can hear you now.
Okay. Yeah, I just wanted, just wanted to quickly say that I certainly support housing the homeless. And this is probably better addressed elsewhere. But I, I do hear a lot of chatter about solving the homeless problem. And it seems to me that we might be well-served if we reframed that question. It's, to me, it feels like homelessness is not the problem. Homelessness is a symptom of an underlying problem. And so I don't know how we end homelessness until we provide better social support, mental health, substance abuse services for the folks that are homeless. In my limited experience, the folks that I see that are pushing shopping carts or dancing in the traffic circles are not homeless because they don't have access to, I guess, a safe environment. They, it seems to me that they have some significant underlying issues that are not being addressed. And so while housing them temporarily will certainly better the circumstance, I, I fail to see how that's going to solve the problem long-term. Thanks a lot.
Alma, followed by Anusha.
Yes, good afternoon, council members. I'm in support of programs like Life Moves more than Home First because what I'm seeing at 71 Vista Montaña is an absolute utter disgusting mess. They, they plop these people in the middle of a already overcrowded community. There's no running water. There's no electricity. I thought at first they were going to be in the building, but the building's condemned, the site's full of arsenic, and they were, and the city knew about this a year ago. And yet they still place these homeless individuals in the middle of our community, which creates a dangerous hazard to all the neighbors, including the kids, because it's right next to a, a, a child's park. And this past Saturday, there was, uh, police, police are constantly being called. So if you're going to deal with the homeless, deal with them correctly, just don't place them in a community and expect the neighbors in the community to do your work when you've got the funds, you've got the programs, but you've even, we were supposed to have two security guards, and now there's only one. You've placed a parked, empty car at one end of the lot and expect the, to people to make it look like they're security. And there's that. So everything you've told us about this, this safe parking lot is, you've already gone back on your word and, and it's just been a couple of weeks. So if you're going to do this, do things like Life Moves, but don't just plop them in a neighborhood where there's no, there's no facilities, there's no oversight, and the security is, is a mess. There's homeless people now coming to our neighborhood where we never had an issue. You're creating more issues than you're solving. There was this old, this homeless guy right across on the, on North First Street, crossing the street that blocked traffic. All the homeless are starting to come to our neighborhood, thanks to Councilman David Cohen targeting our neighborhood. Thanks, thanks for that.
Anusha, followed by Lori Catcher.
Hi, can everyone hear me?
Yes.
Hello, council members. I would like to thank you for the opportunity to speak today. I'm a student at Archbishop Mitty High School in San Jose and a District 2 resident in South San Jose. I personally can commend Councilmembers Mahan's leadership on this question of providing interim housing for unhoused people. Councilmember Mahan's plan is to provide interim, interim housing that is meant to make the neighborhood safer and cleaner while transitioning the unhoused people who currently reside in encampments in the area to safe and secure housing. It will by no means make the site more dangerous because this proposal helps unhoused people transition into safer housing and takes a step towards reducing the housing crisis. This site itself will have 24/7 onsite security and will integrate into the community. And it's evidently the best solution on this question because it's cost-effective and scalable, and it's desperately what we need to solve the problem. So I urge you to consider the support when deciding what to do with this proposal. Thank you.
Lori, followed by Adriana.
Hi, my name is Lori. I live in District 6. And first of all, I want to thank the council members for, and the work of the city for making housing a priority for our unhoused neighbors. I think that, and, you know, listening to everyone, I hope we consider that every person deserves dignity, and that includes safe and stable housing. We're talking about even, you know, we're talking about families. We're talking about children who can, need to use our parks and playgrounds and our schools and our libraries, just like every other child. So I just want to thank you for prioritizing this. And I do just have a couple of questions. One is maybe just a little bit more explanation about wraparound services for the sites. And, and then secondly, just a question of, in moving forward with the plans, do you have people with lived experience of homelessness helping to shape the plans going forward? These would be the people who would understand exactly what they need. So those are my questions. Thank you so much for your time.
Adriana, followed by Emily Ann Ramos.
Hello, good afternoon. My name is Adriana Garcia. I work, uh, as a staff member at the Ansar College. And both as a professional in the educational setting and seeing the increased need of affordable housing for students. And also just as a mom and resident of District 7, I ask you to please vote yes on this and provide more housing for residents of Santa Clara County. Thank you so much.
Emily Ann? Followed by
Followed by Tam Ramos.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Wonderful. Hi, my name is Emily Ann Ramos, I'm with SB at Home, and we are here to express our support for the State of California Home Key funding proposals for new supportive and interim housing in San Jose. This is a historic funding opportunity, and leadership of this body will be critical to leverage these sources, resources. SB at Home has endorsed a community plan to end homelessness along with the City of San Jose, and see this as a real opportunity to further these goals. The need for affordable housing and to respond to and prevent homelessness is immense, dramatic action is required, and we must take advantage of every resources, resource and every opportunity. County-wide, these developments could provide an additional 800 homes in the next nine months. Moving forward with the State Home Key Fund, State Home Key Funding Proposals is an important step towards achieving key affordable housing goals in our community. Thank you for your work on this important component of our collective work to end homelessness and prevent homelessness. Thank you so much.
Jim Ramos is our last Zoom speaker, so I'm gonna read, before I go to him, I'm gonna call the people who are in person, RJ Ramsey, Martin, Michelle, Brian, Sandy Perry, and S, if you guys could come and line up. Go ahead, Jim.
Hello, I'm a resident at Deer Run Two, and also a board member, and for the last five years, we've been dealing with the situation of the encampment at Brannham and Monterey, and now this proposal to make this a permanent site, without any input, at the last minute, Councilman Mahan called a meeting separating our community in half, and basically blackmail this, and just either get this done, or just it's gonna get worse. And I asked him directly if he'd support this across the street from his house, and he took, he said yes he would, but after some coaxing, and every day, we're trapped in our homes, there's people urinating in public, defecating in public, running around half-naked, screaming, yelling all hours of the night, and this is supposed to make it better by making this in a permanent fixture of our community. How is that fair? We've been dealing with this for years, with no help, no help, and this is the answer, take it or leave it. Would you, would you council members allow this in your front yard? I asked that question. Thank you.
Okay, next speaker.
My name is RJ Ramsey, I'm glad to be here today, Mr. Mayor and members of the council. I'm an unhoused advocate, I was homeless for approximately seven years, I now live at, we established a tenant association, and I'm the president, and I'm just appalled by some of the comments that I've been hearing here today. To me, it amounts to hate mongering. Nobody wants the people in their neighborhoods. Everybody is for affordable housing, permanent supportive housing, but when you say where you're gonna put it, all of a sudden, people come out the woodworks with these hate mongering comments. Most of the time, none of these things have happened. There was a comment that one of the callers made, that security was needed to protect the residents from the unhoused residents who were there. I'd say it's just the opposite. It's the unhoused residents at most of these locations, they need protection from neighbors there, who are coming around putting false notices about evictions there. I go out to Brannham and Monterey frequently, handing out food and other items. I can tell you, that's one of the cleanest sites that we see out there, it is almost spotless. The tents are kept very neat, they keep their piles up very nicely, and they are very aware that the neighbors do not like them, so they stay in their tents most of the time. It's 100 degrees out there already, it looks like the Sahara Desert, and they're in their tents all day and most of the night, because they're fearful of the neighbors who come by screaming obscenities, throwing things on the property. So these people who keep saying that the unhoused are like wild animals, or things of that nature, we're your brother, sisters, your neighbor, maybe your friend downtown, your friend that you used to work with, it's appalling that they do this. All I can say is that we need more housing, we need interim, we need permanent housing, and that's gonna solve the problem down the line. Otherwise, you should have voted for sanctioned encampments, by the way, you don't have a place to put people, a sanctioned encampment would at least give them some support. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Yes, my name is Martin Boom, I'm in the housing program, I've been in five programs since the beginning of this year, with Life Stay, Safe Parking, and Mental Park, and then with the Bagabon and EZ8. I've been shuffled around each one of these places, and a lot of them are substandard places, they're really not up to par. You know, Maslov hierarchy of needs is that when the place is clean, and tidy, and nice, and livable, then the people's behavior is as such, and when it degrades, you have not only juvenile delinquency, but you have adult delinquency, and everyone knows this is psych 101, everyone knows this. So all I'm saying is that if I qualify for these, any of these programs, please make it available, so I know which ones are available, so I can upgrade myself. I'm not asking for a hand out, I'm asking for a hand up, that's all. Thank you.
Thank you, next speaker.
Mi nombre es Michelle, quería hablar de mi lengua nativa, que es español, de cual permiso del mayor y de los ejecutivos presentes. Yo tengo la situación que estoy hace más de un año en el programa de COVID-19.
Señor, un momento, lo siento. Do we have a translator?
No.
Okay.
I was not requested.
I see, okay.
Lo siento por interrumpir. Okay, mi inglés no es muy bueno, quisiera hablar de mi lengua natal, es español.
Está bien.
Yo soy cubana. Estoy en el programa de COVID-19 hace más de un año, entonces he tenido ciertas dificultades que han querido llevarme a diferentes lugares, porque he estado en el mismo hotel que me encuentro, porque yo he sido víctima de la ciudad por mi condición de transexual. Y yo tengo miedo que me manden a ese lugar porque es muy solitario, muy retirado, yo tengo mis condiciones médicas acá en el centro de la ciudad, mis doctores, mis farmacias, hace poco en las noches alguien me atacó y me golpeó, tengo estado un marcas en mi brazo. Es muy retirado, los dos transportes donde me quieren llevar, y yo quisiera que me pudiera quedar donde estoy, que me siento segura, la comunidad allí me quiere, me aceptan, me aprueban. Quisiera también decirle a los que dirigen el lugar que podía traer a mi pareja, porque él trabaja, y podía ayudarme a soportar la situación de que me quieran cobrar renta, porque yo no estoy en condiciones, porque fui víctima hace algunos años que me roban mis documentos, yo soy residente permanente de este país, yo ya del comunismo de Cuba, porque fui víctima de acoso del sistema comunista cubano, y pedí refugio a este país, al cual agradezco tanto, tengo la dicha de ser libre, en un país como el mío que no tiene libertad, y mi vida pudo haber acabado porque me tiré a un campo de concentración por el simple hecho de ser católica, apostolica romana, y ser abiertamente transexual. Entonces yo quisiera que pudieran ayudarme, no quisiera verme en más situaciones difíciles que he tenido. Muchas gracias.
Thank you, next speaker.
Good afternoon, my name is Brian. Do you hear the footsteps of homelessness? Each and every one of us think that we're out of the footsteps range, but in reality, we're not. Epidemics, pandemics, loss of a paycheck, who knows who's next? It's possible to hit a home run against homelessness with Project Home Key, it's a great start, but we need more at a faster pace. It is engulfing everyone. It covers every spectrum of the government, from health, to law, police, fire department, you name it. This monster needs to be stopped immediately. Something needs to be done. It engulps, it stomps, and it leaves no answer. The ball is in your court, ladies and gentlemen. Please, please do something more.
Good afternoon, I'm Sandy Perry from Affordable Housing Network and CHAM Deliverance Ministry. It's nice to be back here after a long absence. We support the expansion of the Home Key Program, and we believe that when an unhoused person moves into a home, even if it's temporary, they're no longer unhoused, they become a resident, and residents belong in residential areas. However, we do demand and insist that permanent affordable housing in this program, in fact, be permanently affordable, that is, where rent is no more than 30% of a family's income. In our understanding, that this is the policy, the state policy for the Home Key Programs, and that the Housing Department misinterpreted this policy, and attempted to charge homeless individuals up to 60% to 70% or more of their income for rent. This is unaffordable, unsustainable, and will only result in increased homelessness in the future. I believe what they did is they took the upper-level rent for an extremely low-income person, and calculated the rent on the basis of that, when actually, the people who are unhoused generally are in the lower half of the extremely low-income bracket, and so that they were unaffordable, and that created the controversy at SureStay. If the funds are available, and they are, rent should be fixed at 30% of income going forward. Thank you very much.
Didn't we miss each other? SureStay has a cautionary tale, and these are residents from SureStay. When you expand Home Key, and we hope that you do, you need to look at this, you need to look at the cautionary tale of SureStay. That place is a dilapidated pile of, insert here, it is termite-laden, pipes are bursting everywhere, there are massive holes in the ceiling that reveal the termite damage, I don't even know why people were moved onto the second floor, because I'm pretty sure it all has to be replaced based on the termite damage. I don't understand. And people aren't being taken care of. You know, people say, hey, I got bugs in my room, hey, I've got mold in my room, hey, my toilet keeps backing up, my front door doesn't lock, and that goes on for a month, and there's no remedy. And the person who seems to be in charge of this, Danielle, is unapproachable and rude. And I say that based on having to deal with her. I know rude, you all know I know rude, so I can recognize it, Danielle is rude. The mental and physical toll that all of this upheaval has taken on people is a lot. We were gonna have three times as many people here today, and they all ended up having medical issues. One of them is at urgent care right now. These people were thriving while they were at SureStay, they were doing great medically, mentally, and people have taken, got, they've lost weight, they've gotten off medications, and now all this upheaval is really getting to them. People are staying in their rooms, they're depressed, they're not coming out, they go to the doctors more, they have more medical issues, and it's because all of this is, you know, making them really upset. So it'd be great if it was resolved soon, and people should not, they, nobody knew when they took this program, that they were gonna be taken out of PSH or Rapid Rehousing for the rest of the term. They did not know that, and that is not okay, they have been swindled. Okay, I'm going back to Zoom, I have three hands up, Sri, followed by Thomas, and then followed by Prajant.
Hello, my name is Sri, and I'm a resident of California Impressions. First of all, to all the homeless advocates, please do understand that this is not about opposing you, it's about how the city's been conducting, how the city has been going about its business with the RV safe site parking at 71 Vista Montana. The site, the city records show that the site has arsenic, significant amounts of arsenic in the soil, so it's not safe for you. The city has sought federal funds, but is not offering any wraparound services, so lack of amenities is a raw deal for you. Most of all, I think, you know, as a concerned parent, I would also say that there are a lot of security issues. If there is, there is no clear communication from the city on how they screen the residents, so in case if there is one bad actor, it puts all of us at risk. There is no mitigation plans, the city has not communicated anything. I also want to highlight that we tried to reach out to the city a few times, and the city doesn't, Councilmember Cohen clearly stated that the city doesn't have around $500 to send out communications on how they plan to work through this problem via USPS mail. Councilmember Cohen's Chief of Staff Stacy Brown invited us to a meeting last Friday and stood us up. So although we are trying to work with the city, the city doesn't want to work with us. This is not about homeless, I think, city, you need to clean up your act. Thank you.
Thomas Doherty, followed by Prajant Malu.
Yeah, I echo Srinath's sentiments, we were not told about this, and it's actually, in reality, it's a lose-lose for the neighbors of 71 Vista Montaña, but especially for the homeless. The previous speaker talked about security guards, well, there's a reason the security guards are there, it's because the city did not do a very good job of vetting these people, as Srinath said, there, and we've asked this several times, are there, are there sex offenders there? Are there drug addicts, parolees, etc., we want to know, and you'd want to know who your neighbors were too, if you were in this confined area with this, that has razor wire around it, and 24/7 surveillance. It's really a shame for the homeless folks, and it was just a very poorly executed, last-minute knee-jerk reaction, when Apple said, not in my backyard, and Apple started writing checks to the politicians, and the politician said, you know, money is the mother's milk of politics, and we'll take that money, and we'll stick them in somebody else's backyard, because Apple, you know, you're a tech giant, and we don't want to make you mad. Well, you've got the whole neighborhood, 3,500 of us are upset, we're outraged at the treatment that we have received, and we're outraged at the treatment that the homeless folks in these RV camps have received. There was a gentleman who spread oil, we have pictures of it, somebody threw paint across the fence, you know, I guess they didn't want it in their, in their area, so they threw it over the fence, onto the grass where kids and dogs go. This is becoming a toxic waste site, in addition to the arsenic site. There are cigarette smoke, there are generators running, causing global warming, causing asthma in kids, I mean, it's just a very, very poorly executed thing, and shame on the City of San Jose for taking Apple's money and foisting this upon the homeless and the good neighbors of our neighborhood. Thank you.
Prajant Malu.
Hey, I actually want to start saying that the Home Key Program you guys just demonstrated sounds like a great deal, to basically provide wraparound services, proper roof, kitchen, plumbing, etc., etc., for a person to live properly. Like, the way the 71 Montaña safe RV parking site is set up, like, I feel bad for people who are living there, like, the government is telling them it's a safe RV parking site, but I do not see the security guard most of the times over there. Like, you have increased the neighbors around here with your actions, and it is your duty to make them and us both feel safe. So the city not responding to our questions, sneakingly taking decisions about making this RV parking site, and then you're trying to set up a meeting on a long weekend, trying to just tell us that we are gonna do it no matter what, so you've just broken the trust. I mean, it's right next to a kids' park, like, since this has happened, I haven't seen any activity, the kids' park, so don't you think you build a park for kids to play around, and then nobody's able to use it? That is the government services you're going to offer, then everybody around you is gonna start thinking that what are these council members doing? More than that, like, the people who are living there are humans, like, they should be treated as every human should be. I know there are limitations on what you can offer and what you cannot, but at least there should be a proper procedure involving the neighbors, letting them know, and so that it's a welcoming situation for them as well. They themselves would not want to be living in a space where... They themselves would not want to be living in a space where they are being hated by everybody around them, or at least not feeling welcome. Moreover, as we said, that kid's safety and everything is utmost priority, because that's why there's a neighborhood, and that's why there's a city. And we have been receiving blank responses from the government, like Rosalyn, who sent us FAQ stuff with just bland details, not, not much we can use it to. So we would really want the government to look into this situation. Thanks.
Sean.
Can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay. Here, where I'm struggling with all of this isn't the fact that there are homeless, right? I understand that, and that's something that we need to focus on as a community. I think that burden is being put on certain communities, and that is, that's inappropriate. It's unfair, and I think it impacts people financially, it impacts the lifestyle, right? More importantly, putting people in housing units doesn't do anything unless there's something that's going to help them move forward. And I don't hear any talk about that. All I hear is, you know, we're going to put housing units in, and the housing units are going to solve the problem. Well, they're not. People need help transitioning, and they need to be treated differently. It could be a family, a woman with three kids versus someone who has a drug problem or is mentally ill. In the end, this is being treated as though it's the norm. Like, there's supposed to be homeless people in the neighborhood, but there's not. And the solution that you're coming up with is basically saying, well, the homeless people are there, so that is normal, and let's just put them in houses, and then everything is safe again. And it's not. We need to be able to help them transition into a lifestyle, right? If they want a homeless lifestyle, all good. They can choose that. But it doesn't mean that we should house them to do that. I do think we need to provide facilities. I do believe we should provide medical care. I do believe we need to protect. But I don't think that burden should be placed on specific communities.
Back to the mayor.
Thank you. All right, let's go to the council with questions and comments. I just wanted to offer some quick thanks again to the entire housing team. Everybody's worked so hard to get these projects in place. I think these are great projects, and we know it's not just for this round, but potentially for the next round of funding. There's another $1.3 billion, I believe, lined up for round three. That's certainly want to get in line for that if we can't get all of these funded. Particularly on the Branham-Monterey project, I really want to thank John Sobrato. I asked him to support our QuickBuild apartment project over on Lottie, and he said, well, you've already got some donors over there, I'd rather just go fund another one. So, so he said, go find us another site. And thankfully, Councilmember Mahan worked hard to find another site, and I think that's going to be a fantastic project. I know they're using very high-quality prefabricated materials there, and really nice design. I think it's going to be great. I appreciate Councilmember Mahan's willingness to step up to take on that site, and I just want to thank the entire team at Life Moves, Aubrey Mirman and Joe Stockwell, and everybody over there, and Sarah Regis, as well as, of course, Rachel and James, and Matt Keno, and everybody who's working hard on all these projects. I do want to answer a question that one member of the community raised, which is, you know, would we, as council members, shouldn't we ask ourselves whether we want these developments in our neighborhood? Let me just emphatically say, absolutely, we should, and I do. And right now, the Housing Authority is going to build somewhere between 550 and 600 units about four blocks away from my house. And yes, we're hearing some concerns in the neighborhood, but I emphatically support it. That's going to be housing overwhelmingly for previously unhoused neighbors. And I say neighbors because the reality is, the unhoused neighbors we have are now in our parks, and they're in our streets, and they're our creeks, and they should be housed. Either way, they're our neighbors. So let's get as many houses as we possibly can with the money as long as it's there. All right, Councilmember Hamidh.
Thank you, Mayor. Appreciate all staff's work. Not going to go through the whole list of folks to thank. I think the mayor did a good job of that. I would just say thank you to all the folks that are present. Very much appreciate your comments, your heartfelt thoughts on the matter. Obviously, there's a lot of folks on Zoom. Appreciate their comments, even though some of them I vehemently disagree with, but that's what a democracy looks like. I just simply have some questions, and it's more tied to the supplemental that came out. So I want to better understand. But before I get into the questions related to the supplemental, I think there was some mention during the course of the comments as it relates to public outreach or the engagement process, if you will. Rachel, can you share a little bit about what's been done so far? Because I think something, you know, things started moving already. Can you share about, a little bit about that?
Regarding the outreach and community engagement, so as I mentioned last Friday, we had a meeting. We had 91 participants, which we felt, you know, was really, really great. So the presentation was done by myself and Consuelo Hernandez from the county, and what we did is we actually walked through all of the proposals countywide that we are supporting and bringing forward through the Home Key program. And we were able to answer and address numerous questions about, just, you know, various questions that the community had regarding the sites, and we were really able to share a lot of information. So it was very helpful.
Okay, very good. Thank you. And I can speak for myself as it relates to the residents in, that's in District 2, that we'll be having a, we're in the process scheduling a meeting with the public to further discuss that, that project. And I suspect other folks, you know, have already done that, or will be doing that. And so I just wanted to share that with the public. One of the questions I have is, we were planning to hold the meeting, our meeting in District 2 with the Housing Department. Does that change now that the Residence Inn is sort of being sent over to the Housing Authority?
No, that doesn't need to change. I mean, we can coordinate. The Housing Authority would have attended anyway, and so we will continue to do that model. We, as a city, we're still providing support and really kind of working in partnership with the Housing Authority for these deals, because both the Residence Inn and the Pavilion Inn, again, were respondents to our process. We were working on finding partners. And, and so essentially, I would just say that we'll be working very closely with the Housing Authority. We're happy to continue to coordinate on the community meetings, and we're also working on due diligence alongside of them, you know, such as getting the environmental review done and the other things. We're, we just really want to be supportive of the project. So essentially, when it comes to actually, the acquisition and the operating, the long-term funding, that's really where the Housing Authority will come in and will, will actually be the one to purchase the site.
Right. Okay, and I have some questions about that. Can you help me understand how, you know, I think there were five, five locations, and two got, I'll just use the word, handed off to the, to the Housing Authority. How is it decided that those two were the ones that were going to be shifted over to them?
Right, so we had identified, well, I would just say that the other sites were further along in our process, where we had, we had identified partners for each one. And for both the Residence Inn and the Pavilion Inn, we were still trying to figure out who our partners would be. And we had identified the Housing Authority actually as a potential development partner, because the Housing Authority can also serve as a developer. They have different roles they can play. And so we had talked to them about being the developer, and they were very interested in that. So that's kind of where our conversation was. But then in the last week, they, they came back to us and said, you know what? What if we just come in as the, the local agency, and then we can actually find a developer partner who would be another party as well, and then put together the services and everything else? So, so basically, they just approached us and said, you know what, maybe, maybe, let's think about this a little bit differently, and we can actually serve as the local agency.
Okay. And then when we, when we, you know, in the slides, or I think in the supplemental memo, there's, actually, it was in the slides when you went through the different projects for that particular project, and residents in District 2, it said developer to be determined. And so that's an existing hotel, and so when I think developer, I'm thinking more along the lines for like tenant improvements and things of that nature, right? We're not tearing down the hotel and rebuilding.
We are not tearing down the Residence Inn, no. It's a beautiful, beautiful building. What we are going to need is to someone who will take care of the maintenance, who will do the property management, who will, you know, work with tenants on a daily basis, you know, basically just take care of the property. So that's, that's the word that we're, we're using, probably mainly because, in our experience, a developer has all those services. You know what I mean? They know how to do all of that, so it kind of comes with that word. But in this case, I mean, I guess you could think about charities' housing. Once they build a property, they, they continue to be the developer for that site, but then they, they, their role changes into making sure that the property management is taken care of and, and all of that. So they have responsibility for the, the building in the long term.
Okay. And then so today, let's just assume everything moves forward. What's the, the approval process, if you will, as it relates to the Housing Authority being the local agency, and then does, does it ever come back to us?
So that's a great question. Yes, so the, what will happen is that the Housing Authority Board will have to approve, approve basically their ability to apply. And it would, it would not, as far as I understand, and I may need to rely on someone to help me on this, but anyway, as far as I understand, it would not necessarily have to be authorized by the San Jose City Council. The one consideration may be by the San Jose Housing Authority, which is like a separate entity. So that may be a way that, that this body is engaged again, but it would be as the San Jose Housing Authority.
Yeah. One of the concerns I have is that the Housing Authority is, let's just say they move forward, they require it, they're going to operate it. What I'm curious about is how responsive should we expect them to be to the council offices and the city generally as it relates to the operation of that? Once that moves forward, do we sort of, you know, let go of the reins and they do what they do? I'm curious, because obviously, it's important to me, and I suspect to other council members, that we still have a voice in trying to figure out what's best for our community and what we're hearing and such, and so.
Right. I would say that we have a very, very positive relationship with the Housing Authority, and they're very responsive to us and any of the, any issues that come up related to any of the developments that they're responsible for. So I would just expect that to be an ongoing, open relationship. And again, I think that the city, we feel like this is kind of like, we feel very connected to this as well, and we're definitely going to want to stay very close to the specific project.
Okay. And can I just jump in for a moment on?
Yeah, please.
That issue, because President Prince has taken over now as head of Housing Authority, has been, I think, uniquely interested in collaborating in areas perhaps in ways that prior, prior heads had not been. And, you know, made a point at the press conference I was at yesterday that he knows 40% of his vouchers come from San Jose. That's because we have an agreement, and he understands he, he needs to pay attention to our concerns. So I would just encourage you to reach out one-on-one with, with Mr. Prince, because I think he's been very collaborative, anyway.
Okay, thank you. I appreciate that, and we certainly will reach out. Thought that was God talking.
Clarity Ward is here from the Housing Authority. He wanted to hear directly from her and the Housing Authority's commitment to working one-on-one with us and being responsive.
I would, if she's.
Thank you, Jackie. Can you guys hear me?
Yeah.
Hi, council members. Thank you for your time today. I would echo what, what Jackie and Rachel and the mayor have said. Yes, the Housing Authority is its own separate political public agency body, but we are very connected to the city. We are your housing authority. If you have any developments that are active currently with us in your district, we're regularly interfacing with you and your staff, and we don't expect that to change with Home Key. So we look forward to working on these deals and being responsive in the coming months as we do community outreach, and then in the coming years as these great projects come forward.
Thank you so much for that. I appreciate it, and we'll be reaching out independently. Another question I have, and this is a little awkward, given that the Housing Authority's on the call, but I'll ask you, Rachel, because you work for the city. Are there any current projects that exist that the Housing Authority manages that we maybe have had some issues with, or things have come up? Anything that we need to be aware of as we go down this road?
I am not aware of any projects that we have any concerns with. And again, over time, if, if some things come up, we, we just call them, and we worked it out, and they are consistently responsive.
Okay, all right. Wonderful. And so thank you for all that. I would just end by just saying that I live about a mile from the Branham and Monterey Road site. My chief of staff lives about 1,000 feet. My sister lives about 2,000 feet from the site, very much familiar with it, and look forward to hearing a little bit more of the conversation. Thank you.
Thank you. I neglected to thank you, Councilmember Hamidh, for your willingness to step up and support this effort at San Ignacio Road, and as well as Councilmember Davis for the hotel, I believe, on the Alameda, and I think there are two, and Councilmember Paros's district as well. Appreciate everyone stepping up to support these. Councilmember Davis?
Thank you. I also want to add my thanks to the staff for all your quick work in identifying these sites and bringing them to us and to find partners for these sites. I did want to ask a couple of questions, and then, and then I think I'll be happy to make the motion. There were some questions from the public, so I want to make sure I ask them. What is the, our prospect for getting the grant, and what's the timeline if we are awarded the grant? And is there a possibility that we wouldn't get awarded all of the sites?
Okay, so I will, I'm happy to address those kind of.
Three questions, sorry.
Yes, okay. All at once. So first of all, what I, this is kind of a, it is a little bit of a unique situation where it's, it's a rolling application. The application opened up last Friday, October 1. It's open. So if we felt like tomorrow we were ready, because you guys are authorizing us now, you know what I mean? We needed that, but then we could go in and actually submit an application. I don't think that we're going to do that tomorrow, because we need to pull together the work. However, what we're going to do is, as the applications are ready, which basically just means we have all the documentation we need, then we will submit them, and then we will just continue to do that until all of them have been submitted. What the state has made clear is that they will respond to applicants within 45 days to let us know if you have received the, the grant or not. So that's actually very quick. So I think we're going to be getting, again, let's say that in the next month, we're able to submit, you know, three of them, and then within the next 60 days, all five. I'm just making that up. Then we should just be hearing each, by each application date in the next 45 days if we receive the funding or not. Then what we will need to do is come back to City Council, and then City Council will authorize the actual purchase, the appropriation of money, the acceptance of the grant. All of that will be done here at City Council. If for some reason we feel like we need to take those separately because they're on separate tracks, we'll go ahead and do that. Otherwise, we'll bring them all together at the same time to say, hey, this is what we received, and we, you know, we need your authorization to move forward. Is it possible to not receive all this funding? I would say that anything is possible. We know that there's $200 million available for the Bay Area region. That includes San Francisco, Oakland, all of Santa Clara County, which we know is being, you know, Santa Clara, our own county is, just has a very aggressive plan for Home Key. We know that San Mateo County is really excited about it. So I don't really see how everything could possibly get funded through this round, but I think we're hopeful that, again, if we put together quality applications, that maybe if, you know, we could be in line for round, the next round, that would be exciting. So we just want to make sure we're all lined up.
Thank you. And if we don't, if any individual application doesn't get accepted, will they have comments for us on that application about why?
Yeah, yeah, we actually have a pretty good, we've been able to communicate quite a bit with the team, and they will let us know what we need or what's missing, and they've, they've been able to provide. they've, they've been able to provide that feedback very quickly.
Okay, great. And then there were, there were some other comments, public comments, and I just want to make sure to address them. I think Roland asked, why was the Residence Inn taken out? I just, I think it's been made clear, but I just want to say it explicitly, the Residence Inn has not been removed from consideration. It's just going to be, the application's going to come from the Housing Authority rather than from us.
Correct.
Okay, just want to be clear about it. And then another commenter asked about the services on site. Could you talk a little bit about that? So you had talked about who's doing the, who's doing the development or the property management and who's doing the services. So I know that there's going to be services on site, but can you talk a little bit about that for the residents who are listening, the neighbors who are listening, about what services are provided on each of these sites?
Absolutely. So for each site, we have, we really have a target population in mind, and then, so what we're trying to do is match up the best service provider for that population. So for example, with the Pacific Motor Inn, we're working with PATH. And PATH is interesting because they have one arm that's called PATH Ventures, and they are the development arm, so they're very interested in, again, the property management, maintenance of the property and all of that. And then they have a separate group that is just PATH, and PATH provides services. And so they, they are just a very well-known agency throughout the state of California, but also has in operation now Villas on the Park, and then they also are working on a couple of other projects that are coming forward. They're actually also serving as a service provider for our Evans Lane property. And so they've been just getting more and more experience working here in San Jose, and we're just really excited to have them present in the downtown. It's a really an area, in a, in a, an area where they feel comfortable and have been doing their work, and would just love to have another home right in our downtown. So that's an example of a service provider who is just very, has a longstanding reputation for providing excellent service to our homeless population.
Yeah, I think the, the question, the thing, I think that neighbors don't necessarily understand is what that means when we say services are provided. We're not just talking about services on the property management, it's about case management. And so can you talk a little bit about how each individual client at the site will engage with those services and what, what that entails? So I know there's, there's case, a caseworker is assigned, and they go through, that caseworker works with each individual household to talk about what their medical needs are, whether there are drug or alcohol services that they, addiction services that they need, whether there are mental health services, and whether there are physical medical issues. Is that, does that cover it all? I think there might be employment also.
Yeah, I think that, that is a very good description of, of the services that are provided onsite at these locations, and.
And that's at every single location?
Mm-hmm, yes. Every, every.
Actually, this is Jackie, and I just want to jump in. It really depends, council member. If we're doing a permanent supportive housing site, then you're absolutely right. We would provide intensive case management that would allow for that level of support. It could be that we would scale down the level of case management if the property was going to be a standard affordable housing development. We would still offer limited case management, but we may not provide the same extensive case management at the ratios that get provided under permanent supportive housing. So permanent supportive housing, we do have a standard of the number of case managers that are attached to the site, but again, we potentially would have scaled down services depending on what's needed for each site.
And that will depend on who is at the site, not a designation that's given regardless of who's there? Am I correct?
Exactly. That's one of the reasons that each of the sites are targeting or potentially could target a different population, and the services are really structured to meet the needs of the population that's living on the site. So when we come back with the applications or with the approval for the loans, we can provide more detail regarding the services that will be provided for each site.
Thank you. I think it'll, that will be helpful, but I think it's most helpful for those of us individually to, when we're meeting with our community, to have that information.
Councilmember Davis, can I interrupt for just a moment?
Yes.
Just a point of order. We're approaching the six o'clock hour. I was going to take a half-hour break for dinner at six, but I'm, I'm the jerk who said to Tony, oh, don't worry about ordering dinner, because we're going to be done. And boy, was I wrong. So, so in any event, I'm not sure what we're doing, but I guess maybe I'll spring for, for euros or something. Anyway, we're, we're going to find a way to.
Can we just keep going?
I'm fine going through. Are you guys okay? We're good? All right, let's plow through it. Okay, thank you. Councilmember Davis?
Thanks. And I'm mindful that I'm taking up a lot of time, but I am asking the public comment questions. I want to be clear that I have the questions down from public comment. The other one was about lived experience, the input from people with lived experience.
Yes, so thank you. We are, as part of our, our process, and actually the application itself requires that we engage people with lived experience to help shape our proposals. And so that is part of our strategy, and that will be happening as, as we move through this process.
Thank you. And then finally, there was a question about, you had mentioned possible redevelopment on the Arena Hotel site, and a commenter asked about that. Can you talk a little bit about what that means?
Yeah, that's a, it's a really good question. So we have, we have two sites that we've identified as potential redevelopment sites, so they are the Pacific Motor Inn and the Arena Hotel. And so what we're going to be doing is, is initially, we will be using the buildings as they are, and we will be providing housing like immediately. But in each one of those cases, we feel like, because where they are, they're land use designations, and just like the surrounding areas, being in the downtown and the Deardon Station area, we feel that there's a lot of potential to actually build new housing in, on that site. So in that case, and it would be a long-term goal, something most likely five years out or more, what we would do is work with the developer to, to work through an opportunity where they would actually take down the existing structures and build a new housing development. And that would most likely be like a traditional tax credit deal, that would be a permanent housing solution. And we would love to see even more units on those sites. We would want to see more density, which we feel those sites have great opportunity for.
Thank you. And, and existing residents at that time would be relocated into other affordable housing?
Yes, so the existing.
In the city.
Yes, exactly. The, the existing residents would, would need to be relocated and go through the process that's required for, for relocation.
Thank you. And then just a note for any of the District Six residents who are listening, who asked, there was someone who asked about the advisory committee. Please contact my office if you would like to have more information about how to be engaged and continue to be engaged in the process for the Arena Hotel in District Six. We do also give neighborhood preference for, for that group if it gets too big, but I haven't had that issue in the past with Evans Lane. If you live or have a business in the, in the area, that is, that's really our only criteria for, for being on the committee, and of course, those are public meetings, so we always notice them. And so that's, that's my comment for that. I did want to ask one last thing.
If I could ask, it'd be the last thing.
It is my, it is my last thing, and I'm making a motion. I just want to make it clear, because we asked in our memo for geographic preference for the Branham Monterey Emergency Interim Housing Site, and we didn't ask for that for the other sites. I want to make it clear, were we, is that possible to do geographic preference for all of the sites?
Okay, I just want to see if Jackie wants to respond to this one, because she's been working on this.
Sure, yes, thank you, Rachel. Again, Jackie Morales, friend, I'm the Director of Housing. So our Home Key specifically requires that we coordinate the selection of tenants through our COC, and our COC has very distinct policies. And so the policy of, one, we have an agreement with them that for any kind of shelter interim uses, that people can refer to the sites that live nearby, and that those would be priorities. If those other sites are considered permanent supportive housing, then the COC does have a referral service. And so unless the city were willing to pay for all of the services which the county currently provides for permanent supportive housing, we would have to follow the priority system through them.
Okay, got it. Thank you. With that, I will move the memo by the mayor, myself, and a few of my colleagues. And just to be clear, we'll move the staff recommendation that includes the supplemental, so the, the three city applications as opposed to the five.
Second. Thank you, Councilmember Davis, and secondly, Councilmember Mayhan. Councilmember Peralos?
Yeah, thank you, and I appreciate and support moving on through the, the last two items, and I'll, I'll try to be brief here. And happy with the motion, signed on to that, that memo with the mayor and my colleagues. There are two sites, although one now looks like it's moving over to the, the Housing Authority. Thank you, staff, for being able to describe how that might be a, an easy handoff, and look forward to engaging with the Housing Authority on, on being able to, to work with the community on, on those projects, or at least the one within, within D3. We know that the need that we have here is great, and at the speed we've been able to move on these, these projects is important, but obviously, at the same time, it has allowed for much less community engagement, which is why being able to have these advisory groups in our neighborhoods, I think, is really key and important, and that was a key component of what we wanted to ensure was included in our direction. The, the last sort of important point that I'll bring up in regards to the directions, and we, we heard from residents today of Shore Stay, which I'll make mention, Shore Stay is about 250 feet away from my kid's preschool, and it's about a mile from where I live, and, you know, as I have been for years, I'm happy to support any of these projects in my own backyard, and, and appreciate my colleagues stepping up throughout the years on now creating more of these opportunities throughout the city. We know that we need that. But we have obviously still what seems like some confusion on Shore Stay specifically, but, but maybe in the, the complete interpretation of the regulations, requirements of Project Home Key. So I just wanted to see if staff had any update in that regard. We put that recommendation to, to come back to, to ensure that we have a full understanding and clear understanding. It sounds like there may be still some confusion on getting clarity from HCD, so I'd like to just see if, if staff has a response to that.
So.
Yeah, go ahead.
This is Jackie again from the Housing Department, and we have not been able to reach an agreement yet with the state HCD. The, this program is the fastest program that they've ever, ever been able to implement, and so even in their report where they evaluated the program, they said that they realized there were challenges in implementing it. And so we are working diligently, but have yet to receive clarification from them on the matters that we're, we're dealing with them.
Okay, thank you. Obviously, a lot of, you know, people in their livelihoods at stake here, and we want to be able to have that clarity, and apologize to those that are here, and those that are residents of Shore Stay that don't have that clarity. We want to make sure that, that we're, we're set on that completely as we move forward on these other sites, and I know that that's your goal as well, and appreciate staff being able to respond to that, and hopefully we can get an answer quickly here from, from HCD. With that, I'm happy to support the, the motion. Thanks.
Thank you. Councilmember Mayhan?
Thanks, Mayor, and I'll be quick, knowing that this has gone on for a while, but I, I do want to add my thanks to, to your staff, to the Housing Department, Jackie, Rachel, and others, and Nancy, and Matt Kano, and I know many people came together quickly to help us take advantage of this unique opportunity to address the homelessness crisis that we all see every day in our community. And I also want to especially thank John Sobrato for making that personal commitment to make the Branham and Monterey site, knock on wood, possible. I know we're still early in the journey of these applications, but I'm, I'm hopeful, and I think it's going to do a tremendous amount of good in our community. In the interest of being very quick, I will just say, and I've spent quite a bit of time out in the Deer Run neighborhood this year, meeting with both the unhoused residents in the encampment there, as well as their neighbors. And I know there's, I know there's no, there's no perfect site, there's no easy solution here, but I just, I want the members of the public in that neighborhood who are still on the call to just know that I'm very committed to continuing to work with the neighborhood to address the concerns that are there. And I, I do really believe that these investments can be a win-win for both the folks who are going to get housing and supportive services, and the opportunity to achieve self-sufficiency and independence, as well as the neighborhoods that are impacted by the encampments that are there today with fires and noise and a lot of other challenges. So I really truly believe we can craft win-wins here. And I just, I'll just close by highlighting a couple of the recommendations that I'm very grateful for in the group memo that's hopefully about to move forward. Our office will certainly be taking advantage of the opportunity to form a neighborhood advisory group, which I think is going to be really critical to the long-term success of this site and bringing together what is the entire neighborhood there of housed and unhoused residents to ensure that this site is successful. And I, this was just referenced, thanks to Councilmember Davis's question, but I also really appreciate our openness to working with the COC to figure out how to ensure that the neighborhoods that take on this housing sees, sees some of the benefit directly, and really feels like the conditions in their neighborhood are improved. And so I think the recommendations in the memo are a good faith effort on the part of, on our part as a city government to try to ensure that the communities that take on what is often perceived as an unfair burden are going to see some upside, and hopefully in the long run, we'll see this as, as a real win-win. So I just wanted to highlight those and thank everybody for their hard work. I know it's just the beginning, but look forward to these sites ultimately coming to fruition. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Councilmember Sparta?
Thanks, I just had a few quick questions, and thank you to Councilmember Peralos for addressing the Shore Stay specific, and I think as soon as we have some information from HCD that we can get that out. And I had a, a few questions. One is to stay in line with the Shore Stay discussion. Have we sent code enforcement out there to address the concerns about the livability of Shore Stay?
So we have housing inspectors who have been out there and are, are familiar with the conditions. One, for example, there are, there have, there's like some exposed areas by the stairways, and that was actually done by our team intentionally to be able to inspect the stairway. So it was work that was done by our own crew. Anyway, so we are, we have inspectors who have been out there, we are very aware of what needs to be done, and we're working through just our own processes in order to get the, the contractors that we need to get out there and get the work done.
And have we addressed the issues of the bugs, things like that? Have that, those been inspected?
So we, we have inspectors out there, and they have looked into these issues, yes.
And have they found anything, or is there a, so what is the process? I think just explaining a little bit more on what that process is would be helpful.
Okay, so we have gone to the, to the property and identified things that need to be done, and then now what we're doing is we're working through getting contracts in place for the correct, for the work that needs to be done, right? So, so anyway, that's the, we're in the middle of an administrative process right now in order to get our contracts in place so we can get people to the site to get the work done.
Okay, so that the issues could be addressed?
Yes.
Okay, thank you. And I had a couple of questions. So related to the 30% issue, the Housing Authority is going to submit a couple of proposals, and in the total, there's 400.
going to submit a couple of proposals. And in the total, there's 439 permanent units in there. For the permanent units, whether they're vouched or not vouched, are we revisiting the 30% of income issue? Or are we waiting until we get all the information from ACD in order to make the determination for the units we're applying for tonight?
So we are, we need to work out the details with HCD before we can make a decision about how the rents are structured for each one of the sites. So that's what we're working on now. We expect that we could have that resolved shortly, so that we can have it, you know, have the determination apply to our grant applications.
Okay, thank you. And that's helpful. And one of the things I was coming from was based on ELI housing, not even going into PSH housing, but ELI housing. And I'll give an example, Markham Plaza, right? Huge numbers of units, right, 300 units. And there were really no services on site. And so the city and the county worked together to refinance it in a way where there's way more services on site. And in addition to the physical improvements. And so what I'm getting at is how we're going to offer, how we're going to be able to charge rents that people can afford, and also provide these services that we've been mentioning a lot tonight, right? And we all want services, and I think that's important. It's an important acknowledgement that there need to be services on site, and there need to be enough to support the folks living in whatever development. And so that's why I'm kind of pushing that issue a little bit, the 30%, because we need people to be able to afford it no matter where they are. But then we also need to offer services. And so would we work with the county or another provider to step in? Or is that where we would step in with tax obligation or tax bonds and to finance that kind of support? Because I think it's truly, I think it's critical to the long-term success of any development. So I would...
Go ahead, Jackie. Go ahead.
Yeah. So one of the things that the city has received, one of the funding sources is home. We have received $11 million in home dollars. And one of the things they can go to is providing supportive services specifically. And so if we were not able to structure a payment plan, or given that if the state were to direct us that it had to be based on income, we would have to make a decision. If we could charge a flat rent, we are definitely looking how we could structure that. And then we could fill a gap for services with our home funding. So we are holding our home funding to see how these applications can move forward.
Okay, thank you. That's great to hear. And then, you know, I don't have, with the community groups, right, are we going to incorporate Good Neighbor Plan, sort of that whole concept where we just engage in communication so that we don't wait till, you know, things are off the rails, that people just get used to talking to one another? Is that how this is going to move forward?
Yeah, that is one of the concepts that will be considered as we put together the advisory groups for each one of the sites.
Okay, thank you. And then for the last question on the residents in, so where the target population is families, how are we identifying those families? Is that through HMIS? Is that through a school district? Is that through McKinney-Vento? Because I know it's all sort of separate.
Yeah. So I, you know, again, I would just say that that specific site is early in the process. We're still trying to identify all the partners, which will help. But we will be working through the COC in order to identify families for that site. So that's, I mean, it will be working together with the entire system to determine who will be living there.
Okay, great. That's it for me. Thank you. And I'll obviously be supporting the motion. Thanks.
Thank you. If there are no other comments, let's vote. I want to also give a shout out to Tom Kono. I understand he's here watching his brother labor away, and probably now has greater empathy than ever for his brother and his work. All right.
That vote was unanimous.
Great, thank you. Item 8.3 is the city's COVID-19 response and recovery emergency rental assistance program. There is a presentation. Hi, Reagan.
Good evening, Mayor and Council, Reagan Henninger, Deputy Director of the Housing Department, also joined by Jackie Morales Ferrand, the Director. Tonight, we'll be seeking council authority to participate in the state-run emergency rental assistance program. So from the beginning of the pandemic, San Jose has prioritized helping those who are most vulnerable to the pandemic. On the left, those three objectives are what council approved as the framework for our COVID response and recovery. Our team has been working with the county, which also received funds from the U.S. Treasury, and with our homeless prevention system led by Destination Home and Sacred Heart, to learn from our experiences over the last year and build on the partnerships we have with grassroots service providers to reach those in greatest need. You can see here our five priorities for the rental assistance program: partner with trusted community partners, outreach to zip codes with the highest rates of COVID-19 and extremely low-income households, simplify the application and meet our federal requirements. Over the last 18 months, this network of partners has worked incredibly hard to provide assistance to those most vulnerable. In 2020, as you all remember, we served nearly 15,000 households with rental assistance. In June of this year, we launched Phase Two of the Rental Assistance Program using U.S. Treasury funds. The city and county's allocation from U.S. Treasury for emergency rental assistance Round One was $57 million. The state allocation for the city and county was $60 million. So in this first phase, using ERA One funds, the local program has so far paid 2,800 households, an average of $10,000 per household totaling $29 million in funds dispersed. 92% of these households served are extremely low-income, and 84% are households of color. We currently have about 3,000 households in our queue for approval and payment with our ERA One funds. Since March of this year, the state has served 3,310 households in Santa Clara County with an average payment of $13,000 per household for a total of $44 million dispersed so far. There are currently about 7,000 applications in the state queue waiting for approval and payment. And I wanted to also acknowledge the team that has been working so hard over the last 18 months on the rental assistance program. From the Housing Department, Emily Hislop, Sandra Marillo, Teresa Ramos, Miranda Bersiaga, Michael Baca, Vivian Nguyen, Ally Rico, Jeff Scott, and Chelsea Pelacchio. From the county, Consuelo Hernandez, Jessica Roscoe, Diana Castillo and Hong Kao. From Sacred Heart, Aaron Stanton, and from Destination Home, Chad Bohorquez. So we've been operating the first phase of rental assistance in what we call a hybrid model, meaning there is both a local and a state rental assistance program. The programs are bifurcated by income, with the state program serving households above 30% AMI, as well as landlords. And the local program focused on households below 30% AMI or extremely low-income. Back in February, when the council approved this hybrid model, the state legislation and federal guidance governing rental assistance was much different than it is today. The administration recommended that the city, county, and our partners administer a local rental assistance program because we felt it was the best way to reach our target population, serving our lowest-income households. For example, Senate Bill 91 provided a framework for paying a landlord 80% of past due rent, and they considered it full payment. In a hybrid model, a local program could pay 100% of rent. The program model laid out in SB 91 also relied on landlord cooperation to ensure success. And we learned from our 2020 efforts that many of our households do not have traditional landlord-tenant relationships. And we also know that the pandemic and recession had disproportionately impacted ELI residents. And our partners were very successful in reaching ELI residents. And many lacked digital access for the state program. Thus, we thought a hybrid model would best serve our target population. And we could focus our effort in targeted neighborhoods and zip codes in San Jose. And finally, with a hybrid model, the program could ensure that materials were accessible in multiple languages. So fast forward to today, and we have a second round of funds from the U.S. Treasury. San Jose's allocation is $36 million, and the county's is $30 million. And we also have new legislation and a new framework that's guiding this round of rental assistance. The state passed AB 832, which included several important changes to the rental assistance program. Namely, it provided three additional months of eviction protections, and it increased the compensation for rental assistance to 100% of the unpaid rent available to either tenant or landlord. The state has requested that cities across the state consolidate rental programs and join their local program with the state, or operate their own independent programs. And although allowed under AB 832, the state has highly discouraged continuing hybrid models. State tenant protections have ended, and those regulations under AB 832 contain very strict deadlines and coordination with the courts. And the state believes strongly that one streamlined program will better serve and protect the most vulnerable. The legislation does provide an option, Option B, for cities and counties that receive a direct allocation of federal funds to operate their own local program. And this would, you would assume all risks and responsibilities under AB 832. The administration and our local program partners cannot recommend this option at this time, as we are already stretched beyond capacity to administer our ERA One program. And it's also important to note that no jurisdiction in the state will continue to operate a hybrid rental assistance program. So we are recommending participation in the state program. The state has made improvements to the program that are designed to better serve our target population, which is ELI households, and targeting very specific areas in San Jose. They've begun increasing messaging and outreach, and are encouraging tenants and landlords alike to submit applications using trusted local partners. The HousingIsKey.com website and application is now fully translated into six languages. The state has also made it much easier for applicants to access rent relief by launching a very user-centric application, requiring fewer documents and simplifying questions. So we think it now takes about 30 minutes to complete a state application. As well, the state now has the ability to assist households without formal lease agreements. And they have added capacity for review and processing additional or increased applications. And finally, the state is prioritizing serving households who have received an eviction notice for failure to pay rent. So the ERA Two funds must be 50% obligated by this March, making partnership with the state critical to meeting these spending deadlines, given the limited bandwidth of our local network. This means we can concentrate our efforts locally on helping residents apply to the state. And the U.S. Treasury will also recapture funds that are not obligated. Those funds will be reallocated to cities and counties who request additional funds and who are currently meeting their spending deadlines. So while much has changed and evolved since we first received our ERA One dollars back in February, the federal guidance and state legislation have made rental assistance more accessible. And as I just described, there's been very significant improvements in the state program. What has not changed is our commitment to serving our most vulnerable residents. The homeless prevention system partners will remain in place and refer new applicants to the state program and help residents navigate the process. In addition, the county and city will continue our efforts to help residents in need access the state application. We will still target outreach, efforts to ELI households, and in zip codes hardest hit by COVID-19. Our two eviction prevention help centers will remain in place, and we're already assisting households complete the state application. And we'll also continue to do door-to-door knock and talks in targeted zip codes. So consolidating programs will eliminate confusion for tenants and landlords about which program to apply, the state or local. There'll be one application regardless of income. And duplication of benefits will be less of an issue. And most importantly, our local residents will be fully able to access the remaining tenant protections that are in place with AB 832. So with approval of today's action, city staff, together with our partners at the county, Sacred Heart, Destination Home, and our local partner network, will continue to focus on our most vulnerable residents. Help is available through our eviction help centers, or by calling 408-975-4444, and online at HousingIsKey.com. And with that shameless plug, that's the conclusion of the staff presentation. Thank you.
Thank you, Reagan. Thank you for all your great work and the work of all of our partners together. And that is not shameless. There's no shame in advertising that number. Again, it's 408-975-4444. Folks need help. There is still opportunity to get that help. Okay, let's go to the public.
Tessa Woodman-C.
Yeah, oh, thank you, Tessa Woodman-C. So I was just, you know, on next door with my neighbors, and as we're dealing with the arena. And like I said, there was COVID people put at the hotel, and we've had nothing but problems there. And I'm thinking, oh, and you say you're going to do things, and we're going to do this all right. But I don't really feel like you really have an idea of how, you say, deal with our most vulnerable. Well, I think this plan of, you know, I'm just looking at, I know this is dealing with COVID. So, you know, what we did at the arena, when we put everybody in the hotels, and we didn't provide the wraparound services, there was, you know, what people are saying, homelessness, drugs, alcohol, murders, there was violence there, and prostitution. And, you know, and you're saying that it's going to be better, you know? And this is where, you know, the track record of our city, even the way, you know, with COVID...
Tessa, you're pretty far off point here.
Okay.
The rental assistance program.
I know. I'm talking about the rental assistance program in regards to this COVID, and that how we needed to do a lot more for our most vulnerable, like they did in Germany. They were giving them $2,000. Everybody got $2,000. We're not doing that. We need to really think outside the box in regards to really providing basic needs for people, food, clothing, and shelter. And so the only other thing is, in regards to rental assistance, is there is currently... And so the only other thing is, in regards to rental assistance, is there is currently, through this California Housing, CalHFA, and they are working with helping mortgage holders to get assistance. So I really would appreciate if the city would work on that end of it, because they are proposing to Janet Yellen to supply money to mortgage holders, to make them whole through their loans, and not only the rental. And so if you can work on that, that'd be great, because that's in the process.
Blair Beekman, Alma Gold Chain.
Hi, thank you. Blair Beekman here. Thanks for this item. You know, sorry about my words on the previous item. I didn't mean to offer so much excitement. A lot was explained by people, thank you, by city government persons. You know, we're overwhelmed by a lot of new subsidy plans that are coming through, and it just takes a lot to comprehend. Like, I've been trying to write, if we just do our good practices at this time and do what we do best, you know, I think that can help lead us to more creative ideas, like what Tessa's trying to offer, which I think is the point of all this new subsidy money coming in. It's just a matter that if we practice our good stuff first, and know what we do well first, and learn how to transition people into permanent housing, that seems like a good start to me, you know, the total beginner here. It was mentioned ELI housing, how this will be serving people of ELI housing. I wanted to mention, you know, from the last item, you know how much I've been talking about the need to talk about ELI and VLI? And what about mixed income ideas? I mean, you guys know these things well. Can we start finally openly talking about these things, you know, in the public meeting process? And really start planning? MTC has plans for the end of this decade, but I think we're really ready to start these things now. And of course, how does all of this connect to ideas of a possible earthquake coming up in the next few years? How do we plan around that, for that, before and after that? Can we talk openly about this sort of subject matter, so we can have clear ideas how we can be working? If my words are accurate. Thank you very much.
Alma Gold Chain.
Yes, I'd like to understand, when you're speaking about rental assistance, how you're dealing with the 71 Vista Montana residents that seem to be double-dipping, staying at motels, and then dumping their vehicles that are inoperable in our neighborhood, and then creating security and hazards, and fire hazards in our neighborhood? I'm just really, it seems like you have all this money that, for the city, to deal with homeless, and you've dumped these people on a hazardous site. I'm just really confused, and it's not serving the homeless. They don't have.
Sorry, ma'am, this is really off-topic.
I believe that it's on topic.
No, it's not even close.
Back to the mayor here.
Okay. Sorry, my phone is acting up. Councilmember Sparsa.
Thank you, Mayor. I wanted to really thank our city staff, to thank Reagan, to thank Sandra Murillo, and all of the folks, and there are many more than what Reagan named, that have been working seven days a week, working constantly to set this up. I know that we had our homeless prevention program before COVID, but we've ramped it up at an incredible level. And how many nonprofit equity partners are we up to? Over 70? Right, over 70 nonprofit equity partners who are embedded in communities throughout San Jose to make this happen? And so I just, for folks that get cynical about government and think government doesn't do anything, you know, it's been heroic, I think, during COVID, the amount of heart that people in the city and in our nonprofit community have stepped up to help folks, knowing that it's much more than just a roof over somebody's head. It's their life, it's their children. I've talked before, where I've gone out in the community during COVID, and I've had mothers come up to me crying because of their anxiety, because of the depression, they're worried about their children. And all of these things sort of converge into a family's ability to stay housed. And so I just, I wanted to acknowledge that. I think it's huge. I will say I'm disappointed that the state is sort of making us do it this way, considering we were so successful earlier, but I understand, I'm going to suck it up. I think there are so many families out there that still need help, and I just wanted to thank you and all of our partners for doing that. With that, I'd like to move to adopt the resolution.
Second.
Thank you.
Thank you, councilmember. I want to echo all the thanks, and also really thank Jen Loving for getting the ball rolling, what, March of 2020, with a real effort that seemed to snowball with a lot of folks jumping in, Ponchikovara, Sacred Heart, and everyone who worked so hard, and then really set the infrastructure, the human infrastructure, in place, so when the federal money and state money came in, we could actually hit the ground running. I think it was just wonderful that, as a community, we were so well-prepared. I had one question, and I know this is going to be hard to answer, Reagan, but we know the need is extraordinary out there. Why do we think more people have not come forward?
It's a hard question to answer. Thank you for that. You know, it's, it is hard to say. You know, I think there might be some misconceptions around documentation that's required, or if someone has to prove citizenship to receive a rental assistance benefit. You don't have to, you know, prove citizenship. There's very little documentation that's required. It could be maybe people think they owe too much, you know? I owe nine months of rent, and there's no way that someone can help me. But we can pay 12 months of rent, plus, you know, three months of forward rent, so really we can support a household for 15 months total. So those are perhaps just a few ideas, but, you know, again, it really is hard to say why more people aren't applying.
Thank you. Councilmember Rice.
Actually, on that note, I wanted to ask, I know there's 70-plus partners that are in this work together, but is there any partner that's specifically clarifying some of those points that you just made? Because there's also folks who may not have a rental agreement, a formal rental agreement, right? I mean, there's just so many different cases. So how is that being dealt with?
I think that's something that all of our partners across our network really try and emphasize when we're working with a household in distress or in trauma, that, you know, we try and explain, we can make the process easy, we can help you upload documents, we can help you apply, we even help, we even help households create an email. If they don't have an email or don't have access to technology, we help households, you know, quickly create a Gmail account, so that we can help them set up an application. So I think we're in that sort of deep level of assistance with households across all of our network of partners.
Right. Well, you know, this is where my, that suggestion for the CETF to come in and be on-site and provide that kind of technical assistance, because then you can get to more folks, right? And then they could subscribe to that lower-rate internet access if they don't have it, especially for those school districts or in those areas where they're no longer participating in our digital literacy program. In other words, they've given back the hotspots, and everybody's kind of on their own, and if they want a hotspot, they have to check it out through the library, which more is going to be available. And libraries have been doing a really great job at that. But there's some districts who've given it back to us, and that concerns me, because not only for access to homework and just research, and, you know, you just can't walk it to the library, or not everybody has a book of encyclopedias. I'm just laughing, because I remember the encyclopedia's in my house. Never were complete. And so I hope that we can make connections between all of these systems and all the things that we know already, and those communities that are vulnerable, right? And so if we know that they're vulnerable, we know that they're not as savvy as we think they have been in this whole last year. And I want to thank you and the Housing Department, because I know that you've reached out already to my office to talk about CETF, and what would that technical assistance consist of and look like. And there's nothing better for, especially those vulnerable populations that we've been talking about for this whole, you know, year-plus. It takes a lot of time, it takes a lot of resources, it's going to be expensive, but it's going to cost us much more if those folks lose their homes and get into a system where, we all know what the research shows, so this prevention piece, even though it might look like a lot, a large investment, I think we need to, it's a point where we need to decide, what is the city of San Jose going to do to begin to connect with those hard-to-reach populations? We can't continue just to ask this question and look to partners. We have to take a lead in this, because this is part of the recovery. If those folks don't recover, we can't all recover well. So anyways, the last question is, those folks who started their application with us and now are kind of transferred over to the state, how are they, they're kind of in the limbo. Is there any protection for those?
Yeah, so there was, there's about a little over 300 or so households that will be transferring. We have already transferred over to the state. And so the process has been, they were first contacted by the entity that initially helped them, for example, that was Sacred Heart, to let them know that we'll be processing their application through a different avenue, meaning the state. Then the city and county contacted those households and helped them complete a state application. And then we will, we have given that list to the state to have them prioritize the list of households that kind of have to, that have to transfer, because we realize that's an inconvenience for a household that's in trauma and, you know, eagerly awaiting their assistance.
Right. So essentially, we double that number, right? It's really 600 that we've supported, because we've kind of backtracked and did some work versus taking on a new case, or taking on a new family, or accepting new folks into the system. And so thank you for making sure that those folks don't get lost and that somebody is tracking them. I really appreciate that. That's really the, I think, all the questions that I had before you answered them. Lastly, I just want to thank you. I know I'm forever grateful, I'm going to continue to say thank you, because I know that you all make such a huge difference. And councilmember Sparsa was talking about how, what a difference a home makes to somebody who's unhoused, and a child who can actually focus, and a mom that can actually breathe and not take that third job. And I just thank you so much for all of the work. I know that you probably spent so many sleepless hours doing all this really great work, and so, so thank you.
All right, let's vote. All right, the final item this evening is 8.4 Construction Emergency Interim Housing at Police Administration Building Parking Lot E.
That vote was unanimous with Cohen absent.
Thank you, Tony. And hopefully, we're going to come up with a better name for it than the Emergency Interim Housing at Police Administration Building Parking Lot E.
Thank you, Matt Kena, Director of Public Works, and James Stagey and Reagan Henninger from the Housing Department are with me today. I'll go ahead and get us started. We do have it named Guadalupe Emergency Interim Housing.
All right, we'll take it.
You know, open to their options. So briefly, what is emergency interim housing? Temporary housing for the homeless. It's temporary housing for formerly homeless individuals, helps stabilize their lives and get them out of crisis mode, provides residents with individual units, similar to small studios, and very importantly, with their own private bathrooms, includes shared amenities such as kitchen and laundry room. And people typically live in these interim housing developments for a few months as they transition to more permanent housing options. There are a lot of supportive services provided by the Housing Department and their partners at these locations, such as case management, job search, assistant housing, and counseling, and other services to help with underlying issues. The project proposal in front of you today is for the city to provide authority for the city to enter into an agreement with DevCon Construction, not to exceed $6 million for the construction of the project. Important to note that Sand Hill Foundation is donating housing units to the project with an approximate value of over $6 million. And that Destination Home, additionally, a great partner, is providing a $1 million grant to the project. And we are moving forward with the recommendation for an idle act exception to the bidding, which allows us to award the project directly to DevCon, given the extremely low price that they're able to deliver the project for, since the developer's providing us the units through DevCon. The project location, it's within Council District III, adjacent to the police parking facilities at the corner of Guadalupe Parkway and Taylor Street. You can see on the map there. And this is a preliminary site plan. The longer rectangles are the actual housing units, and there's a common area and common buildings for dining and laundry facilities in the middle. And there's additional parking as well for the residents. As we've noticed in past experiences, we definitely need ample parking for these residents who have, a lot of them have their vehicles. Preliminary timeline for the project, we're looking at getting authorization from the council today, hopefully. We are in the final stages of plan development. 100% plan documents should be done this week. And so in the next couple of weeks, we'll be executing the contract, or finalizing the contract with the developer and anticipate ground, or sorry, with DevCon Construction, and anticipate groundbreaking in November 2021. Selection of the site operator, which James will speak to in a moment, in early 2022, and the first residents move in in June 2022. I'll turn it to James for the...
Mayor, Council, good evening. James Stagey with the Housing Department. So this is the fourth emergency interim housing site that we've built. So what we're building on this site is very similar to what we've built at the other three sites. We're obviously looking to expeditiously replicate what we can, and we've done that. However, there is some subtle differences here. So we do have the community kitchens, the laundry areas, and all the similar things that we have in the other three areas. But in this particular project, we've done a lot of work with our operators to solicit feedback and learn from what we've developed in the past. And so we've incorporated some changes. So for instance, we've incorporated some additional case management space. That was one of the things that was listed from our operators, additional storage. And then probably the biggest difference in the design of this particular site is that we worked with our lived experience advisory board members. They were a great, great help in providing a perspective on the types of space that they want to live in. So we've incorporated a lot of that into the design of this particular site. So we don't necessarily have the operator selected yet. However, we have released a request for proposal, and that was released in August. As of last Friday, we had a deadline for applications. So we're still vetting those applications. It'll take some time to get through. So we still have to negotiate the programs and the services that will be implemented there. This particular operator, one of the differences between this site and the other sites, is that we're having this particular operator connect with our Beautify San Jose teams. And so there's going to be a work experience element to this particular operator, and ensuring that there's a connection there. We've requested that either one operator have experience in both housing operating as well as work experience, or possibly two. well as work experience, or possibly two agencies that can partner together to provide those services. So that's what we're looking for. We will be coming back to council, obviously, for the selection and, and recommendations, and council can weigh in on the services and the programs at that time. So with that, I'm actually going to turn it back to Matt because he has one last thing to add.
Thank you, Mayor and Council.
Thank you, James, and thank you, Mayor and Council. I have one final item to read into the record. For the draft resolution that's in your packet today, one change that we do need to make, Section One, Part Three, we need to read, "The donation of modular units by SHP Foundation has an estimated value of $6,050,000." Thank you for your time, and we're here to answer any questions you may have.
Thank you very much. Thanks to all of you for your hard work in making this happen. Let's hear from the public.
Ray Bramson.
Good evening, Mayor, Vice Mayor, Councilmembers, Ray Bramson, Chief Operating Officer of Destination Home. On behalf of Destination Home, we want to extend our thanks to the city for the opportunity to partner and provide a $1 million grant to support the Guadalupe Emergency Interim Housing Site, which we should rename. I'd like to specifically thank both Public Works and the hardest working Housing Department in the state of California for really embracing the spirit of our grant, along with the Mayor's Office, in trying to raise up the voice of lived experience and deeply involve members from the Lived Experience Advisory Board in both the design, community engagement, and development of this site. I, I think when we listen to the people with the expertise who've experienced homelessness before, when we're designing homes for them to live in, it makes a better partnership and a much, much stronger project in the long run. We're also excited to see this continue the work of the community plan to increase the supply of interim and emergency housing for our most vulnerable members. We look forward to continuing to work with the city in its lofty goals to get every resident off this roof. Thank you so much.
Alma Goldschmidt, followed by Tessa Woodmency.
I need, you're not unmuting me.
He can hear you.
Oh, hi, sorry. I was used to clicking unmute. I was just wanting to commend the city. This, this, this program, this site seems to be perfect for the homeless and what would be the perfect vision for helping get the people that really need the help with all the amenities and everything. What I'm just still confused is why you're, you've located these homeless residents from the Apple site onto 71 Vista Montana where there's no amenities other than a parking lot that's contaminated. You have the vision, you understand what they need, you have, they need the wraparound services, and they don't have anything other than a parking lot that only has now one security guard on the premises when you've promised our neighborhood two security guards, and we're getting a lot of issues.
I'm sorry, you're pretty far off topic here.
Tessa Woodmency.
Okay, thank you. Well, you know, the issue of, I'm glad you're taking these, this public land to make it in housing, good idea. But the issues that we're facing in our community is how you have taken our lands, and I call it financializing it, with businesses. And when we have a housing crisis, and obviously, I mean, the whole meeting has been about that, and we're dealing with that. And yet it is, it is, you know, like a, you know, you're just not really true to yourself when you are building a hotel in our neighborhood. So it's like, how do we really address that issue? And the thing is, is that as we go forward, you know, every, you know, Dev Davis says, oh, those are jobs, and, and everything is about no jobs for housing conversion. And I call that the bottleneck that has really created our housing crisis. Because really, as we go forward, especially coming out of COVID-19, we are not, jobs are not where we're going. We have work to do, work to do to survive. That is where we have to go. And even to try to say that you're going to recondition everybody to go get a job, you know, and the thing is, is that we do, we have to really reconsider how we're building our communities. And it is for having universal basic income and then learning that we have to.
I'm sorry, you're veering pretty far off stream here.
Jason Su.
My name is Jason Su. I'm the Executive Director of the Guadalquivir River Park Conservancy. I just want to say thank you to the staff, to the mayor and to city council for bringing this item up. This project, we've been, we've had the privilege of working and discussing it with members of the city, and we are very excited to kind of see a type of partnership that couples, stewardship of our public spaces, housing opportunities, and jobs really find a sustainable pathway out of homelessness. So we support this and we look forward to the direction. Thank you very much.
Caller 5140.
You guys are living in a fantasy land to think that this is going to help, help people. It's not. It's just, it's just kicking the can down the road, putting people in a glorified campsite. You know what's going to happen. It's not going to work. It's going to cost millions and millions of dollars. And I mean, what are these people going to do? They're all of a sudden going to have a roof over their head and they're going to get that magical job? It's not going to happen. You know it's not going to happen, but you guys live in a fantasy land. And you guys should be ashamed of yourselves, promising people these things that they're, that they're never going to get, and you're going to ruin the neighborhoods that all these places go and ruin them, including yours, Sam. I hope yours is the first to go, I could tell you. I mean, hey, hey, Sam, how, how would you like me to all of a sudden be homeless and live in your neighborhood? Could you imagine that one? I want you to imagine that for a second, a bunch of 5140 callers living in your neighborhood. How would you like that? I don't think you would. But yeah, you guys are going to continue to do the wrong things because you guys are like children. You keep doing the wrong things over and over and keep wondering why things don't work too well. Well, I think you know why, because these are disaster policies. They don't work. The more you give away, the more you get, and it's never going to end, ever. It'll never end unless you guys put your foot down, but you're not. You're too smug, you're too snooty, you think you guys know everything. You guys are a failure. Should be ashamed of yourselves for how you run the city and how you treat the legal taxpaying residents who don't deserve your misguided policies. It's a joke and you know it. And I wish more people like me would call in, but they're afraid to do so. I urge anyone listening, if they agree what I say.
Okay, just want to let people know I have three hands up. Next speaker is Sheena, followed by Scott.
Hi, I wanted to support the site at the police station lot. From what I can see, it is far away from residences and parks, libraries, and schools. And it has at least, at least there'll be police that's close, that are close by that can monitor. Hopefully you can provide all the services that are needed on site as well. I think that is the direction that we need to go, just make sure that you provide the wraparound services that these people need on like the Vista Montana site, which has just, is just a parking lot. We need more than that, support the homeless people getting back on their feet. In this case, at least it's away from neighborhoods. I'm very happy to see that. Seems like the right idea. Please be sure to run it efficiently as well. The site over here, the RV parking site on Vista Montana, is $400,000 for nine months for just a parking lot and a couple of porta potties. And I'm sure that you can do better than that. That should be enough for some full-time staff. It seems like a lot of money is being allocated for this project. So yeah, I support it. Thank you.
Scott, followed by Blair.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Scott Largent. You know, this, this is something that I, I do hope will be a success. I, I think the location is perfect. There is already a camp that's right underneath the freeway right next to this site. That has also been a success there. I think it's good that it's located right near the police department. My concern is it's just a little, too little, too late. There are so many people that needed an option getting out of Spring Street area. And the city, along with Home First, got everybody's hopes up thinking they'd get into a tiny home, a safe parking program, just, just anything. A woman had a baby in a trailer out there, and she was the only person that I knew that got into a hotel room. And everybody else was pushed into zone three. And, you know, I, I just would hope that we do something like Pemex or something. It's just kind of getting way, way out of control. This is so far down the line to being complete and ready. The Vista Montana site that a lot of people keep bringing up, I was looking forward to actually going there, but I was denied because that place is a failure and it never quite worked out. You would think a clean and sober father that has a child that lives in an RV could go somewhere, you know, near a park, in a neighborhood, near light rail, you know, but no. Instead, I'm down in zone three, waiting for promises from the city, the housing department, and it's just a big disappointment. It's, it's very sad out there, and more people are going to move right back into that zone, and you guys aren't going to be able to stop it. This is really out of control. Thank you.
Blair Beekman.
Hi, thank you. Blair Beekman here. I was going to just kind of pass on public comment on this item, but 5140 caller, he brought me out that I felt I should speak, that, you know, I've been learning actually a fairly good amount today, how to, how to better address the future of housing issues for San Jose, and I thank you. I use the term, I worry about a warehouse concept, and that maybe was the wrong term to use. And 5140's worries and complaints about how people are going to be housed, I got the feeling that, you know, there's, there's going to be many different ways to be housing people. Some people are going to be drug addicts and meth addicts who will need, you know, services in those terms. Some people are going to be mothers with children who are going to want to make the step towards permanent housing, whereas the drug addicts may not, but they may need services and, and to be working for those sort of services and, and to make that very low key, how they can do that, that, you know, that can invite how they can do better practices. You don't lock them into that sort of treatment plan you ask them, you know? And I think that's the sort of thing we're learning how to do. And, you know, for this particular item, you know, being so close to the police department, it seems people will be very much geared to want to, you know, move into permanent housing from, from this transitional place. I'm hoping the idea is that we can, can be developing, you know, ELI, VLI, mixed income ideas, so they can have permanent housing options, so we don't have to be locked up in these simple home key systems that are good beginnings, but we can do so much better. And that's what Tessa was trying to offer earlier. You know, it's, it's time to start thinking creatively, as, as the mayor and others have been doing. But we have to have a good, you know, fundamental practices down first, and I think we're doing that. Thank you.
Mayor.
Thank you. Thanks, everyone, for your public input. I, I just wanted to thank a few folks that helped to make this happen. Peter Susanna-Pow, first and foremost. It was a little more than a year ago that Peter and I were having a conversation, and he was complaining about the fact that in a, not to be named suburb, but you can probably figure out which one, he was willing to give the housing to the city if they'd just let him build housing for homeless residents in that city. And, and they said no. And he was incredibly frustrated. He said, I, you know, I'll, I'll do whatever it takes. And I said, great, I'll find you a site. And sure enough, Dev Davis, Councilmember Davis stepped up with that site over on Evans Lane that I know the Housing Department had been looking at for some time. And he contributed somewhere between five and six million dollars, I think, for the housing on the Evans Lane site. And we've got, I think, a little more than 100 folks living there now. And then, of course, he was willing to continue doing so because he felt as though we were a good partner and, and he was seeing success. And so success breeds success, and he's contributed another $6 million again to this project. To be clear, this is a straight contribution. There's really no, no benefit of any sort to him other than, and Susanna, other than that I know that they're deeply faithful people, and I know this is aligned with their values. And so I'm just grateful to them for, for what they've done. Peter Susanna-Pow, as well as Candace Gonzalez and the rest of the team over there at Sand Hill have been great to work with. Certainly want to thank Matt and James and Reagan and Jackie and everybody who's been working on these projects for some time now. I really want to thank Nathan Ho and Mackenzie Mossing on our team at the Mayor's Office, who have been in, in the weeds on every detail, and I appreciate Matt and his weekly updates and us really helping us do everything we can to, to work together, find more resources to get all these things done. And, and they've both been working really hard with donors and others, and really grateful Jen Loving over Destination Home. I know we just heard from Ray Bramson. They contributed a million dollars, but they also contributed something that was really important that you can't quantify, which is the introduction to the Lived Experience Advisory Board. Just at a gathering recently with Claudine on that board. And just really great insights from people who have overcome the extraordinary hardships of living on the street to really help us understand how we can better serve them and help them, help get others back on their feet, really based on their experience. So I appreciate all of the engagement we've had from Destination Home as a partner, and we expect that will continue as we build, build out more of these. I will continue to solicit advice from the advisory board. I also want to thank All Home, that is Timiqua Moss and Ken Kirke and Joey Kirchner, who's, they've committed a half a million dollars to this effort as well. And the many other partners, Gary Phillips, Elliot, DevCon, on the construction. Jason Su, who we heard from the Guadalupe River Park Conservancy, really appreciate his willingness to partner. We think that this, this work program with the Guadalupe River Park Conservancy could be an incredible win-win. We hope for a lot of residents as well as for the broader community. I want to thank also San Jose Police Department and the police officers of that department because we know this was not something that was easy. And frankly, they have understandable concerns, given the fact they're parking vehicles and those vehicles, like they're, we know officers are dealing with situations every day, they're, they're going there late at night, and we needed to make sure we, we had a, a project in development that will certainly be compatible with their daily expectations of being able to, be able to park and, and be able to safely go in and out of their workplace right next door. And I think we've got a great plan to do that. I also really want to thank Councilmember Raul Peralas, who I think is going to speak next, and his team for really rolling up their sleeves with the community, the surrounding neighborhoods. Yes, there are neighborhoods around the site, contrary to what one of the speakers said on the phone. In fact, some neighbors directly across the street, who I know pretty well, who aren't shy about letting us know what they think. So I really appreciate his willingness to step up and, and work with the, the surrounding community to make sure this is something that is a great asset to the community. So Councilmember Peralas.
Yeah, thank you, Mayor, and appreciate your work on this particular site. As I know, you spent a lot of time trying to really secure that contribution from Peter and Susanna and, and, you know, and obviously much appreciation to them as well. A gift over $6 million, making this site feasible. This is certainly a unique effort that we have here, and it has spurred, as you pointed out, the interest for other philanthropic dollars to help in other projects across the city. I, I do think this site is, is a terrific site. It actually came up about five years ago on our list, an analysis, and it scored rather high. We ended up having another site that scored high too, that was over by the Berryas of Art Station that we ended up going with, with the very first tiny home location. But I think we knew at that point, and I certainly had a conversation with the chief of police back then, that this site was likely going to come back around. And, and as the opportunity came, by the point that it did come back around, which is now, there are five other locations that are now serving a similar population less than a mile away. Those, most of them all directly in neighborhoods. There's a permanent supportive housing development being built by Path on Fourth. There is one site that was on the docket tonight on, on North Fourth Street as well that now the housing authority is going to do. There's the very first Project Home Key, which is the surest state that we heard about just up the street on First Street. And then we have our, our second permanent supportive housing development that the county had built, which is the Villas on the Park. And so the neighbors around here have been engaged for some time because back when this made the list, there wasn't any of those there. made the list, there wasn't any of those there. And so, the, the neighborhoods in the surrounding area have been engaged with me. And they were actually the neighbors that helped drive a lot of the, the community-led effort on the new siting policy that we approved from my colleagues. And so, you may understand why, for them, it was so important that we had a siting policy, that we were more equitable in our dispersion because of all the projects that are in and around their neighborhood. It's not simply just, hey, there's one project and we want to fight against that. It's no, actually, we do feel there's, there's been quite a bit. But at the same time, as you, you heard, I should say, as you didn't hear tonight, they're not here showing up in opposition because they do actually believe in these programs. They believe in the solutions. They believe in us as well when it comes to the siting policy. It took a long time to get there, but I think what they've been seeing, and this is kind of hats off to my colleagues again from the vote that we just took, they're seeing these projects become, you know, happening more and more throughout the city. So they recognize that, that that's now happening and that is making it easier to get more projects built in, within District Three as well. And so, I, I think this is a great site. It happens to be a parking lot that I used to park in regularly. It's an unsecured parking lot at the police department. I still park there periodically in my role as a reserve. So I appreciate that we did work with the police department to ensure that we could secure that portion of the parking lot. That was really the only concern we'd heard from our, our police officers there, and I know that they appreciate that as well. This is going to be a tremendous site, great partnerships all around. Thank you to Destination Home as well. And I look forward to breaking ground here. And thank you to Jason Sue, lastly, who, who spoke up today from the Guadalupe River Park Conservancy, who's been willing to work with us. Obviously, they have a huge challenge there that we've been working on in the Guadalupe River Park area. And they also recognize they want to be a partner. So I'm excited about that and I'll make a motion to approve the item and the memorandum that I co-sign with the mayor.
Motion in second, Councilmember Menas. Other comments or questions? Okay, let's vote. All right, we are on to...
I've got, I've gotten people. I, I heard doors opening.
We have votes that are in process. Okay, now we voted. All right, we're good. Rondo, open forum?
Unanimous with Cohen absent. I have an in-person speaker, Wanda, but I think she left.
Yes.
Robin Romer?
Good evening. Since the city is still pursuing the shortcut extension, I thought I'd use this opportunity to share some quotes from staff and city consultants about the shortcut overpass. Robert Del Rio, Hexagon Transportation Consultants, back in September 2018. The completed studies included an evaluation of vehicle miles traveled and vehicle hours traveled. However, the VMT and VHT analysis did not show a significant benefit to vehicle travel in the area. Graf IR, August 2019. The extension will have minimal effect on travel routes to and from 880 in the area. So here, Golzada, DOT Division Manager, October 2019. The proposed extension will provide little to no measurable travel time savings. The minimal travel time savings will not sway or induce new trips. Final IR, May 2020, response O32. The commenter is correct in the minimal effect that the proposed project would have on average travel times. Finally, IR, response R16. The travel time evaluation supports the expectation that the proposed roadway extension would provide minimal, minimal benefit in travel time outside of the immediate project area. Response BB72. As indicated within the traffic analysis, the extension will have minimal effect on travel times, VHT speeds, and roadway traffic volumes. This is an indication that the project will provide little benefit. Response C2. The proposed project would have minimal effect on the operations of the Oakland-Brocker intersection. Response BB103. The proposed roadway extension would have minimal effect on traffic volumes on the reference roadways such as Straight Town. The point I wanted to make tonight is that any argument that shortcut would do anything to resolve congestion or traffic bottlenecks or help people to get in and out of North San Jose faster is nonsense. Thank you.
Krishna, followed by Alma Goldchain. And I currently have seven hands up.
Hey, can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, this is regarding the, what I call unsafe site at 71 Vista Montana. You might have had many of us neighbors ask many questions over the last many weeks. Don't you guys feel ashamed that there has been no response from you guys? You just keep hearing these questions and has no response? Are you taking pride in keeping this neighborhood in the dark? I had many other councilmen in some other agenda item talk about great neighborhood engagement in their communities. What happened regarding this site? Just pushed it down our throat? I request that these councilmen, please go talk to some sense into Mr. Cohen. That said, and in fear of this outrage of no communication continuing, I request the mayor and this council to add an agenda item to discuss this, all the issues related to the site in one of the upcoming meetings. Let's have a public discussion. And given the fact that this was done misusing EOC provisions without complete thought and without any discussion, please add a motion to this, to this meeting, to the above discussion, which prevent any further additions to the site until all concerns are addressed. Thanks.
Alma, followed by Salma.
Yes, hello again. This, hopefully I won't get cut off because this is now the open forum. But this past Saturday, police arrived at 71 Vista Montana to deal with an individual that was getting kicked out of that lot. That individual ended up in our neighborhood roaming around. Where is the security that we were promised? I mean, there is, there's only one guard in that lot now whom we were promised two. They've got an empty security vehicle parked outside one of the fences as if that's going to stop somebody from breaking in or getting out of that, that lot. Our neigh, the neighborhood is, has several cars that have, that are parked there that don't belong in the neighborhood. They're filled with personal belongings, which means like they're homeless individuals that have parked there because the city has told them it's a safe place to park and they're in, and they don't have to worry about their stuff getting moved. So our neighborhood, which was not the best of neighborhoods when it came to break-ins and things, it now has more security issues than before, thanks to the city, thanks to Cohen and, and Mayor Licardo. Having homeless four or five blocks from where you live is not the same as living right next door to, and across the street from a parking lot where individuals are creating hazard, using hazardous materials and dumping them into our neighborhood. Very different. There's no oversight and you're, and it's just a money pit. I don't know who's getting the money, but it's not the homeless. They deserve better facilities than a contaminated arsenic-filled lot that with, in a fire could explode or it could cause fires to the neighborhood housing. And I don't hear anybody saying anything about how you're going to help the residents of that, in that neighborhood. How is it that homeless have more rights than the people that are paying property taxes and rents in this neighborhood? It doesn't make sense. I wish you would address that.
Salma, followed by Sheena.
Oh, hi. Looks like Councilman Cohen is not present today. Maybe he was sped up for a rant or maybe he no longer cares about our rant, our grievances. My neighbor Alma Goldchain articulated the problem so well that all I want to say is I've had a really long day. I just got out of the class, a full day of work, and then followed by class. And here I am, attending the open forum at the city council for the mess that you guys have created. Most of the families in our community and the neighboring community are, are no longer taking their kids to the park next door. They are actually driving down to the, to other parks in North Fifth Street and Santa Clara, you know, for the kids. This is not something that we expected. I don't know what else to say. You, everything that we say, it's just falling on deaf ears, you know? I'm pretty sure you guys are risking getting re-elected. You know, the elections are coming up and where did you score the brownie points with this move of yours? I don't understand. That's all I have to say. Thank you.
Sheena, followed by Tessa.
Earlier on, you said that the police station lot is right, not, is in the middle of a neighborhood. And I want to tell you the difference between the closest house there, which is around 300 feet, and the closest house that we have to the 71 Vista Montana site, which is about one and a half feet. It is a thin stone wall. Somebody can easily throw a lit joint over it, can throw a drug needle over it. We already have arsenic on site and dead trees that create a fire hazard. The site is not well-maintained at all. We already talked about the lack of facilities there. Recently, one of the site participants broke into another RV on the site and was evicted from the program, which is good, except that even though the city promised that they would make this, the vehicles operational, his vehicle is not operational, so it was left behind on the site. He's forbidden from coming back, but he has a very strong incentive to come back and get his stuff. And who's going to monitor him at that point? This is somebody who we've seen trying to break into another RV. So it's not a model citizen or whatever you're expecting there. And again, I want to iterate, reiterate that two feet is a lot different from four blocks. When I look at the police station site, there is a huge road that separates that from the residences. We're talking about two feet from the children's park. That means that we can see the trash on top of the RVs from the children's park. That means that the needle that I found was on the sidewalk on the way to the children's park that I walked multiple times a day for years since my kids were babies. This is not like five blocks away. That is not your backyard. This is literally our backyard. And you say, yeah, we say, and with the problem that we're seeing come in here, you said even the police department was complaining about having the site there until you negotiated with them. You never engaged us. And they have so many tools at their disposal. Please close this 71 Vista Montana site down.
Before I unmute, Tessa, I just want to say we now have six hands up. A couple of hands have gone up since I last called the number. So we have six speakers, Tessa, followed by 5140.
Yes, hi. I would appreciate if Mayor Licardo would, if he sees that we are off topic, he says, you're off topic, and the topic is the housing at the, you know, wherever, and then you let us come back. That is being, being caring, loving, kind that we're supposed to be, okay? That's how Vice Mayor Jones has done it, and it's very nice. And you can do that too, Mayor Licardo, not to be like a dictator and, and cut us off like that. Let us come back after you correct us and, and we can reconnect to the topic. That would be...
Just for the record, I'm not actually controlling the cutoff. Tessa, it's not me.
Who is? Oh, God.
I, I won't identify who it is, but it's not me, just so you know.
All right. All right, we appreciate that. We love you. Okay, good. Well, we'll have to find out who it is. And maybe it's Tony Tabor, the dictator. Okay, good. So anyway, the issue that I'm talking about is as we listen to everybody, and there is a real call for community engagement, and that we're not getting that. And even, and we're getting a lot of, you know, words of caring about our, you know, community outreach and, and, and things like that. And, and we have a green economy and we're, you know, caring about, you know, the environment. And yet, there is at that, you know, site where you're building a highway into a schoolyard and, you know, with all the documents he has and, and other neighbor, you know, the neighbors at Vista Montana being so frustrated. And that's our neighborhood too, that we, you know, the general plan changed without, you know, talking to us, without communicating about what we want in our neighborhood. And we need a revolution. And that's what they have, they say in Alameda, where the neighbors get what they want. That's what we need to have in our neighborhood. And your ideas about what needs to be in the neighborhood is off, way off. You know, you're building, you know, a, a world that is not the way it's, it's going forward, you know, with jobs. We need to be back to our agrarian roots. That is really where we have to go if we're going to survive as a species.
Caller 5140, followed by Scott Largent.
Yeah, I think the, the location next to the police department, perfect. You know, perfect. Because even where I live, we get these scals in the neighborhood, you know, trying to jump fences, you know, you know, the guys on the bicycles, you know, the guy on the bike, right? It's the bicycle that you know isn't local. Yeah, well, did San Jose PD roll out a unit when I called? No. They also told me they were going to call me. Did they? No. You ever try calling the police about a non-emergency matter or somebody who staffs the, your area? Do you ever call you back? No. So you know what? The homeless people, SJPD can have them. They deserve every single one of them. You know, they get paid the big bucks. That's why they can handle these homeless people. And maybe they need to start taking some classes on handling people who have mental illnesses and drug problems because they know they can't arrest them and find them anymore because they don't have any money. So whatever, they deserve it. This city, you know, you guys need to focus on the road, you need to focus on having proper police response. You got to focus on buildings not burning to the ground. You know, you don't have to focus on road diets. We don't need them. The Hillsdale is going to be a disaster. That's going to be what I call Pam Foley's folly. We, we've got a lot of unfinished manhole covers throughout the city that are a terrible burden to drivers when your tire hits them. The, the city just, I mean, you guys focus on all the stupid things. Oh, don't, don't smoke flavored tobacco. Don't buy a beer at, at nine o'clock in the morning. This, you guys will drone on and on and on and on and on, more than I could ever drone on about anything. But man, all of a sudden, there needs to be some multimillion dollar homeless shelter for 10 people, you guys, you guys...
Scott Largent, followed by, followed by Blair Beekman.
Thank you. Good evening, everyone. Scott Largent. A lot of people are chiming in about the 71 Vista Montana site. I don't blame the neighborhood for how upset they are. When I went to view the location, and of course, you guys know I'm very sympathetic to the homeless, I am homeless myself. And I went and kind of looked around that park there. It was very impressive. I go to a lot of parks with my daughter now, so I kind of keep an eye out for things like that. And I climbed to the top of the playground and then when you look right over, you've got some RVs that, that I doubt you guys even checked out to make sure the propane was disassembled, maybe the gray water, black water was, you know, flushed out. They were just all stacked there on the other side of the fence. And then you just look down at the portage on and the fire extinguishers. It was kind of, it was kind of shocking that something better could not have been set up. This kind of reminds me of the disaster you guys had out at Happy Hollow. The trailers out there that just pretty much, that was just a, just a waste of money. We just threw money in the wrong direction. That was not a success at all. You know, where's the damage control right now to possibly find the right people that could, could be a success out there rather than shutting it down? It'd be sad to see a, you know, a site like that, that could possibly work. I have asked the housing department over and over again. Advocates have also asked. I'm a clean and sober father. I've been sober now for about five and a half years. I see my daughter daily for three or four hours. We go to the park, we have a great time, but I do live in an RV and I am homeless. And how can somebody like me with basically no criminal record that's sober requesting to get into a program like that at that site be denied? That, that right there, you guys should think about a little bit right there. Why not? Instead, I was pushed from my location right now into zone three to basically have my RV almost set on...
Blair Beekman, followed by Aphelia Hernandez.
Hi, Blair Beekman here. I hope we can consider the notification process for ideas of trust, more honest debate, and organization and cooperation in the future placement of local government-sponsored homeless encampments. Speak to the many parking items that are part of many recent San Jose Council Committee agendas. Thank you in the efforts we are trying to consider how to return to the ways to think of our collective green, sustainable future in a life with, without fossil fuels or single occupancy vehicles. Surveillance technology and data collection technology should be considered in the future of Santa Clara County parking policies, practices, and discussions. ALPR data collection used to be held for over a year. Good democratic practices based on openness, good civil rights ideas, good civil protections and ideas of peace, not war or harm, have developed friendlier, more efficient practices where ALPR data now only needs to be kept for six months or even three months. This can bring an important heart and care and understanding to new AI and overall policy questions of local governments this fall and for good open public policy and accountability practices for local Santa Clara County communities, Santa Clara County government and their local government bureaucracies, and in how to address the VTA events of May 26 as well. I hope we're all considering the many creative proactive ways we can offer thoughts and ideas to allow to better, to allow for better choices in... choices in how to define the future of COVID-19 mandate issues that, and community health and safety this fall. This fall can be a time of heartfelt sharing and caring. With 16 seconds, let me say that again. I hope you're noticing the many creative, proactive ways we can offer thought and ideas to allow for better choices in how to, how to define the future of COVID-19 mandate issues and its community health and safety concerns. This fall can be a time of caring and sharing.
Aphelia, followed by Rajah.
Can you hear me? Yes. Okay. So I believe it was Thursday, I was at the park. Your security guard came out his gate, staring at me and a few friends in the park. Mind you, there was other people with their dogs, another person flying a drone. He comes out his gate of the 71 Vista Montana, comes into the park, and tells us that we can't be there. Number one, your security guard is not going to control our neighborhood and tell us where we can and cannot be. I believe his job is to stay within the gate and, and supervise that location. Saturday, the police were called to the site by security because there was a client trying to break into an RV. That client was told to leave the site. Mind you, now he's in our neighborhood with the mindset of breaking into anything, which possibly be a house now. So now our neighborhood had this man just roaming around. When, when he, he told somebody from our neighborhood that he admits to having an addiction problem, he was also very hungry. I'm very upset that he was put on this site with no oversight, nobody there to help him with his addiction problem. He says that he has not received any help there. It's very sad to hear somebody even coming out of that site saying that they're hungry. Nobody deserves to be hungry. I believe at all your other sites, the emergency interim housing sites, the tiny homes, that you guys have community kitchens, you guys feed them there, you guys have food pantries. Why is this site not stocked with food? How come they don't have the same access to food as other sites? How come they don't have the same access to addiction counselors, to case managers, to all those things that they deserve? Maybe he was breaking in there to get something so he could go sell it, so he could buy himself some food.
Yeah. Hi, this is regarding the 71 Vista Montana site. So we heard the comments about from the mayor saying that, oh, there's, out of four blocks away from his home, there's your building sites. So it is, as other people mentioned, it's different from the next door. Maybe you and Cohen should come and live here for a day, and then find out how the community feels, and then people feel over here, and how they feel insecure. My kids and most of the people whom I know, they stopped going to the park. Just literally, they stopped going to the park because of the uneasiness they have in there. And the Saturday's event has even made it worse. So you invited all these people over here, and then you let them loose now. So that shows how the planning has been done, right? So I don't understand if, if, so we asked for the information, who are those people? How have they been vetted? Or how have they have been screened? So there was no answers on that. So, so this clearly shows, so there is no process in there. You just pull those people over there, put, taken away from the apple side, and then you dump it over here, and, and now you let them loose in our neighborhood, and it is, it's, it's more even worse now. It is like they are in the neighborhood, and we don't know when the next thing is going to happen. So you are really trying out things in here in our neighborhood without any proper planning, and you're waiting for some incident to happen. And why don't you be proactively thinking about it, just, I mean, other options, consider other options, and then shut down this site, and then move to a place where they have all the amenities, and then the services? Not like, don't try to be reactive on them after things that happen, or...
Back to the mayor.